All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening. If we can get everyone to settle down, that would be great, so we can conduct the business. So we have reconvened from closed session, and I would like to make the following disclosure. By a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized in direct to the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Hagashi versus the City of Elk Grove Animal Services as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:02 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 8th, 2024. It is 6:02 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T, U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Wednesday, May 15th, at 6:00 PM, and again on Thursday, May 16th, also at 6:00 PM, on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.eltgrovecity.org. Whoops. Sorry, my script disappeared on me. Or youtube.com/MetroCable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide to the deputy city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. One last item I'd like to note is that we do have a rather full house this evening, and we would like to be in compliance with our fire marshal. What I would ask of our participants, and let you also be aware of, is our foyer is currently being air-conditioned and lightened up a little bit, but there are additional chairs in the foyer, and we also broadcast out the video and the audio out into that area. So please feel free. What I would ask for our participants that are here, if you can keep our pathways of travel open as best as you are able, and for around doorways, if you can please move aside from doorways, whether it's an ingress or egress, out of this chamber or also out into the parking lot. And if we, by any chance, unfortunately, would have to vacate the premises, please let's all lend a hand to each other and slowly make our ways if we're directed to do so. So, but part of it is, we do want everyone to have an opportunity to participate, so please find your spaces where you can, and also give yourself a break if you're standing to take some seats that are out in the foyer. With that, Mayor, I'll hand it over to you.
All right.
Not that much of a handover. I'll come back, hand it right back to myself for the roll call. And so for the roll call, I'll start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. Thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Assisting is our vice mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Mewoc, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
Thank you. Next up is our pledge of allegiance. Please rise, if I can get Councilmember Spees to help lead us.
Hand over heart, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hear littles. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Next up is approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
There are no closed-session items under Section 3 of our agenda, which will take us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. But I do just want to put it out there one more time, for our folks that are here in the chamber, if we've got some volunteers that are willing to step out into the foyer, what it does is just helps with the circulation in the room, but it also will alleviate some of you folks that are standing, that you might be able to get a seat out in the foyer area. But with that, I will continue on to our first presentation of the evening, which is item 4.1, which is the presentation of the ISSA Agency Pavement Preservation and Sustainability Program Award to the City of Elk Grove.
Excellent. I see representatives coming up.
Hello? Hey, guys. Name's Nick Corcoran. I work for VSS International. What we do, a little background about us, we do pavement preservation. We work in the 12 western states. We're kind of the leading subcontractor, I guess you can call for you guys, that we've worked multiple times over the previous years with you. This year, we had the opportunity to submit Elk Grove as kind of one of the premier agencies, leading pavement preservation. I don't know how knowledgeable you guys are for the pavement preservation, but you guys do issue multimillion-dollar contracts yearly to maintain your guys' roads, and it shows very well. You know, you look at the surrounding cities and counties, and you can tell, you know, the due diligence the City of Elk Grove is doing with taxpayer dollars to maintain the roads. And ISSA is, you know, the International Story Servicing Association, and this award here is the 2024 Agency Pavement Preservation and Sustainability Program Award. So what that shows is, you know, there are some criterias to meet this application, and we chose Elk Grove, you know, with our long working history with you guys, and we happened to win it. It's an internationally recognized program, and, you know, California is the leading pavement preservation state in the whole US, and within line with Texas and, you know, City of Elk Grove, and that just speaks volumes that you guys were able to obtain this. And I just wanted to present this award to you guys today, and thank you guys for everything you guys do for our, you know, our scopes of work, and continue to work with you guys. Appreciate it.
We'll come down there and take a picture with you in the plaque.
You want to come on down? I need you to sit right here.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure. Right there.
Yay. It's one first, then two more. Okay. This one's for our award presenter. One more for the city.
We can breathe, okay?
Ready? So then, one, two, three. One more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Yeah, appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we also want to recognize all the great work that happens with our Public Works Department. Jeff Warner, leading the way, thank you. Next up is our proclamation recognizing May as Building Safety Month, and assisting is Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Rosa Tapia or Brian Franger around? Good evening. And for sake of brevity, I won't read all the whereas', but, you know, at the city, you do, all of you do a great job in endeavoring to cut the red tape and make sure people get their permits faster, but also balancing that with public safety. And so we're here to proclaim May as Building Safety Month, and just a couple whereas's is the California Building Code and the City of Elk Grove Building Safety Division and Kasumnas Fire Prevention Staffs that administer the code ensure these safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as storms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month exists, to remind the public about the critical role of our communities largely known guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And so therefore, be it resolved, the City of Elk Grove and the City Council does hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month, and we encourage our citizens to join in their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Thank you all for your hard work.
Would you like to say something?
Yeah, please. Thank you for the recognition of Building Safety Month and the significant role that it plays in building safety, plays in all of our lives. And the Building Division and the CSD Fire Division have taken a proactive approach to safety by regularly inspecting buildings for potential hazards and addressing concerns during the plan review and construction process. Together, the Building Division and CSD Fire Department ensure buildings are safe with the proper fire and life safety measures. And Deputy Fire Marshal Anderson would like to say a few things as well.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Amber Anderson. I'm deputy fire marshal with Kasumnas Fire Department, and I think Brian did a pretty good job summing up, you know, what we do as agencies. But with that, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Community Development Department and the City Council and all of the city staff for all of their ongoing collaboration, coordination, and cooperation with each other, and celebrating Building Safety Month together is just one example of that cooperation. We make a great team to the benefit of the community and to each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. (applause)
Elk Grove citizens shot first. Okay, one more. Ready, one, two, three. One more. Two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is public comment. These are non-agenda items. We have a few people signed up to speak. Lynn Wheat, followed by Alexander Hampton, not Hamilton.[776.43][776.43](laughter)
Good evening. It's nice to see a full house. I've seen it on a number of occasions. As you know, I've come to these meetings for many, many years, and over the years, I've seen Elk Grove attempt to create an identity. And how have we done that? It's through the concept of MECA's. Let me share with you a few of the MECA's that we've tried to do over the years and the millions of dollars that have spent, been spent in efforts to make, create these MECA's. We were going to become the soccer MECA with our 100 acres we purchased. We were going to become the medical MECA with our hospitals. We were going to become the softball MECA, the swim MECA. We were going to become the brewery MECA. We were going to become the shopping center MECA. We were going to become the gambling MECA. Of course, I think we are the gambling MECA. And then, of course, we were going to become the high-tech MECA with not really coming, NRC. So we'll continue to do this. We were going to try to be the tourist destination MECA. I so look forward to us becoming the zoo MECA, and I hope, as the zoo progresses, that all these in the audience that aren't paying for the zoo but are so ecstatic that it's coming to Elk Grove will fill the house and fill these chambers, because lost in all of our MECA's, the people that were so ecstatic about the variety of MECA's have disappeared. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alexander Hampton, followed by Steve Lee.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to first thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Alexander Hampton. I'm a field representative for North Carolina Carpenter's Union out of Local 46. This evening, I'm going to address some worries about the hard-working men and women who are going to be building projects in Elk Grove. Thirty-one percent of construction workers lack health insurance. That's nearly three times the rate for all workers. We have seen the devastation from COVID-19 has caused and how important healthcare is for everyone. These workers should not be excluded of that. There are a lot of irresponsible contractors, developers currently building projects around this city who do not care about the workers and pay them very low wages without healthcare just to put money into their own pockets. These same contractors and developers will come to these meetings and tell you and the public that they care about the community and the people in it, and that's why they built these projects. We know that is not the case by their actions and how they treat these workers. To help eliminate this problem, we need to make sure that prevailing wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, compliance, and local hire is required on housing projects built in Elk Grove. As leaders of the community, what are you going to do to work towards this goal to make sure it doesn't happen, this doesn't happen to the workers anymore? They deserve better. Again, thank you very much for your time in allowing me to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Steve Lee, followed by Armando Morillo.
Evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My comments are related to the attorney general's suit against the city regarding the Oak Rose debacle that's already cost our taxpayers $10 million and counting. I've got to ask, why do we have three attorneys from Riverside representing our city and filing a simple legal motion when we have five well-paid attorneys on city staff making well over $2 million in salary and benefits, including the highest-paid city employee making over $400,000? He can't do a simple motion with points and authorities? I assume these three Riverside attorneys will handle the oral arguments as well, costing the city additional hotel, food, travel costs. If the staff can't handle the work, a firm in Sacramento, the state capitol couldn't be found to keep the costs down a bit? It begs the two questions. What exactly are we paying our legal counsel for, and who's watching the bank? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Armando Morillo, and finally, Michael Manaski.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and fellow council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about some concerns of ours. My name is Armando Morillo, and I work in the trades as a carpenter. I love my job with passion, and I especially love seeing projects come to fruition with the satisfaction of knowing that we are helping others improve their communities. But this isn't the case for my coworkers or myself necessarily. Many a time, we work hard for employers who seek to gain a profit off our backs by not having to pay standard livable wages nor provide healthcare benefits. I've known personally, I've known friends and fellow coworkers who have had to supplement their income with public assistance, such as cash aid, CalFresh, and Medi-Cal. And this is why I'm here today, to urge you to advocate for and to push for language that will hold contractors and developers who wish to do business in the beautiful city of Elk Grove accountable for providing a livable wage along with healthcare benefits to its workers and their dependents. By sticking to a livable wage and benefit standard, we can help ensure that our workers are healthy and our labor standards are up to par while the need for public assistance diminishes. We will be able to have joint apprenticeship programs that will continue to train and educate our workforce on the latest materials, techniques, and technology, and industry standards will, while improving our communities and livelihoods. So much has changed in the last 140 years with regard to wages and labor laws, but it also came at a cost and sacrifice to the men and women in the trades. We continue to struggle to provide for our families, and we alone cannot make the transition into a sustainable way of life for ourselves. We need your help. So again, I urge you to favor and support contractors and developers who seek to invest in the city of Elk Grove to provide a standard livable wage, including healthcare benefits, to their employees and their dependents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Michael Manaski, and the last speaker is Mike Buchanan.
No new zoo. Top 10 reasons. Son of, excuse me, I reclaim my time. I reclaim my time.
Hold on, hold up. Are you speaking to an agenda item?
No, no. No, these are the top 10 reasons. Excuse me, but...
Okay, please, can we have DeQuarm?
Yeah, thank you.
Not everyone's going to agree on everything, but let's give him his three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's unaffordable. What community can substitute this opportunity cost for real needs such as roads, public transit, and public health and safety, not to mention affordable housing and managing its aquatic center in responsible manner, or a literal rainy day fund when a big flood hits? San Diego might have a zoo you envy, but its residents are currently suing the city for $100 million due to a mismanaged storm sewer system, which recently caused devastating flood damage in neglected neighborhoods. Number two, lavish and expensive. What individual person or family can pay Disneyland prices? Current entry fees for an adult on a Wednesday are $30 and bound to go up. It's an animal psychiatric hospital. Compare it to Bedlam Human Zoo London, nearly 800 years old and still in operation. It was a 19th-century human freak show which charged admission to see and touch mentally ill persons, which became the model for 20th-century zoos. It's not conservationist, but a capitalist venture which exacerbates global warming. Just take a look at your parking plan. Also, the zoo has lost its elephants, chimps, and other animals because it does not meet standards for conservation. Sacramento Zoo is not a conservationist organization. It is a business which breeds, buys, and sells its animals. It's not educational, but a money-making venture which teaches that it's okay for sentient beings to be cruel to other sentient beings. It's not recreational, but a business strategy. How much fun can it be to observe depressed wild animals? It's anachronistic. The zoo is an out-of-touch vestige of Victorian culture like the circus or the Kentucky Derby, an outdated fragment of chauvinism, a forced taking of natural resources from a colonized foreign land perceived as inferior by this empire. It's poor land use resulting in loss of agglans as well as open space for wildlife. It's based upon a political economic policy which chooses to ignore the future. I call it the Hume effect, and Patrick Hume sat right there and said this two years ago. What I don't want to have happen is that we get excited about the shiny new project that results in misprojections, and now all of a sudden, the residents of Elk Grove are shouldered with the burden of providing a regional amenity on an ongoing basis. That's not something I can get behind in good faith. And finally, voter opposition. If put to a popular vote, an informed electorate would vote it down.
Thank you. Next up is Mike Buchanan.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. I have two disabled children, and I was the director for Goals, which is a nonprofit which provides leisure and other kind of activities for adults with disabilities. And we were going to, pre-pandemic, to Strikes Alley for a festival. They had 140 disabled people going there and such, and then when the pandemic hit, it quit, and then when it reopened again, it was not available to our group anymore. They said they don't want to house the people in, excuse me, I gotta cough, but they don't want to allow the employees to go there to accommodate. So, and the owner has moved to North Carolina, and I don't know if you guys have been to the alley lately?
Yes.
I mean, it's a dump. I mean, there's, when it rains, you gotta watch out for puddles, and nothing's being done, and this is a community resource for people with activities, and nothing's being done. I do know people have come to the board before about possibly building another bowling alley, and it was said that the city council said we already have one bowling alley and we don't need another. So I just want to, if you guys could look and see what we're dealing with here, it's a thing, like I said, right now, we're bowling, the kids are bowling over at Country Club, and it's a handful compared to what it was. And I'd just like to have that opportunity for people with disabilities that are in group homes and they have no other resource for activity. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.[1512.82][1512.82](applause) Could someone from code enforcement get in touch with this gentleman? Sir, if you can connect here with Darren Wilson, who might be able to assist you. Thank you. That was our final for public comment for non-agenda items, so I'm going to close the public comment opportunity and move on to the agenda. Next item, please.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Jason Bearman, City Manager. Got a few items to report on this evening. First of all, it's May, which means it's Bike Month. Residents are encouraged to take advantage of the great spring weather for cycling. Go and enjoy the various trails and other opportunities we have in our great community. Riding your bike is not only good for your mental and physical health, it's also great for the environment. The Trails Committee will host a community ride on Wednesday, May 15th, to share some of the routes and improvements being made to our local trail system. If you'd like to join the ride, please meet the group at City Hall at 9:30 AM on the 15th. Bring your own bike and helmet. We also have an upcoming event called Wagon Walk. It's returning to our Fridays in the Grove. It's an activity we've done for a few years now. It's going to be at the Preserve at District 56. May 17th at 5:00 PM, Wagon Walk will make its return. If you don't have a dog, it's okay. We're going to have members from our Animal Services Department there with adoptable pets that you can take home with you, so a great opportunity there. Love to see y'all out there again Friday, May 17th at 5:00 PM at District 56 out at the Preserve. The 2024 Elk Grove Community Survey has now opened, and residents are encouraged to provide their feedback to shape the future of Elk Grove. The city has been conducting this survey since 2009. Survey has two parts, which include a randomly selected household, which are part of a statistically valid survey, as well as a citywide opt-in survey for everyone to participate. Visit the city's website to participate in the survey through Monday, May 20th. If you have any questions, contact the city at 916-478-2238. We have a couple food drives coming up. First is for our four-legged friends, Animal Services Team. Pet food donation bin is set up at three different locations. One is at our animal shelter. The other one is at City Hall across the street. The other one's at Pet2Go at 9098 Laguna Main Street, number five. And that is going on all through the month of May. There's also, the Youth Commission is going to host a food donation drive that is going to also be at City Hall, the animal shelter, and District 56, and that food drive runs through May 20th. And finally, Big Truck Day is coming again. I always look forward to that. Join us in celebrating National Public Works Week at Big Truck Day on Wednesday, May 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at District 56. It's a great free event geared to kids ages 2 through 6, showcasing staff and the very large equipment that keeps our city running. This year's event will offer onsite activities, entertainment, special photo spaces. Food will also be available. For purchase, see the city's website for details. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for City Manager? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. And at this time, I will open up public comment opportunity for consent items. We have one person signed up to speak on item 7.12. Lynn Wheat.
So this particular parcel of land, a number of homeowners groups worked really hard with the two developers that went through this, and so when I read this, under consent, I was a little upset, so I'm just going to read my comments. I see no justification in the staff report or resolution for the deferral of the fencing requirement along the southern boundary of the Preserve until December 2025. The key component of the Preserve is protection. With no justification being provided, I have to conclude it is a marketing ploy to sell the buyers on open space with them believing that they can walk through there. And no fencing makes it easier to sell the homes, not habitat protection. Please do not be an abessor of marketing at the risk of environmental protection. Please do not be an abessor of marketing at the risk of environmental protection. Our homeowners groups worked really hard on trying to make this the best project. The developer did get a park located in that northern area. This is part of the rural residential area, and several of those people that really fought for this project and for the conditions of approval are no longer with us. I would like you to respect their memory and have that fencing put up and this be the Preserve it was meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our final—I'm gonna close the public comment opportunity. Oh, there's one more?
We do have one for item 7.4 from Mr. Michael Monaski.
Okay, it's not showing up here.
Yeah, I think it got buried down a little bit.
This is the rule on strode speed limits. I call them strodes because they're not streets and they're not roads, they're just arterials, the things that connect all the side streets together. I propose that maintaining high-speed limits on strodes banishes pedestrians and bicyclists and makes slower feeder streets unsafe due to differentials in speed. The new zoo will bring an average of over 4,000 visitors every day, 95% by car. Visitors are expected to number 1.6 million each year. This is negligent planning policy. But you know it's always about the money, isn't it? So the question I have—I have three questions. What happened to the broken promises made by the Sacramento Zoological Society to build $75 million in improvements between 2017 and 2032? What happened to the Sacramento Zoological Society's plans to move the facility to the old Arco Arena grounds? And finally, what happened to the financial backing and the cash endorsements of the zoo promised by the Sacramento King Sports Association?
Thank you. That's our final speaker on consent. I will go ahead and close the consent comment opportunity. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
Move consent.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, item 8.1.
Item 8.1 is a public hearing to consider resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant 2024-25 Action Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I am Alicia Tutt, your senior grants analyst. I'm here tonight to ask you to formally adopt the Community Development Block Grant 2024-25 Action Plan, which serves as the annual budget and implementing document for the program and is required by HUD to receive our 2024-25 funding. During the March 27th meeting, you weighed in on the allocations, which were incorporated into the action plan that was released for a 30-day public comment period, a copy of which was included in your packet. I'm happy to report that this week, the federal allocations were finally released and that the city is receiving a higher allocation than we originally anticipated, so we don't have to make any cuts. And therefore, staff will be adjusting the proposed allocations based on the strategy that was outlined in the action plan draft. No comments have been received by staff on the document during the public comment period, which closes this evening. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tutt. I will declare that the public hearing on this item is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't have anyone sign up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is now closed. Any questions, comments? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, again, commend staff, Ms. Tutt and your team for going through all this and making the recommendations. We know those choices are tough, so thank you. With that, I'd be happy to move staff for recommendation.
Vice Mayor?
Quick question, Ms. Tutt. With Table 1, where we have basically the block grant recommendations, are those going to be the final amounts that will be given to each of the entities?
They are, with the exception, since the funding was higher, the strategy outlined in the action plan was that we would adjust the administrative line item by 15% of the overage amount, since we're allowed to do that, and that the remainder of the overage amount would go to the curb ramp project. So those two amounts would increase, but all the others would stay the same.
Okay. With that, I'm totally fine with this, and I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Were there any other questions? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. All right, next item, please.
That'll move us on to item 8.2, which is a public hearing to consider actions related to the new zoo at Elk Grove project.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Christopher Jordan, Director of Strategic Planning and Innovation with the city. I will be leading us off tonight with quite a number of folks will be helping me out with the presentation this evening. Let's get this going. Okay. So we do have a lot of information to cover this evening. This is, of course, a fairly large project, so there's a lot of moving parts to it. We will do our best to go through this in as succinctly a approach as possible, working you through each of the elements, and certainly if there's questions along the way or at the end, we're happy to answer those. So the project includes a number of potential actions for council consideration this evening, including certification, the environmental impact report for the project, the creation of a new zoological park special planning area and rezoning of the site, approval of the project and its design, deviation from the city's naming policy as part of the financing plan, which we'll talk about later, and then review and feedback on the financing—on the prospective financing terms with the Sacramento Zoological Society for the project. So I'll start with a little bit of background and context for the project and how we've approached this. As you're aware, we've been working for the past two-plus years on this effort to determine, does this make sense for the city to be supporting the zoo and the potential relocation to Elk Grove? So we'll start with a little bit of the background. The current zoo, located in Land Park, opened in about 1927 on about 4.2 acres. The zoo today covers a little over 14 acres in total and supports about 380 animals across 94 species. It's operated and managed by the Sacramento Zoological Society since 1997. It was transferred from the city of Sacramento at the time, but the city of Sacramento maintains ownership over the physical improvements to the site as they exist today. The society operates the zoo under accreditation from the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, which is important consideration when thinking about the health and welfare of the animals on the site. Those existing facilities at Land Park do not meet the current AZA guidelines for animal care. Ultimately, the need for larger facilities is important and something that's been promoted through those new updated guidelines over the past 30-plus years. And so a series of relocations and expansion efforts have been studied around—for the campus, including expansion at the existing—excuse me—at the existing site, which the city of Sacramento determined was not viable, given the adjoining residential areas and availability of parking. They also studied a number of other sites around the city of Sacramento that none of them were ultimately selected by the city council there. In terms of why zoos matter—and you'll hear later this evening from Jason Jacobs and Liz Stollard from the Zoological Society—but three things that we focused on at a staff level have been the role of zoos around conservation, education, and recreation. From a conservation standpoint, zoos provide an opportunity for the preservation of endangered species through their programming, advocacy, and research efforts. There's a strong partnership between zoos across North America and elsewhere around the world with various conservation programs in areas of the world that need support for endangered species. From an education standpoint, these serve as learning opportunities for a variety of people from the youngest ages, kindergarten and on up or so, and certainly into college and beyond. As you'll hear later, the zoo operates in a special partnership with UC Davis and their veterinary program, where vet students and veterinary staff from the university serve as the veterinary care staff at the zoo, and it's a great learning opportunity for those folks. And then finally, in terms of recreation, it certainly is a safe, interactive, and unique experience for people and an opportunity for family fun and engagement. This project does align with various city goals and policies and outcomes we've been looking to achieve for some time. As you recall, the city's adopted a number of what we call council goals, including vibrant community, which talks about the attraction, expansion of nonprofit businesses, enhancing experiences available to residents and visitors, and promoting development of high-quality design. Our economic development goals talk about increasing lifestyle amenities and improving visitation across the community, increases in marketing and branding for the community, and being a regional leader. And this project has an opportunity to check all of those boxes. Within the city's general plan or our guiding document for land use and development, we talk about Elk Grove being a great place to make a home, a great place to work, and a great place to play. It is a family-oriented community with plentiful parks, and that we aim to be a center within the larger region, providing opportunities for employment, recreation, education, retail, industry, and residential development. And various policies talk about our investment in public infrastructure and community facilities. When we embarked on this project a little over two years ago, we started with a variety of research efforts. We visited not just the existing zoo up in Land Park, but also facilities at Fresno that are going through quite a massive redevelopment out there, as well as Houston, which is seeing a number of investments at their campus. Some of the findings that we learned along the way is the opportunity to present a variety of species to the public and providing education, support for conservation programs in that partnership with UC Davis, the opportunity to have an extended visitor pool, and we see that both at the Fresno and Houston examples, where the catchment area for visitors to attend those facilities is quite large. Even at the existing Land Park facility, it is quite an extensive direction, and again, you'll hear about that more from the society later. Some of the best zoos are embedded in and serve as anchors for the neighborhood and urban districts, and we absolutely saw that at the Houston example, which is the bottom photograph there, where the zoo is located immediately across the street from a very large medical center with multiple hospitals and a lot of urban development around it. And certainly, there are economic and community benefits around high-quality zoos that are quite extensive. And so we presented to you back in March of '22 a feasibility study analyzing the opportunity. This was based upon our initial engagement with the Sacramento Zoological Society and the exclusive negotiating agreement that was signed in September of '21. To support the potential advancement of the project, we identified a prospective property, which was acquired by the city in February of '22. And at the conclusion of that feasibility study in March of '22, you directed staff to continue working on the effort, and we ultimately developed a memorandum of agreement with the society for the next steps, including development of conceptual and schematic design, the environmental review, and a financing plan for the project. And so for the last two years, we've been advancing that work, and tonight are able to present to you all of those elements for your consideration. The site that we'll be discussing this evening is located off of Camera Road at the northwest corner of Camera and Lots Parkway. This is immediately west of Highway 99, near the Sky River Casino Complex. And as we'll talk later in terms of the access and circulation, the ultimate extension of Camera Road to I-5 and the widening to a four- and six-lane facility provides a lot of great connectivity and opportunity there. Lots Parkway will ultimately be a four-lane facility, providing northwest connectivity. And then additionally, in terms of transit opportunity, there's an opportunity to integrate it in with the future extension of light rail or bus rapid transit to this area and potentially serving as a termination stop for that extension. As we embarked on this effort and started working through the design efforts, one thing we quickly identify at a staff level is the existing zoning for the site, while allowing for the use with a conditional use permit, does present some challenges in terms of the approval process. And so how we go through and do that, the standards that we apply, what that process looks like, really, our existing zoning was not set up to do that. And so this evening, we're presenting what we're calling a new special planning area. It's a special zoning document that provides for the unique standards and approval process for the project. And so a SPA or special purpose—is a—excuse me—a special planning area is what we call a special purpose zoning district. It functions very similar to our other districts like general commercial, shopping center, and otherwise, but allows for what we call unique and imaginative planning standards and regulations, where we can get into the details about how setbacks, height restrictions, design standards, and all the various elements about how the site ultimately works—parking, signage, and so on. And so an SPA by definition must include a list of permitted, conditionally permitted, and prohibited uses, performance and development standards, and other components in order to be complete. And so what we prepared for you this evening is a six-chapter document that's in your packet. It outlines all the land use standards, development requirements, and the design plan and public infrastructure obligations, as well as the administration and consideration of the project this evening. To do that, the SPA is broken up into three districts. The zoo district itself, which is that brown color on the screen there in the middle, what we call the parking district, since we talk about the site plan in a moment, that'll make a little bit more sense, but there's two parking districts that provide for the visitor parking, and then in future build out of the campus, there is the opportunity for an employee parking district on the east side of Lots Parkway. And then the last zone is what we call the public resource district, where there's drainage infrastructure and a detention basin. And so then for each of those different districts, particularly zoo and the parking district, we set out the setbacks and height restrictions for those based upon whatever street corridor they're on or within the context of the surrounding area. And then the document also sets up the design standards and guidelines. In terms of the approval process, the SPA sets up something a little bit unique from what we traditionally consider for development projects. Normally, what you're used to seeing come forward, and say for like a shopping center project, we'll have a master site plan that we do through a district development plan, and then the architecture through a design review process for each of the individual buildings. In this case, because of the phasing that's proposed on the project and the complexities of moving everything through the design process, we're recommending to actually break that up a little bit. The first level of entitlement is what we call a district development plan. This will establish the overall site plan, the parking, the pedestrian spaces, the general arrangement of the habitats for the animals, and an overall strategy for landscaping, lighting, and other elements of the project. We then go into the design review process, which is the actual building design, and here we're establishing two levels of review. The first is for the major buildings and facilities. This is like the entry complex, the major restaurants, the animal care center, and so on. So as we get later in this evening, you'll see those individual building elements, and so those would be subject to city council approval under the Level 1 process. All the other secondary support facilities in terms of animal holding areas that are back of house, shop and support spaces, minor retail spaces, other sort of buildings that are elsewhere on the site would be what we call Level 2 approval, and those would be deferred to a development services director approval at a later date. Getting in a little bit to the circulation to get to the site, we'll start with our bicycle pedestrian trails master plan, which, as you're aware, is a big master document for how we pursue trails and other active transportation improvements around the city. This applies to both public and private development around town. The current plan for the area is based upon the existing land uses or prior land uses and circulation plan that existed under the former southeast policy area planning documents. As you recall, back in December, you approved the new livable employment area community plan for this area, and so there's a number of changes in the street infrastructure to think about in there, and we're working on those revisions to bring back to you later this year. But in terms of the project itself, when we think about how we get people to and from the site without having to take an automobile trip, there's an extensive opportunity to integrate the site in with the surrounding trail network that's been developed and is coming into fruition now with the construction activities to the north. And so the project is proposing some changes, and so I'll walk through those here. On the left-hand side is the existing trails master plan. On the right is proposed revisions, and as we'll see in the circulation diagram in a moment, what we're proposing is elimination—oops. Sorry about that. Is elimination of a trail—separated trail system between what we call Road B and Lots Parkway on the south side of the channel. It would remain on the north side. And then this blue line is actually what would have been Bilby Road connecting through here. We're proposing—again, that was done under the livable employment area plan back in December, the elimination of that section, and so to replace that, there's an extension of trails that come down what we call B Street, and then Lots Parkway would get a new separated trail facility, and there are connectivity between them across the front of the zoo campus, all connecting down to Camera Road in the future separated trail that would be down there. And then here's just some quick cross-sections to show what those environments look like. To the extent possible, we've created separated facilities so that bicycles and pedestrians are separated from each other, creating more safety for those users, and they're all separated from the traditional vehicle roadway system that would be off to the side. In this top example, this is showing again what we call B Street or B Drive that follows the western limits of the zoo project. Here you can see the internal service road for the zoo itself and the wall fencing material that would separate it from the public space, the landscaping, and then we have the pedestrian sidewalk, the bike lane, landscape break between those facilities and the street and then the street itself over here. Similarly, for classical drive extension—we'll get into that in a moment—it has those same separated facilities along the zoo frontage. And then Lots Parkway has a what we call a traditional trail, which is a 10-foot paved section with two-foot decomposed granite shoulders on either side to provide for that connectivity. Okay, let's get into the project design. So again, here's the project site, and as we start this process of how do we design a zoo, we immediately, first and foremost, look at what is the context of the site that we're working around? And so we think about what that proximity is to Highway 99, what are those traditional travel patterns that most people—truly regional trips—will take to get to and from the site? What is the interaction and the potential conflicts with uses that are existing today or in development? So we have certainly a lot of residential neighborhoods. We have the Sterling Meadows neighborhood to the east. We have the Sussedary Project to the north, so those are considerations to think about. And so we start sketching— And so, we start sketching out all of those details about how the site works and what those access points and opportunities and constrictions are, and how all that could potentially work together. We think about the transit opportunity that exists, what all the various pieces and how they work together, how's the drainage broadly going to work, do we need to move the detention basin, all that sort of stuff, start laying the foundation of what are the critical pieces to this, and where do they want to sit on the site? And so, that ends up giving us a lot of context. And some of the decisions that were made during the design process, I'll focus on the access and circulation first, is how do we get people to the site? Again, camera is the opportunity for that regional traffic to get to and from. We see people coming down 99, ultimately I-5, or coming up from the valley north and getting off along Camera Road and then being able to take those, take Camera to get to the site. Ultimately, camera is this urban street expressway, and so, direct access off of it is a really big challenge. You know, we have the connector JPA and its provisions about access restrictions that we need to be thinking about. And so, the plan that we've come up with is that drivers will come to Camera Road and Lots Parkway, they'll go north on Lots Parkway, and then utilize a series of roundabouts that'll bring them into the main entrance and into the main parking lot. As part of that arrival experience, you're presented with an opportunity to go to a curbside drop-off. So, if you have kids and strollers, you need to drop off a portion of your party. You have elderly folks, mobility-challenged folks, you have the opportunity to do that. There's then a continuous curb that then, as we'll see later with the education entrance, allows for the bus drop-off to then be separated from all the other guest drop-off that exist elsewhere. And then that continuous curb extends further up to what you'll see later with the events and restaurant space. Flanking either of those entrances would then be bicycle parking, and then we have then the main parking lot that's immediately there. And then, folks can come out through that continuous curb and come back around down to Classical and go back through the roundabout infrastructure to the extent needed. And so, the roundabouts were chosen for a couple of reasons. One, they provide for really clean, efficient movement of cars through at a steady pace. The dominant movements in the morning at arrival, when the zoo's getting ready to open, will be that northbound movement, and so, it'll be real easy for folks, and we'll be able to avoid a lot of queuing along Lots Parkway, allowing for that real efficient left-turn movement in. In the evening or in the afternoon, when folks are leaving the zoo, zoo's getting ready to close, it's regular daytime programming, we see folks leaving, you have a very simple right-turn movement to get down to Camera Road and then out to whichever direction you're ultimately going to. The distance, the separation distance from Classical to Camera does present some geometric challenge, and so, we're worried about the stacking that occurs if we were to have a signalized intersection here. And so, by having the roundabout, we're able to eliminate that and really focus on what those dominant movements are and allow for that continuous activity to occur in those cases. So, once folks arrive at the site, you're looking for a parking space, and we've done a bunch of analysis to be able to identify what does an average day look like. And so, we see that about 75% of the calendar days of the year that the zoo would be open, we'd need about 500 parking stalls or so to be able to support that. And so, we focused the north lot, or what we call the north lot, on that about 500-space component. It's parked right now at about 533. This would have all of the ADA parking required, all of the electric vehicle infrastructure parking to be required under the state building code, focused in that lot, shading, all the various pieces you would expect to see in that parking lot. To meet the other 25% of the calendar year, we ultimately believe that build-out, the site will need about 1,600 parking stalls. So, to make up for the balance of it, the south lot, it would be developed south of Classical Way, north of Camera Road, with access, again, at that same roundabout that provides access into the zoo, and we'd have those additional essentially overflow spaces. From a cost and design perspective, we're recommending that that be constructed as a gravel-based lot, a lot less infrastructure. That lot would also support all of the bus parking for school groups and other tour groups that would be coming to and visiting the site. Then, in terms of the ADA stalls, we're providing a little bit more than what the state requirement is. Normally, it's about 1.7% of the parking you provide. We're at about 2%. Electric vehicle spaces, there's 80 with charging infrastructure in Phase One, expandable to 327 at build-out. And then, on the parking, bicycle parking side, the way we've drafted the SPA is that a minimum 5% of the total number of vehicle parking spaces, you need to have the equivalent in bicycle. We're sitting at about 7.4% today. The site exists right now is about three lots. The way we've purchased it, it's based on some of the configuration and some prior telecommunications infrastructure that were out there. We need to set aside what those public right-of-ways, what the street system will be, and so, staff's recommendation is the approval of a tentative subdivision map that will break it up. To do that, there are seven lots. The sort of orange-brown color in the middle will be the zoo site itself. The parking areas are in blue in parcels two and three. Drainage infrastructure with a detention basin and the channel improvements are four and five, and then there's two remainder pieces, or remnant pieces, parcel six and seven, that would be on the western edge, a Classical and B-Drive intersection, that would potentially be saleable at some future date. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Hill with SHR Studios, who's been our lead designer on the project, and he'll walk through some of the design elements.
Just, CJ, before you leave, Councilmember Sean brought up a great point, and that is, because of the length of the presentation, we may ask questions during.
Absolutely.
Because it, you know, we know there's many slides coming, so just be prepared that we may just pause and ask clarifying questions. Thank you.
Were there any at this point you wanted me to address?
Well, now that you kicked that off, I'll kick it off. So, my question would be the roundabouts. And I'm just curious, because I know in Elk Grove, we have two, I believe, and more than that?
Oh, yeah.
Because I'm still, as we're looking at doing this, it's three consecutively, back-to-back-to-back. And then, looking at the pedestrians walking through, I know as we would like to think that drivers are often cautious, but predominantly, like, looking through the parking structures or the parking lots and everything, we're anticipating traffic flow, and then we're anticipating people crossing the streets. And three roundabouts, and seeing how folks drive within the roundabouts, kind of makes it a little bit unsafe, at least in my opinion, but I'm not an engineer, so I was hoping you can go a little bit into explaining that.
Yeah, I can go into it a little bit, and then Sean with Kim Lee Horn, our roundabout expert is here this evening, can get into more of the technical stuff for you, but broadly speaking, roundabouts actually are statistically safer than signalized intersections. There are fewer conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles as a result, where those crossing locations are. Again, thinking about the dominant movements, in the morning, the dominant movement is going to be the arrival to the zoo, going through this intersection. And so, as folks are coming northbound on Lots Parkway, coming out of Camera, there really won't be a lot of traffic coming around the roundabout and conflicting with them, so they become the dominant entry into it. And it really comes down to how we set up those lanes and striping. And so, by essentially providing both those lanes the ability to move onto Classical in the build-out condition, it allows everybody the opportunity to get onto that street without trying to decide where am I supposed to go. There's a sheet, this one doesn't have it, but in one in the packet, there's actually a sheet that shows some of the signage approach that we're thinking about doing, and sort of think about like directional signage, like you'd have at the airport or at a major sporting event facility, and so, it would give that directional information. So, I'll, go ahead.
And the zoos that we looked at with Houston and Fresno, do they have roundabouts?
Fresno does not have an entry roundabout, but their parking component is set back quite a ways from where the entry into the park is, and there's multiple entry points into that facility. Houston is the same sort of way, where you've got two or three major entries into that area. And so, I think Sean can probably handle more of the technical questions that you might have. Sean?
Yeah, I can jump in here as well, if you don't mind, CJ.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So, Sergio, to answer your question from the traffic analysis that was conducted, we looked at both traffic signals and roundabouts. That analysis revealed that the roundabouts perform better than the traffic signals from both a queue length that CJ mentioned before, so the average queue lengths are reduced with the roundabouts. They also perform better from, in terms of delay, so they provide less delay and less congestion overall, and that was reflected in the traffic analysis. Sean, you want to add to that?
Yeah, when we, and we looked at both scenarios, and really, there is a problem with the spacing of the intersections, and I think we've all been at closely spaced signalized intersections, and there's just a lot of congestion. And it's added to it when we're trying to move traffic, making a riot, getting over to the left lanes, so really short weaving. That creates some potential issues, and maximum queues are really long, and there's just a lot of turbulence and instability between those. The roundabouts offer a simpler solution and a more efficient way for traffic. There's less weaving involved. Fresno may not have roundabouts at the zoo, but they do have three roundabouts, multi-lane roundabouts in a row at the Save Mart Center, which is, you know, in the middle of, is part of the Cal State Fresno campus with lots of housing, lots of pedestrian access, and it's, they're effectively. How does it do as, when it relates to buses, though? So, the reason I was asking was because, you know, as we have children coming in through buses, we want to make sure that safety is like the most important thing. And that's kind of why, because, you know, buses turn, and we don't want them to get stuck there, or God forbid, something else occur, so.
Yeah, and definitely during the next phase, as we get into more detailed design, we'll look at a wide range of different design vehicles to size the roundabout appropriately to accommodate all those vehicles. And then, I think with the buses, the loading and unloading is going to be at the zoo curb.
Perfect. That was just questions I had for roundabouts, so thank you.
We can continue. Thank you. Next item on your.
Any other questions?
On this portion, I think we're good, so we'll continue on.
All right, so I'll hand it over to Jason, who's going to go through design.
Thank you very much for having me. My name is Jason Hill. I'm one of the partners at SHR Studios, and I'm honored to be on the design team, one of many designers and engineers that have been dreaming and debating and discussing and drawing the new zoo in Elk Grove over the past two years. And when we examine the history of zoo design, many of the celebrated advancements have involved teasing apart 50 to 100-year-old institutions to insert new and better habitats, educational opportunities, sustainable technologies into pre-existing fixed frameworks. Now, those frameworks were developed at a time when we exhibited animals in a different way. They were there for us to walk and gawk by, and instead of what we think of now as a conservation organization. With each addition and renovation, we moved the zoo closer to a conservation-focused ideal, but necessarily leave behind an uncomfortably large proportion waiting its turn to be more. So, imagine what we could create together if we could leave that outdated framework behind and create a new holistically conceived zoo for your community. The most exciting part of creating the new zoo at Elk Grove lies in envisioning a campus that provides a wonderfully complete experience for the city's residents, guests, its animal inhabitants, and the staff. We can create a campus where every piece is designed around nature and natural systems, instead of attempting to dress up a menagerie. We can ensure every encounter a guest has is filled with exciting moments that inspire a love of nature and wildlife. What you see here on the screen are the goals for the new zoo, outlaid by the entire project team, not just the design team, at the very beginning of the project. These ambitions provided the guidance for the design team every step of the way, and I hope you'll agree, as we look through the plans together tonight, that the new zoo at Elk Grove would fulfill every one of these aspirations. With this charge, we started, oops, wrong way, my apologies. We started by considering the ways in which a successful zoo is organized, the hub and spoke, like this, where a central area forms the anchor for multiple experiences, like you might see at Disney's Animal Kingdom, or the Main Street, where that central space is elongated, and each experience radiates off of that, like a Main Street in a town, where you can step into each different show. Or the prescribed path, where one experience unfolds into another experience, like here at the Columbus Zoo. Here, you can control the visitor experience a little bit better, but the guest doesn't have a choice necessarily on where they get to go. So, we looked at a lot of different options. I'm not going to go through all of these with you, and these are just five of very many, but it does beg the question of how do you organize a 21st century zoo? Historically, you used to exhibit what we call taxonomically. You'd put your cats with your cats, your bears with your bears, your hoofed animals with your hoofed animals, which led to a very science museum-esque organization. But that doesn't really lend itself towards conservation. What we're most interested in is trying to exhibit animals that live in Africa with other animals that exhibit, that live in Africa, so that you can have a conservation story there told through your exhibitory. Now, that's kind of the philosophical approach to exhibiting in a zoo. There's a lot of nuts-and-bolts ways to organize a zoo as well. For instance, here, we've got a parking lot to the south, which necessarily means the entry should be to the south, and there's also a restaurant that's both inward-facing and outward-facing. More on that later, but the idea is that that restaurant, in addition to being a great place to eat, has a killer view, which means you don't want to be viewing to the west, because in the sun setting, you'll have to draw all the shades, and you won't see that view. So, things like that needed to be accommodated in this planning. Things like, if you're looking through a glass view, you want to be looking north so that the sun doesn't come in and light your white shirt up and see it reflected in that glass. Those are all things considered, and we landed on ultimately this diagram here. It's kind of an elaboration on the Main Street concept, where exhibits radiate off what we call the Green Corridor, which is a working title for the pathway, where conservation, sustainability, and shady comfort for guests are the overarching concepts. It's based around a native California landscape, trying to tie back into some of those conservation goals, but you get to choose where you go off that Green Corridor, whether you're going to Africa or any one of the other exhibit zones. The other thing we've got is a complete perimeter road around the zoo. Now, that's something that every zoo wants and very few have, and because you're building a new zoo from the ground up, you could have that. It allows you full-service access to all of your care areas, your food service, guest amenities, without interrupting that excellent guest experience we were just discussing. So, while perhaps not flashy, this effort thoughtfully organizes the zoo in a way that lays the groundwork for orchestrating all those pieces that we started this conversation with. And once we have the general layout of the zoo, we can start thinking about those stunning animal encounters, experiences that you can only have at a world-class zoo, moments with wildlife that you can't get in the wild. We can feed a giraffe on a wide-open expansive savanna. We can explore the African forest with Okapis, colubus monkeys, and tropical birds. We can be in a free-flight aviary, moving through a flooded wetland, or on a granite outcrop with a pride of lions, like you'd see in Africa. This led to the overall master plan, the full build-out, as you see here. The red squiggle down the middle is the Green Corridor, that's centrally located in Main Street. On either side, there's an anchor, the entry on the left-hand side, and a hub on the right-hand side, that serves as a place to bring people together in food service, play elements, animal care, more on that later. The brown trails are exhibit loops, always bringing people back to the Green Corridor. Africa is on the page upside, we're going to talk about that in a little bit. California on the lower left, with animals like brown bear, river otter, and of course, elk. And then, over on the right-hand side, we've got the Australasia region with tigers and Asian apes and wallabies. The grand vision is ambitious, and it can't all be built at once, but the nice thing about this organization is the Green Corridor gives the opportunity for easier, easy phasing. That said, we've worked hard to make sure that we have a there-there, a complete experience with the center of the Green Corridor and those conservation-focused animals, along with the majority of Africa. So, let's look at what that plan looks like. This is the Phase 1A and 1B plan, and it is a complete zoo, twice the size of the current Sacramento Zoo, with bonus room to grow. So, let's check it out. In this first quadrant, we're looking at the savanna. This is a large, open, expansive savanna, larger than many zoos have, with room for herds of giraffe and other African antelope and zebra and ostrich. Here, there's a lodge, that purple building up on the upper left-hand side or kind of middle of the page. That's that dining experience I was talking about, that's accessible from both the inside of the zoo as well as the outside of the zoo. So, after a hard day of work, you can bring your family here to the zoo and have a nice meal while looking out over the savanna. There's also an event space with seating for up to 350 people, also with a wonderful view of that savanna, and all of those can operate independently while the zoo is also open, giving ultimate flexibility for wonderful experiences of different kinds. Over on the far-left, lower-hand side, that's the entry to the new zoo, the purple building and gray buildings there are admissions, guest services, those sorts of components, and again, the savanna in the middle of this space. As we move over, the next quadrant, this is the northwest quadrant, this is the additional Africa and exhibits. The grouping of gray shapes in that space is what we refer to as a kopie. It's the Afrikaans word for a granite outcrop you might see in Africa, and this serves as the central orientation point, very similar to Cinderella's castle at Disneyland, where if you move around to different spaces, as long as you can see that central organization point, you know where you are. This happens to be a three-story tall African kopie, that's measured from the parking lot side, which means when lions are up there, you're going to see them from the restaurant or from all aspects of that zoo, and really feel like you're exploring those rocky outcroppings. Here, we also have white rhinos, meerkats, cheetahs with an exhibit long enough for them to get up into top speed and a run, and then a casual food service venue here underneath the canvas, looking out over the savanna. The next quadrant, the northeast quadrant, this is the, that hub, that anchor to the end of the Green Corridor. Here, we've got a café, a themed pollinator play area. Here, we've got a cafe, a themed pollinator play area that would be fully accessible with views of squirrel monkeys and thick-billed parrots, a carousel, a train, and perhaps most importantly, an animal care center. This focuses on the whole life care of the animals. And with lemurs as the central example, you can see them on exhibit here. You can see back into the nutrition center where folks are preparing the diets for all the animals they care for, directly into the veterinary hospital, where you might witness a procedure on an animal that's being cared for by the Sacramento, or by the zoo staff. And then viewing into the bedrooms as well, behind the scenes, into what where the animals live when they're not on exhibit. In this final quadrant, the Green Corridor takes center stage, and you can see some of those conservation-focused animals we talked about before, from birds of South America to the Okapis of the African forest, giant tortoises from the Galapagos, geladas from the highlands of Ethiopia, alligators that were once on the endangered species list but saved by the action of humans, and squirrel monkeys. We've also analyzed the styles of architecture. And while some zoos prefer a themed approach to architecture, we really dialed in on this idea that the architecture is inspired by contemporary Elk Grove. This is a contemporary California landscape with some natural elements like these branched tree structures that form the the structure that holds the roof up as you enter into the zoo. When you see it from the other side, you can see those tree structures, and that same structure extends out into the landscape, providing shaded elements, knowing that when we first build this zoo, there's not going to be the big trees that you have at a more mature park. So finding ways to combine structured shade with natural shade is key. And then here, you also get that first glimpse of your animals. So this is a cross-section through that space. You can see the shade shelters over on the left. And now we're looking through that animal habitat with this wide open view of the savanna. Again, giraffe, antelope, zebra in the in that first view from the entry plaza and lions off in the distance as we scroll this this section over. Key here is making sure that you don't see the barriers or the animals that are or the people that are moving around behind the animals. What we really want to do is make this feel as much like an African panorama as possible. That giraffe lodge that I mentioned before is a lodge that's set right on the edge of an African water hole. So when you're having dinner there or having a lunch at the zoo, you can see the animals as they come down to the space to drink. It's a contemporary blend of ecotourist lodges, like you might see in South Africa, but really added in this level of contemporary California in it as well, this sustainable style of architecture. On the back terrace, guests can have a drink after work, play lawn games with their friends, or a meal with their family under shady terraces, all while getting these epic views of an African savanna. Here's a cross-section of that as well. The dining terrace is over on the left, the water hole spilling down from below, and then the African savanna unfolding, again, with those hidden barriers that make it so it appears to be an endless African plain. That animal care center here has a public face as well for the gelada cafe. This is a little bit more colorful and contemporary at the same time. And views from the other side of this building show that it's all about care. It's a cafe with a fully accessible restrooms, nursing rooms in the front, and all the spaces to take state-of-the-art care for your animals in the back. That animal care center is where people want to see how food is prepared for the animals in in the care of the zoo, perform surgery or other major medical procedures on those animals and what their bedrooms look like. Because you see, in the end, it's all about care. It's about well-being for the animals, but but also for the people of the community. The new zoo is an inspiring place for conservation, outdoor recreation, connection to wildlife, and perhaps more, most importantly, it's a world-class institution in Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. So I want to take a moment to sort of, we've seen the plans, and one of the things the design team has been doing to help really refine and think about how those spaces and how the interactions between the animals, the view sheds all work, is the development of an interactive 3D model that's been primarily for their purposes on the design team about figuring all the nooks and crannies out. As the council's aware, about a year or two ago, we adopt, you adopted, a smart city plan that looks at how we can incorporate data-driven decision-making and certainly the advancement of technology into some of the ways we do public outreach and engagement. And we saw an opportunity here to intersect those two, these two efforts together. And so we're very proud that we were able to partner on this project with the Franklin High School Full-Stack Developer Club, who was able to take the model that SHR and their team had been developing for the project, augment it by adding in a whole bunch of extra detail, animals with motion, and develop a model that then the public can go and visit on the city's website. And so I want to introduce tonight to Nuri Kim, who is one of the students over at Franklin High School and has been the project manager for their team, leading this effort. And Nuri's going to run through a couple of elements on their behalf.
Oh, thank you for having me. All right, thank you. So I'm Nuri, and I am a junior at Franklin High School, and this is.
I'm Jayden, and I'm also a junior.
And I am Clay Dagler, and I'm a very fortunate teacher at Franklin High School.
Yeah. So for this project, we got, last year, actually, I was an intern at Civic Summer. And so it was pretty awesome that I had like this previous experience with like government, local government and civics, and having to, being able to expand that with this scope of a project was pretty cool. So, yeah, it's for my role. I was the project manager, at least for the visualization side of things. And so I helped lead seven people. So it's three programmers and four CAD members, and they all helped to form this visualization. And our city liaison was Ash, and she helped connect with us, connect us with SHR Studios and the planning side over at the city. So she played a pretty critical part in bringing this project together. And also amazing support with other city staff, and that giving us feedback on our work was pretty, really helpful for the project.
And so for the visualization, we initially went through using A-Frame technology. And then we switched over to Twin Motion, which is a architecture-focused visualization software. And so what that allowed us to do was to publish it, as we mentioned before, on the city's website so that everyone can see it. And additionally, we also created a video render of the project so that people who might be having some difficulties with a 3D experience can just see a simple imagination of what the tangible zoo could be like.
So, yeah, that really helped us complete our objectives with creating an immersive and high-quality visualization for the zoo and rousing resident support for it. And also, we needed to collaborate as a productive unified team or else nothing really would get done. And so also, what was also important was providing clear and thorough communication with the people that we're working with so that the objectives were clear and the requirements were clear. And so during the development process, I think it was really great to see the positive feedback just for our prototype at the Open House event at Meowak Elementary. And I still remember seeing Councilmember Sue and Mayor, Mayor Singh Allen, so it's pretty cool. We also delivered a visualization that is now hosted on the City of Elk Grove's official webpage. And so being able to actually see an official webpage on the city website was pretty cool. We also, you know, also helped produce two videos. Sometimes the model takes a bit too long to load for the user to interact with. So having a video that that's pretty accessible to everybody over all devices is really well, too. And for our general experience, it was a really novel and exciting experience working on a project for the city and for a project of this size. And we also learned how to, not just learn technical skills, but also soft skills as well, learning how to collaborate, learning how to overcome, be tenacious, and persevere through challenges. And I think this is the biggest takeaway, I think, especially for high schoolers, and that's becoming better leaders, developers, and communicators.
Yeah, so, thank you, Nuri. This, I've been a teacher of twenty-five years, and this is hand down the best project my students have have ever experienced. I already knew they were top coders because I teach a computer science pathway and they're in it. But just to watch them grow, just Nuri and Jayden, as they led a team and they managed it, and if someone was slacking, they were on them and and their communication and working with the city and the and the other companies and stuff. And every year, because now I'm a CTE teacher, I have a advisory board made up of like computer scientists, you know, across the United States. And they're always talking about iterative development, the software development lifecycle. And it really came alive here. They basically, they created a prototype. They brought it to the public. They got feedback. And then they they edited it and made it better. And then they brought it back to the city and to the other companies. And then they got feedback, and then they brought it back to their team, and they continued to improve it and stuff like that, and just the growth. And I'm so glad I have these two guys next year because they're not graduating. It just has been a wonderful experience, and I really appreciate this opportunity that you gave me and and my students. So thank you so much.
Thank you. This, what a tremendous opportunity. I'm so proud of all the students that were involved with this. Those, you know, those life skills that you're learning. It's a living, breathing sort of resume to showcase all of the great work that you've done. So, you know, this is, this is one of the highlights, and just know that you played a critical role in our decision-making process.
Yeah.
So great work.
Yeah, I have a question. So first of all, I echo the sentiments of the mayor. Any college employers are going to be lucky to have any of you.
Absolutely.
Yes, and and thank you, Clint, for your work in instructing all of them. My question for you is, how long did it take? I don't really know the the industry, so in terms of, is it A-Frame or what? How long did it take you to produce these?
Yeah, so it was, I think, the spring of two thousand and twenty-three that we received word about this project. But it wasn't until the beginning of the school year in two thousand and twenty-three that we began starting to work on it. And so we first started with A-Frame, which is what they recommended. And so it was like an HTML library, but we soon realized that that was not powerful enough for such a large model, such a detailed model. And so we decided to switch over to Twin Motion, which is more focused for detailed, like, architecture projects. And so it really helped that SHR Studios already gave us a pre-built model. We just had to refine parts of the model and then add the animated animals, making sure that it looks pretty clean, and then exporting it into a visualization that could be hosted on the webpage. So overall, I'd say, I was like. Mostly since like August slash September, so.
Wow. And literally, all all the major breaks, all the weekends, they spent a lot of time working on this project.
In addition to all your regular classes.
Yeah, today, they took two AP exams for AP Computer Science A. They literally took the exams and they showed up here.
Pretty amazing. Pretty amazing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to commend you for the hard work. And I still recall, I believe we met during Civic Summer. And it's awesome to be able to see, you know, how you transitioned from a learning of leadership and then developing and then actually putting it into practice. That's amazing, and I will, I mean, we'll probably be seeing you in a couple of years up in the dais here, leading other projects too in the city. So thank you for the hard work that you've done.
Thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
I'd be remiss if I didn't offer you the ninety-second version of the video they put together. If you're interested, okay. There is a longer one up on the website. I, hopefully, this should work.
It's even better when you have the visual glasses on, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on a second. This thing didn't load right. There's supposed to be audio with it, I promise. Uh, no, it's a, it's a nice instrumental. They chose a great piece of music for it. Let me see if I can actually get those slides right. All right. We'll move on now to the conditional use permit. I think this sort of wraps up the backside of the land use and design piece. So again, the current zoning of the site that's office and industrial under the former Southeast Policy Area Plan does allow for a zoo, upon approval of a conditional use permit. We've maintained that through the draft special planning area document that's before you this evening. A conditional use permit or CUP, we call it for short, provides for the individual review of uses that typically may have unusual site development features or operating characteristics. I think we can all agree a zoo is quite a unique use with quite a unique operating characteristic. And so the intent of a CUP then is to ensure the compatibility of the surrounding areas and uses and try to address those potential compatibility questions. For the project, we have proposed a number of conditions relative to it. These are outlined in the resolution that's in your packet this evening. I believe it's the second resolution, attachment three. Some of those conditions that are included are limiting the use of amplified sound between the hours of ten PM and eight AM, with the exception of emergency announcements that may need to happen if in whatever event something were to occur. Conducting emergency drills on a regular basis in partnership with our police department to consume this fire. Implementing mosquito reduction best management practices is recommended by the Yolo, Sacramento Yolo Vector Control District, and developing, implementing an opening day traffic control plan. There was an additional condition that the planning commission had talked about at their meeting in reviewing the project. It ultimately wasn't included in their recommendation, but we have included it as a staff recommendation this evening, providing that there is a twenty-four-hour number and somebody you can reach at all times if there's any questions on issues or events occurring out there. You need to file a complaint or something, and that number is available to residents and neighbors to be able to call at any point twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So during the day, it's a regular staff person. Likely in the evening, it's probably somebody in the security office. There is somebody on-site twenty-four hours a day, so the ability to answer that phone and respond to those questions or issues. Next up is the art plan. As you're aware, city policy provides for public art facilities, or public art to be developed as part of public facilities. Our standards generally are two percent budget for the first ten million dollars of a project and one percent for every dollar, every million dollars thereafter. And so utilizing that same approach, we've developed a plan for the first phases, 1A and 1B, that has about one point seven million dollars in art acquisition, about four hundred thousand dollars in administration for a total art budget of two point one million just for the first phase project. To implement that, a master plan or arts plan has been developed in partnership with the Arts Commission. They reviewed it and recommended it to you this evening. It outlines for that first phase three locations where the art would be focused. First, the main entry, then along the Green Corridor, and finally, at the play area or fun zone at the terminus or the end of that Green Corridor, that Main Street pathway. And so each of those three locations have a different, has a different theme to it or different approach to the artwork. And again, this has all been developed with the Arts Commission. And so then the arts plan lays out the strategy for how we would go through the recruitment of that art, the selection process, and ultimately the installation of it down the line. So if the project were to move forward, it would be a capital improvement project under our approach. It'd be like any other capital project that you see on a regular basis. As you're aware, the CIP, or Capital Improvement Plan, is a five-year plan. We adopt it every year. We do updates to it. You'll actually be seeing next year's version at your meeting in two weeks. And projects that are ultimately listed in the CIP do need to be determined to be consistent with the general plan, and they need to be ultimately listed in there. So should you ultimately move forward with the project this evening, we're recommending that you find the project consistent with the CIP or with the general plan at this time. How we would list that in terms of the arrangement of projects, how many they are, their numbering scheme and all that. Our fabulous team at Public Works is still working out those details. We're sort of waiting on direction from you all this evening to finalize that. And so you'll see that in a future agenda item if you direct us to move forward, where we'd actually start the listing process and then start funding the project for the next phase of work. All right, facility naming. Everyone keeps asking what this thing's going to be called, and we're not asking you to make a decision tonight. All right, facility naming. Everyone keeps asking what this thing's going to be called, and we're not asking you to make a decision tonight. Instead, there are city policies around our naming of facilities. There was a resolution adopted many years ago that lays out the process for it. And at this point, while we don't have a name for the facility overall, we certainly want to make sure that there's a process in place to do that. A little bit different than what's called in the resolution itself. Additionally, as we'll talk about with the finance plan in a moment, there are a number of opportunities for sponsorship of various elements and features across the campus, even potentially some sponsorship of the campus itself. And so, how that process lays out is going to be different than what is in the facility naming policy you've already established. So, there's a resolution in your packet this evening providing for a deviation from that process. Essentially exhibits, features, elements, you know, if we're talking about an individual habitat or a shade structure, or even a bench, the naming of those things would be done through the city manager's approval. But for the entire campus itself, that's a decision for the city council that would come back to you at a later date. And so, we would then defer that, but we established the procedure for that now. Staff feels it's important to do so because it provides the society, again, as we'll talk about in the financing plan in a moment, with an avenue to then start that selection process or that recruitment process for those dollars to help realize the project down the line. Before we get to financing, let's talk about the environmental review. The California Environmental Quality Act requires us to review the potential environmental impacts of a project before you take action. The document needs to provide objective and informational information to the public about the potential environmental effects of whatever that project is. It identifies potentially significant, direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts as a result of the project, and is required to identify feasible mitigation measures to lessen significant impacts to hopefully lessen significant effect. The process we've gone through started what we call a notice of preparation that was released in November of 2022, once we had the foundation of a project description. In January of this year, we released the draft environmental impact report for a 45-day public review. We received comment letters from five agencies and 35 individuals. Those comment letters, along with minor revisions to the project and the EIR, were then compiled into a final environmental impact report, which was completed on March 22nd and is available in your packet. The EIR is what we call Project EIR, prepared pursuant to the guidelines that the state has laid out for SEQA documents. It examines the environmental impacts that result from the implementation of the entire project, all four phases that are outlined this evening in the design package, and all the various phasing that occurs within that spectrum. So, it provides for the totality of the review of the project. It identifies a range of potential impacts. The only two we were, that we've got to a spot that were significant and unavoidable were around traffic in terms of increased vehicle miles traveled, because the location of the site is not central within the overall region. And as a result of that, there are increases in greenhouse gas emissions as a result of that travel. All the other categories and topic areas that we're required to look at were determined to be less insignificant or less insignificant after application of all available mitigation measures. Those impacts, though, around vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas do have mitigation measures applied to them. They're just not sufficient in order to achieve the reduction targets. Having significant unavoidable impacts does not limit the city's ability to approve a project. We can approve those significant impacts or project with significant impacts. We, SEQA does lay out a process for balancing the economic, legal, social, technological, or other benefits, including region-wide or statewide environmental benefits of a project against those unavoidable environmental risks. And again, those two impact areas out of the totality that we analyzed are listed there. And so, that final EIR, along with the response to comments, a statement of overriding considerations in the mitigation monitoring reporting program would be your first action this evening, so if you so choose to move forward. All right, let's get into financing. I will start this off, and then I'm going to hand it off to Matt Paul, and our finance director is going to go through more of the details. Phase 1A, 1B costing. We've gone through a number of rounds of analysis around what the potential cost of the project is. And up here on the screen, we've summarized that for you broadly into two categories. First, what we call the onsite facilities, which is the zoo itself, the parking facilities, and all the associated costs in order to do the onsite improvements to the project. That totals out to be just shy of $260 million for all of those elements. This cost includes not just the construction side, but also what we call the soft costs, which are design, permitting, inspection, construction management, all of the sort of soft costs that you would have in terms of developing a project. It also includes a contingency, because the level of design we're at is not perfect. We know, for example, hey, we're going to have nuts and bolts that are holding this thing together. We don't know what size they are yet. We don't know how many of them they are, so we have a contingency to balance for that. We also carry an escalation, because the time at which construction would start on this project is not today. It's some number of years out, and so, we then escalate those costs based upon some assumptions around what inflation would end up looking like. And so, that's how we get to the $260 million for the onsite number. The offsite infrastructure, this would be all of the roadways themselves, extension of water and sewer infrastructure, and the drainage basin, another drainage infrastructure, as well as dry utilities, telecommunication, and power to the site. Our cost estimate there is for $44 million. All told, we're just over $302 million for Phase 1A, 1B, as that's the focus of the project at this point. So, now I'll hand it over to Matt, who's going to walk through the proposed financing plan.
Thank you CJ. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm privileged to walk you through how we're going to pay for this project. So, CJ outlined that total project cost of $302 million, and there are several ways that we propose to pay for that construction and design cost. The first bucket is our development impact fees. The city would construct the facility, so we would be eligible for reimbursement from the city's roadway fee program for road improvements, including lots and Road B, and for water and sewer improvements as well. The second bucket is city Pago. These are funds that the city has on hand, cash the city has on hand at the conclusion of the last fiscal year as of June 30th, 2023. The third bucket are our community partnerships. That consists of $50 million from the Zoological Society, along with $30 million from other regional partners for energy efficiency and animal care opportunities. And what's left over would need to be debt financed, which is that very specific number of approximately 114 and a half million. So, I talked about the city Pago sources, and they fall in a number of buckets. The first are our general fund reserve funds. I would note that these are all city discretionary reserves. Our rainy day reserve, or reserve for economic uncertainty, is not included in the financing plan. That's about $23 million as it stands today for emergencies and for cash flow purposes. That is not part of the zoo financing plan. These are all discretionary reserves that the city has built up over a number of years for an opportunity such as the zoo project. So, whenever we have money that's left over at the end of the year, our reserve policy, after we fill up that rainy day reserve, anything extra goes into these various reserve buckets, including capital reserve, economic development, and our opportunity reserve. So, these amounts are all in as of the end of the last fiscal year, June 30th, 2023, approximately 62 and a half million. The next category are casino payments. As you know, we have an agreement with the Wilton Ranch Ria Casino to, for one-time and ongoing payments for a variety of services, including roads, police equipment, police and code enforcement services, community facilities, and a tax and lieu payment. We have funds on hand in roadway and community facilities. Those are one-time funds, so those would be eligible to be used towards the project. We would use the first three years of the tax and lieu payments in our cash on-hand bucket. And in my debt financing slide, I'll show you that we're proposing to commit that payment ongoing towards the city's debt service requirement. Our third bucket in our cash that we have on hand are community facilities districts, or CFDs as they're well-known. There's two of them that we identified that could be used towards this project. The first is Poppy Ridge. The zoo project does qualify as a park according to the establishment documents for the CFD. So, we've got amounts on hand that could be applied towards the project. There are no outstanding developer reimbursements or pending parks in Poppy Ridge that would be impacted by the use of those funds. The second CFD is Laguna Ridge, and Lots Parkway is a named facility, so some funds in Laguna Ridge could be used towards the construction of that improvement. We also have Measure A, which is a transportation-related sales tax. Classical way in Road B could be eligible uses for that transportation revenue source. And finally, we have tree mitigation fees. Those fees could be used towards planting trees in and around the zoo project. So, I talked about the targeted partner funding of $80 million. The first category is energy efficiencies. And, you know, with a facility and a project of this scope and magnitude and cost, it's not just a city responsibility, it's really a regional responsibility. So, this financing plan definitely reflects that that commitment. So, energy opportunities would include solar and electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and the city would work with the society to secure partners to fund and construct those improvements. Utility companies, solar, electric vehicle companies, and state and federal grants would be potential opportunities to get to that amount. The second category are animal care opportunities, including the veterinary hospital. And again, the city would work with the society, and educational institutions, nonprofits, and corporate entities would be potential partners in that as well. And finally, the society itself is responsible for $50 million in donations and pledges that they would need to bring to the project to bring it to fruition. So, after we add up all of those funding sources, we're left with about 114 and a half million that would need to be debt financed. And we modeled out issuing tax-exempt financing, which is the most cost-effective and efficient and cheapest financing source that the city has available to it. We use current tax-exempt interest rates, which are about 4.25%. Assume that the city retains its excellent AA credit rating, and we use a 30-year term for those bonds. And so, that yielded about a $7.8 million annual payment. The society, as you can see from the table, will contribute nearly a third of that amount, with the city covering the remainder. I talked about that tax and lieu payment before, so we would commit that payment from the Wilton Ranch Ria MOU towards debt service. And the remainder would be covered by funds that the city has freed up by paying off obligations or obligations that are going to come off our ledger in the near future. So, for instance, our revenue neutrality payment, which is related to the annexation agreement with the county, they withhold a part of our property tax allocation. That final payment, as we classify it to the county, is, the final one is in fiscal year '25, so that frees up funds that we could use towards debt service. We paid off the Costco Development Incentive Agreement last year, which frees up additional funds. And finally, we have debt related to City Hall that finalizes in fiscal year '27. So, all of those sources free up funds that we could dedicate towards debt service. We're optimistic that hopefully interest rates will be lower by the time we get to market. So, let's cross our fingers and hope the Federal Reserve lowers interest rates between now and whenever we go to market. So, adding all those things up, our share excluding the impact fees is about 57%. Then, when you layer on the casino payments, it's less than 40% of the total costs. I'll note that the financing plan does not include any Measure E funds, nor does it impact any current programs or services. So, a project as large and complex as this, of course, has a number of risks, some of which are in our control and the society's control, and some of which are not. Those risks include increasing costs of labor and materials. We've all been definitely experiencing that over the last couple of years. Hopefully, that rate of inflation slows down. Increasing bond financing costs, depending on the amount that we have to finance and/or where interest rates are by the time we go to market, could be a risk for the project. There could be design and construction challenges that our current estimates don't reflect. You would be committing the, pretty much the totality of the city's discretionary reserves as they stood at the end of the last fiscal year. I will qualify that, as we note in the staff report in the financing plan, we will be replenishing those reserves to some extent between now and whenever we start construction on this thing. How much though remains to be seen, but that, those amounts, as I outlined in my prior slides, are the totality of those reserves as of June 30th, 2023. Securing $80 million of partner funding is no small feat, so that's definitely a heavy lift. Like I mentioned, some of these risks, we don't have any control over, like interest rates or the cost of materials. But others, we can take steps to mitigate those risks as best we can. One of those ways is producing additional cost estimates as we go along, so we can identify potential issues and mitigate them sooner rather than later, because CJ mentioned that escalation factor. Time is definitely money in this project, for sure. The city is working with, we have a bill introduced up in Sacramento to allow us to use construction manager at-risk methodology that can, hopefully, we can get the prime contractor on sooner, streamline the design, and establish a guaranteed minimum price, which will definitely mitigate risk in the project. I talked about the bonding. That will only issue those bonds if the amount that we need to issue and/or the rates are affordable and sustainable for us. That's very important for us, that we can afford and sustain that debt service payment for 30 years. It's really important. Coordinating fundraising is critical. That's a major component of the financing plan. We've got interim milestones that we built in to the term sheet that you see as part of your packet that will make sure that we're all following lockstep, every step of the way, to make sure that those funds are being brought to bear to the project when they are supposed to be brought. And finally, we've talked about a preview phase where a portion of the zoo could be open, so we could showcase that amenity to potential community partners and reduce our exposure to inflation at the same time. So, I talked a little bit about the the term sheet and the cost-sharing agreement. The term sheet is part of the packet, and we would be coming back to you if, assuming your approval, with a final agreement to bring back to you. So, I talked about that $15 million obligation on the, on the part of the society. You can see in the table on the slide before you, the different milestones. The actual, the detail behind that 12 and a half million is part of your packet, and staff actually visited the zoo recently and verified all of those individual pledges. So, we were confident that we're good to go there for that first milestone. The term sheet also outlines if financing milestones aren't met, that we could suspend design work until they are met. We will allow donations of both cash and materials. There is the potential that firms would want to donate materials that could offset the cost of the project, so we're going to leave ourselves open to that opportunity and work through that process as to how that would work. We talked about naming and sponsorship rights. That could be a really important part of the project's finances, and that would be subject to city approval, to society's responsibility towards that debt service. That 2.5 million is specified in the term sheet and would definitely be fleshed out in the operating agreement. And the society would be solely responsible for financing day-to-day operations and maintenance of the facility. No city subsidy would be required. So, that's all on the financing plan. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions right now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So, the next section up in the presentation is the operating pro forma and business plan. Back in 2022, there was initially a feasibility study prepared that looked at what the potential of the zoo project could look like. We had some cost estimates, and we had some operating conditions that were assumed in there. One of the things called out in our memorandum of agreement with the society that you approved two years ago this month, and how we laid out the steps moving forward, was that that plan would essentially be updated. We wanted to see an actual operating pro forma business plan based upon the project as designed, and see what those first five years of operations would look like. And obviously, that then ties into how that debt service can ultimately be repaid. So, I'm going to turn it over now to Rick Biddle with RSNS, who's prepared the zoo's operating pro forma business plan to walk through those details for you.
Good evening. I'm Rick Biddle. I'm managing partner of RSNS, and thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. The RSNS, as CJ said, we did the 2022 feasibility study and then updated it earlier this year to reflect both Phases 1A and 1B. I thought before I just go through my slides, I'd give you a little bit of context that would be helpful, because I've worked in the zoo and aquarium business for over 30 years. And for 14 of those years, I've been working in Sacramento to relocate the Sacramento Zoo. 14 years. First with the City of Sacramento, with society, and then with Elk Grove. And I'm going to use two technical business terms to show you where we are after 14 years. And one is wow, okay? And even wow-wow, right? To where you come in two years is amazing. To accomplish what you've done is just unbelievable. And the second sort of business term off the, is high-five. You all deserve, not only you as leaders, you as the society that's behind me, the city folks, you deserve a high-five to, in two years, accomplish what you've done. And so, what comes down in the next three, four, or five years, I have a great deal of confidence in you. And I'm excited for you. But you should know that what makes institutions, cultural institutions, zoos in particular, successful, yes, the animals are important, but it's leadership. And leadership is number one. And it's amazing the leadership I've seen in this project to date. So, that's not the business side, but that's the heart of the business, is leadership. So, I applaud you. I give you a high-five. I give this group a high-five for everybody that's here, because it's really, really amazing. Because the last zoo to be constructed, built, full zoo, was in 1988, Indianapolis Zoo. I know my math's not very good, but that's 35 years or so, right? Think about that, right? 35 years ago, and probably won't be another zoo built like this. So, you have an opportunity to, again, lead, lead in the industry, lead in the world. Trust me, when the, the world is looking at what is happening here, okay? And you should be very proud of that, as I am proud to have worked with you and with the, with the society through the, through the 14 years. So, let me quickly go through a couple of slides. So let me quickly go through a couple of slides. All of this was in the feasibility update from twenty twenty-four, but I'm happy to quickly deal with this. CJ, where am I doing this here? So with this presentation, there's lots of words, but what I just focus on, for those that are behind me, is just look at the bold words. And why are we doing this? You're doing it for the animals, right? You're doing it for their visitors, or as I would say, our guests, okay? Collective guests. And whether they come to the to the new zoo, or whether they experience it through other ways, in schools, technology, there's, it's the ability to connect with those guests, and it's for the community, right? This community, I mean, again, the support that it's had to date, and they're behind the zoo. I've seen these signs behind, cool zoo. It's a cool zoo. It's really, again, it's really, it's amazing to see it. I'd say that it's also the vision, the ingenuity and the innovation that has been, that you've heard about, between what SHR has done with the city. It is an innovative zoo that you're seeing. You're setting it up for the next ten, twenty years. And then the last is, again, I come back to this leadership. It's because of the strong leadership of the city, of the society, and of this community. Okay? Oops, let's see here. Let's see here. So again, I just, I touched on this earlier, but we've, this is, we did the original study in twenty twenty-two, updated in twenty twenty-four. In that update, we reaffirmed the attendance, again, with phase one and one A and one B. We looked at the financial projections, because it's now looking at as a twenty twenty-nine opening. We looked at then public, private funding, and then what are those key funding strategies, all of which I'll touch on quickly as we go forward here. Attendance, we've looked at the attendance for the new zoo, again, phase one and phase two, phase one A and one B, as a baseline of eight hundred and fifty thousand people. As we've noted, it's about a sixty-three percent increase over the zoo's current visitation. And that number, what we look at in doing the feasibility, the first year, first, actually, two and a half years, you'll be above the baseline, because of the excitement that's built in this community. And then you'll stabilize your operation at eight hundred and fifty thousand people for the first five years. I just give you a context that, you know, people say, well, how good's eight fifty? If you look at it from two things. One, is zoos are built off of repeat visitation, right? It's the ability to come back over and over. Again, as you've seen in the plans, there's lots of new things, different offerings, seasonal offerings, daily offerings are going to be there to drive that visitation. The second, just as a benchmark, because it's in your relative community, is Fresno. People always ask, well, how does this zoo compare? Fresno today, in a small, in a larger market, draws a million visitors a year. So again, we're under, we're looking at this on a conservative basis, so that we can operate it on a conservative basis. We want you to do a million visitors. We don't plan for a million visitors, right? Really, really important, okay? Some of the key business strategies is that we'll be a dynamic pricing structure, which means that it fluctuates time of the year. Dynamic pricing is in everything we do, from airline tickets to, in some cases, restaurants, right? So we'll continue that. Parking will be included in the price of admission, and there will be, as you heard, there's ample parking to support the visitation. Membership is almost going to double with the new zoo. Part of that is with the community, the Elk Grove community. The Elk Grove community would receive a discount on their membership, but this will be a community zoo, supported by its membership. And then last is the marketing, is that you can have a great zoo, but you have to build the awareness of it. And you can see that the projections are that we're investing almost six percent of our operating funds in the marketing, branding, advertising of the zoo. Significant increase over where the current zoo at Land Park is spending. So not only have we created a quality experience, we've built a staffing plan, the staffing plan for phase one and phase two supports, full support of all the animal, all the key staffs, there's a hundred and thirty-nine positions, and we provided then the advertising, marketing, branding dollars to support that, okay? And then last is, when we look at the projections, again, I said this a few times, conservative, because that's how we plan. We want you to, you know, we want you to exceed a million visitors. We want you to, you know, to have per capita growth beyond what we've, but we've had to look at this on a conservative basis. We've done it in twenty twenty-nine dollars, so that's five years from now. So we've extracted out those dollars. We've assumed that there's no additional capex to be conservative, so what, in theory, the three hundred and two million dollars, that's what will be spent. There'll be no other dollars spent in the first five years. We're not saying it shouldn't be, right? But it, again, to be conservative in the thinking. That there's no annual support, which is mentioned a moment ago, there's no annual operating support from the city to support the zoo. And then built within the numbers are two things. There's a debt service component, and there's a repair and replacement number, right? Both of those have been allocated and supported through the pro forma projections, okay? So we've made sure that not only the current zoo, but the future zoo is supported. Again, it's in the packet. This is the pro forma that we've pulled together. You can see the visitation, the numbers across the top. You see it increasing and then stabilizing back at eight hundred and fifty thousand people in the out years. Again, we fully believe that you're going to exceed those numbers, but be conservative. The one thing that people ask me, I'll just answer the question for you, is what's your level of confidence, right? Because we're not operating the zoo, we're working with the zoo to help operate. But if you just look at the success, look at the leadership of the zoo today at Land Park. Look at what land, how they run their zoo, the leadership that's there, and you can see it in these numbers here, is that, you know, it generates today about eleven million dollars, right? And more importantly, it operates at ninety-eight percent self generation. So ninety-eight percent of that money, or probably ninety-nine, Jason's going to tell you, is really self generated, right? So the fact that they're doing what, how we're setting up the model today, and more importantly, they're having the ability to generate operating resources on the bottom line. So they have the ability to operate successfully, they operate at five hundred and twenty-five thousand visitors, and to run a solid, well balanced, well thought out financial model, business plan, right? So that's the confidence that you have, right? And how they run their business, and they have done it, if you go back, year in and year out, for at least the last seven years, right? So that's a confidence that you should have in the numbers with a team that's going to be in place to run your zoo. Lastly, I would talk about just the allocation of the fifty million. As, and I think Jason might get into the numbers a little further, but we've allocated this based upon four buckets, as I would call it, of funding. Part of it is what's generated by the society itself. You can see their success in their operating budget. You have partner commitments, and those partner commitments are typically through the food and retail side. You have naming rights. This is, again, an, this is something that we've obviously talked, Jason's talked to the city about, seeing a significant opportunity. Again, the first zoo in thirty-six years, my guess is there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be looking to brand with Elk Grove and the zoo. Naming rights is new into the zoo industry. It's, as you know, it's done with convention centers and arenas, but it is a trend that's moving very, very quickly within the industry. And then the last is private support. There are the contributions from individuals and donors, right? I talked about the naming rights, I'll go for it, but it's one of those opportunities that only you have, really have with the new zoo being constructed here. Okay, I think there's one more. Oh, so we'll talk about the risk, and I'll just quickly touch on some of these, but each of these core elements, you can see here, from attendance to admissions to staffing, we've assessed the risk through this. In all of the cases, it's a low to mid risk, because you have the flexibility within the operating budget, right? From the standpoint of utilities, how we've allocated the utilities. We're assuming the society would pay for all the utilities. We can see the last one, that we've allocated a number that's proportionally below where Fresno is, just to go back to that model. So it gives us the flexibility and the confidence that, again, that we're conservative from that standpoint. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but the report addresses in a little greater detail the risk, but I'm happy to go from there. So again, thank you.
Yes, councilmember Sue has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rick, for the presentation and your conservatism built in this pro forma. I just had a few questions. The, as far as the household memberships, you mentioned twenty-four thousand. I understand your stating in here is low risk, but can you give us non-zoo experts an idea of why is that such a low risk number?
Because what happens with, that members, members join because of the value proposition, right, and the support, right? And again, if you look at what's being programmed in the new zoo, there's a lot of value, right? I mentioned too, that that visitation, successful zoos are built off of repeat visitation. That's primarily because of members, right? And if you look at the attendance allocation, there's a significant allocation on the membership side, because we see that people will make those value decisions. It's worth visiting, because I can come for free, if you will, right? Pay one charge and come for free, right? So if we benchmark this against other regional zoos, the percentage of what in the MSA and percent of the total visitation, you're below each one of the thresholds that we looked at.
Okay, so you're saying compared, and I asked this, I mean, I had a zoo family membership myself for my kids at the Sacramento Zoo, but so I'm just, so what you're saying is, can you compare this against other regional markets? This percentage is a low number?
Yeah, I would say almost every one of the comparisons, if you look at, you know, looked at how we've allocated the P and L from an expense side, how we've allocated the revenue side, given the fact you're a hundred percent self sufficient, you know, it's self generating revenue. All of those numbers, you're performing below, if in theory, below being a good thing, below where the benchmarks are.
Okay. And then a follow up question to that, you know, you mentioned attendance, and I appreciate the comparison to the Fresno Zoo. When you look at, how does that compare against, let's say, a San Diego Zoo, when there's other things to do? Because I feel like this area has other things, and I'm not trying to slam on Fresno, but I'm just saying that when you're competing.
It's a pretty cool zoo.
It's so hilarious right here. No, but when you're, but when you're competing, right, against other things to take the family, other venues, right? So Alan mentioned San Diego, because everybody thinks of San Diego Zoo. So could you speak to that?
Sure. Good news, bad news, right? There is only one zoo like San Diego out there. I think it's total visitation. This year will be close to five million people. So yes, I understand the comparison, but it really isn't a comparison. You know, to give you an idea, Oakland is about nine hundred, almost a million people. San Francisco is seven hundred thousand people. Monterey Bay is, you know, I think one point four million visitors. So LA is much higher. So if you sort of think about the California Zoo's going down. So, you know, again, I go back to what I calls in the box, right? And when you come to the zoo, what you see being programmed, what you see being designed and being offered, right? The innovation of creating unique experiences that you want to come back for. I go back to my repeat visitor, right? Very, very important. And I think the other thing that I just, it's in the feasibility, wasn't really talked about, but is that this is a zoo that you can program what I call nine to nine, and not every night, but you can have the ability to go to the zoo at night. And I mean, it was talked about from a dining standpoint, to go and have a meal and look over the savanna. You don't, you can also go to the zoo some of those nights, right? As you're finished work, or, you know, working from home and want to go take a walk, you're in the community. You're going to be surrounded by the community, right? And to have that is unbelievably, you know, is an unbelievable opportunity. So I think what you have, what you, and I say you, because you have, this you is a collective you, have programmed, is very forward looking.
Thank you. And I appreciate all of that. And as you know, the pro forma looks pretty good, but you got to make sure you know what's going into those, to those assumptions, right? And again, I appreciate you laying out these assumptions and the risks associated with it. So and last question I have for you in that regard, the animal care costs in the pro forma, is that something that budgets that all the animals have just average health, or does it account for, you know, amounts of higher need because of some bird flu or something like that?
I would say this, those are two things that I just would share with you, that in any, the zoo's operating budget, and this is true here, about sixty, sixty-two percent of the total cost are allocated to personnel and related costs, so the benefit cost, right? So between sixty and sixty-five percent is really what it turns out to be. We have fully funded, we met with the staff, the animal staff, each one of the departments at the zoo, and looked at where they are today at Land Park, and now with the collection that's coming there. And we have one hundred percent funded those full time positions. So we didn't cut this, we've supported every one of their needs. The second piece of that is related to, the biggest cost is the animal feed. And I don't remember the detail of it, but the investment in animal feed is probably a fifty percent increase over what it is today. And it's probably higher, so I can go back, it's in the assumption, I apologize, I don't remember that specifically, but there's a significant, it's in personnel and in animal feed. And then the third element is the vet care, which is fully supported through the UC Davis Vet School, and that's an allocation that's within the operating budget.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to the next portion.
All right, we're almost done, I promise. We'll move through the last couple pieces fairly quickly, actually. So first, the economic impact analysis, you may recall back in twenty twenty-two, we had commissioned an economic impact analysis to help look at what the potential economic benefits to the city and the region are as part of the project. Again, that was conceptual, based upon what we were theorizing at the time in that feasibility analysis. And so now we've got it updated based upon what is in the actual project before you this evening. I'll hit some of the highlights of it, but of course, it's in the packets, you can refer to it and look at some of those. But some of the numbers that the consultant has identified here, five year benefits, about four million dollars in city sales and transient lodging tax revenues, nine point four million in county and state sales tax that would come from the project. Some of those second pieces are really, it's a change in location, so it's not necessarily an increase, a one hundred percent increase, there's a transition of moving from Sacramento to Elk Grove in there. There's one time construction impacts, about four hundred and twenty-five million dollars in total cost there, while the project cost is three oh two, you do have the labor income, and that dollar then recycles through the economy a number of times, and so it gets a little bit of amplification that happens there. About twenty-four hundred total jobs on the construction side, hundred and seventy-one million dollars in labor income, and then indirect and, excuse me, indirect and induced benefits, economic benefits in the project, hundred and seventy-six indirect and induced jobs. These are jobs at Elk Grove businesses that get created as a result of visitors that are coming to Elk Grove to experience the zoo, employees that work at the zoo, going to those other businesses and enjoying the services and benefits that those businesses provide. And then from that, about seven point nine million in labor income each year at those other businesses. So certainly a number of items there. I'll touch briefly on public engagement and comments. Over the course of the last two and a half years, we've hosted about thirty community events, presentations, and informational sessions about the project. The most recently, last month, to go over the details of the financing plan. There's been extensive public comments that have been submitted to the city about this project. You have them detailed out in attachment ten, as well as the various green sheets that have come in over the last couple of days. Suffice it to say, over three hundred comments have been received at this point. In the staff report, we talk about, as we've gone through and tried to analyze them and categorize them, by our math, we're at about ninety-one percent stating support for the project. If you add in the most recent letters we've gotten the last couple of days, and you factor in all those organizational letters that are also there, we're pushing up closer to about ninety-four, ninety-six percent. So definitely a lot of positive comments have been coming in about the project. And so, next steps and recommendation, if you decide to move forward with the project this evening and move staff's recommendation, we will begin, or we will be finalizing the financing agreement between the city and the society. That would be a future agenda item for your consideration. Again, the term sheet's in the packet, Matt went over it earlier, so any feedback around that. Ultimately, we will bring back master services agreements or contracts with the design teams to be able to move into the next phase of work and ultimately into setting up for construction. We will continue to pursue the SB seven thirty-nine bill that Matt mentioned about the construction manager at risk process. Very grateful to Senator Ashby's office and Senator Ashby herself for carrying that legislation for us, considering it. And so will there be a process of that legislation is successful, we begin to bring on, go through a proposal process and bring on the contractor for the project and the construction management firm. And then ultimately, there'll be an operating agreement, there would be one between the city and the society for the actual operating component. city and the society for the actual operating components of the project. And so staff's recommendation for you this evening is to move the items that are in your packets, the three resolutions and the ordinance covering CEQA, the rezoning, the project design approvals, and the deviation from the naming policy. We're also seeking feedback from you as necessary on those financing terms as I mentioned. And I will note that relative to the environmental review, the ordinance for the rezoning and the project design approvals, the planning commission heard that last month and is recommending approval 5.0 on those. That concludes staff's presentation. We do have a couple of slides from the society themselves, so Liz Stallard and Jason Jacobs will get up in a moment to go through those and some other details from their operations side for you, but I will pause if there are any other questions you may have for staff or the consultant team at this time. All right, I'll turn it over to Liz and Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jason Jacobs, and I'm privileged to be the executive director of the Sacramento Zoo.
And good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Brewer, the council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Elizabeth Stallard, the president of the Sacramento Zoological Society's Board of Trustees.
We're just going to do a quick 101 about zoos and how the Sacramento Zoological Society is prepared to support this project. Sacramento Zoo was opened in 1927, has over half a million visitors a year, houses 91 species and 349 animals. The amount of animals and species has been in steady decline for the last 20 years due to the fact that we are on a limited footprint and we do not have the space to meet AZA standards and guidelines for keeping many of the iconic animals, which we have lost over the past 20 years, such as hippopotamus, grizzly bear, tiger, and chimpanzee. The zoo is AZA accredited. We were able to maintain AZA accreditation at our March 2024 hearing. The only reason we were able to maintain accreditation is we have made very tough decisions about the animal collection over the past six years, which have included shipping out the tigers, chimpanzees, and multiple rare birds such as palm cockatoos, island hornbills, red-nobbed hornbills, rhinoceros hornbills, et cetera, et cetera. We had to send out 20% of the animal collection, and we still have many empty exhibits because they simply do not meet modern standards. And.
Bottom?
Oh, the bottom.
Oh, down here.
Oh. Oh, there we go. I thought it was this thing. There we go. All right. So sorry. Okay. Zoos of the past kept animals in cages, concrete areas and grottos. It gave the illusion of the wild, but they did not, right? That is not the zoo we want to be, but we are still working with elements such as these at the current Sacramento Zoo. In fact, the last major public investment at the Sacramento Zoo was made in 1961. This is what modern zoos look like, and these are all photos from zoos around the world, such as in Florida, New York City, Belgium, and even a rainforest in Omaha, Nebraska. Modern zoos are about immersion exhibitory, where you go to the zoo, you feel like you're in the habitat with the animal, and you end up caring more. As I mentioned, the Sacramento Zoo is AZA accredited, and there's a lot that goes into being AZA accredited. They inspect your facility every five years on all of these factors that are listed, animal management and animal care. When you're AZA accredited, you are with a network of over 200 zoos in this nation, and we are not zoos like you would see on that show, The Tiger King. We don't send animals to hunting ranches, we don't send animals to be sold as pets. You could send an animal to an AZA zoo and know it's going to be cared for, just like we just sent a male giraffe to the San Diego Zoo, and San Diego Zoo Safari Park sent us a male white rhinoceros, because we manage animals as one global population looking at the genetics. AZA zoos are also stoked in education, and we're going to talk more about our educational programs in just a moment. Conservation, they inspect our safety procedures, and finally, our operations to make sure we have good standard operating procedures, and we are running a nonprofit business with a mission. But the fact is, zoos save animals, and these six animals here would be extinct if it were not for zoos. The oldest example of that is the Bronx Zoo and the National Zoo in Washington DC saving the American bison from extinction over 100 years ago. Closer to home, in the bottom right-hand corner, is the California condor. When there were 27 California condors left in 1987, you know who the US Fish and Government placed them in? Into the hands of zoos, who knew how to care for condors and bred these animals and ultimately released them into the wild, where we now have over 500 condors flying. But the other species, like the golden lion tamarin, the Micronesian kingfisher, the bali mining, and the Arabian oryx, all were saved from extinction by zoos. We make that commitment. None of these animals are very flashy, none of them. Maybe the condor you could put on a billboard and get people to come to the zoo, but we do it because it's part of our mission. And we help conservation with direct funding to conservation partners throughout the globe, not just here in California to save species like the western pond turtle, but our conservation efforts reach throughout the globe. And the reason we're able to do that is by having a zoo that sees over half a million visitors a year. Every year, we dedicate a budget line item to conservation, where we have donated well over a million dollars to direct field conservation in the last decade, and that doesn't even include staff time. Zoos also contribute to conservation by building capacity within zoological parks to manage groups, herds of endangered and rare species. Many people know what a zebra is, but the grevy zebra only numbers 3,200 individuals in the wild. Masai giraffes are undergoing a silent extinction, and many other animals are facing incredible challenges, animals that people know, like lions and tigers. But few people realize that there's only about 3,500 tigers left in the wild in all of Asia. Zoos are going to be needed more and more in the next decade, 20, 30 years, because the fact is, there is no wild left. The only place that these big animals exist are in protected areas like game reserves and national parks. And that little turtle to the right, the western pond turtle, that's the only native freshwater turtle species here in California. It's being outcompeted by the introduced red-eared spider. Do you know who the state asked to take on these animals for head start breeding programs? It's the California zoos that do that. They're not flashy, but they're an important part of our ecosystem, and they're adorable little turtles, and we're proud that we, we take care of over 17 of them at our zoo. So education, there's formal education from kids going to camps, overnights, participating in programs, and then there's informal education. And you can see all the school districts that have visited the zoo in the past three years. Some of these districts are over an hour and a half drive away, but each day, like today, we had over 1,500 children visit the zoo. And it's not just schools that are involved in educational programs at the zoo. The zoo pioneered zoological medicine with UC Davis School of Veterinary Medicine. We have a world-renowned program where we can call upon incredible resources to take care of our animals with veterinary science at UC Davis, and we have students that go to UC Davis particularly for the connection with the Sacramento Zoo, for a program that has been in existence for over 60 years. I'm going to give you two examples of species that are facing tremendous challenges in the wild that we take a special interest in. The one is the thick-billed parrot, the only species of parrot native to the United States. It's found in Arizona, in the Sky Islands. It's also found in the Sky Islands of northern Mexico. The other parrot species native to the United States was the Carolina parakeet. It went extinct over 100 years ago. These birds are extremely challenged. They live in an eco niche of those Sky Islands where they nest in trees that are riddled with parasites. There are only 71 of these birds in 10 institutions in the United States. We manage that entire population at the Sacramento Zoo. We manage the largest flock of those parrots at the Sacramento Zoo, and each parrot that is hatched is precious. If we were a zoo that just cared about bottom line, I would put a bunch of lovebirds and cockatiels in that aviaries, but this is a species that we have saved from extinction. We have hatched more than 100 at our zoo, and it's a program to be proud of. The other species is the okapi. The okapi was the last large mammal discovered. It wasn't discovered until 1901, and it only lives in the Democratic Republic of Congo, which is a tumultuous area of Africa at this time. Instability with government, and our conservation partners that work in the field are facing things like food shortages or family members being kidnapped and murdered. It's not a pretty picture, but throughout it, this animal survives, and it survives because a good majority of its budget comes from zoos, and the program is all about people empowerment. We take care of the people who live there, and they take care of the animals. And once again, Sacramento Zoo manages the entire US population. They look at the genetics, Melissa McCartney, our senior animal care manager, manages the population of both the thick-billed parrot and the okapi. There are 89 of these animals in 27 institutions, and they are hanging on by a thread. They're the closest living relative of the giraffe, and we are very proud to have them. We're one of only three zoos on the West Coast to care for this animal, the other being Los Angeles and San Diego. And with that, I'm going to hand this over to our board president, Liz Stallard.
It's always challenging to follow Jason, but I will do my best. I would say also, you're going to have to give me a moment because it has been a long time coming to be here tonight. I think I have about six months on Rick Biddle. The first board meeting I attended as a trustee at the Sacramento Zoological Society, we were talking about the need to move the zoo. And here we are, a short 14 years later, finally talking about a vote that might make it happen. And so thank you for that opportunity. I cannot thank you enough. I also want to take a moment tonight to thank everyone who has helped us get here. Every letter, every email, every conversation, every dollar, every effort to tell people about this project and how important it is have all contributed to getting us here tonight. And we could not have done this without all of that incredible support. So I would like to ask all of those who are not standing already, if you can stand up if you are here to support the zoo tonight. And I won't claim to be a math expert either, but I am confident there are dozens of people outside who feel the exact same way in that hallway. There you go. Some of you may be wondering what the Sacramento Zoological Society even is. We've talked about the society and we've talked about the Sacramento Zoo, so I do want to talk about that distinction tonight. The short answer is that the society is a nonprofit organization, and it took over the day-to-day operation of the current Sacramento Zoo from the city of Sacramento in 1997, when the zoo was faced with losing its AZA accreditation and losing its USDA exhibitor's license, which would have shut down the zoo. I'm telling you this because I want to confirm for you, as you can see from history, that the society knows how to run a zoo and run it well, because we've been doing it for decades. So well, in fact, that we have historically been the highest-attended regional attraction, hosting over half a million visitors a year, four years. And that's without dedicated parking and with a zoo that is less than 15 acres in size. But there's only so much we can do in our current space for the animals or for our visitors, as you've heard plenty about tonight, and of course, that's what brings us here for this vote, for these resolutions this evening. I'm not only the president of the society's Board of Trustees, I'm also a parent and a business owner in this community, and I have lived here for almost 20 years. I know firsthand how important it is to have educational, enjoyable, and unique experiences in this area for families, for employers, and for visitors. And I'm not alone in believing that the zoo project is a win for the entire region. I know this because I hear it from people in this community every day, just like today. And most often, I'm asked, well, when's that new zoo going to get opened? I also know the community shares my belief in this project because the society has already raised, as you can see on this slide, $15 million toward this new zoo project. As you may have noticed in the prior slides, our benchmark for tonight was 12 and a half million. We've already exceeded that without even having a project approved. That's important because it shows the support that this community has for making this project happen, not just within Elk Grove, but in this entire region. I also want to tell you, as you see on this slide, that assuming things go well for us tonight, we are ready to go on the next phase of fundraising. We are prepared with grant writers to help us pursue those funds. We have already been working with a third-party vendor, Superlative, who's prepared to help us seek those naming rights and sponsorships that you've been hearing about tonight, a company that already has a successful track record in this region, working with Safe Credit Union and working with the Roblin Center in Roseville. We also, of course, are going to continue to pursue private gifts and donations from this community, from both individuals and from organizations, and we're going to continue to throw the amazing events that many people in this room have attended, our fundraisers, our galas, our happy hours, everything that keeps people coming to the current zoo and helping us fund the future one. Actions speak louder than words. All of the actions that have gotten us here tonight confirm this region is ready for a new zoo, and this community supports it. This is a transformative project. It will elevate the reputation of Elk Grove and of this region as a whole. These opportunities are extraordinarily rare, and I truly believe we will look back on these votes and this night as a threshold event in the trajectory of not just Elk Grove, but this entire region. On behalf of the Sacramento Zoological Society, its trustees, its staff, its volunteers, its donors, its partners, and most of all, the animals, thank you for giving us the opportunity to maybe have a beautiful, inspiring, and new home. We can't wait to be your neighbor. Thank you. And if you have any questions for Jason, we're happy to stay here.
Any direct question? Yes, go ahead, council member, Susan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jason, and Liz, for your presence and your involvement these last couple of years we've been working with you. Mr. Biddle mentioned earlier in his testimony about the importance of leadership, and the two of you have been the face of this for, on behalf of the Zoological Society, in interactions with all of us. And it was very obvious tonight, both of your passions and knowledge for this project. So my question to you, while not legally binding, but you've been at this 14 years already, right? I want to know your commitment to seeing this project through and beyond.
You want to go first, or you want me to go?
I'm committed to doing whatever I can to make this project happen. I mean, we meet with everybody, we talk all the time about this, our team is leaving no stone unturned, and a lot of the responses we get is, we want to see what happens on May 8th. That's what we're getting from the foundations and from some of these other bigger partners. So we're committed to making this happen. I'm committed to making this happen.
And speaking for myself, I often, plenty of people have heard me say I'm in the seventh year of my two-year term as board president. I will tell you that the trustees, when we decided to support this project and support it unanimously, another commitment we made is that we would freeze the terms of current trustees so that we would have that continuity of leadership. They've also graciously continued to elect me as chair so that we can have that continuity of leadership. Our commitment, I believe, and I won't speak for them, but is to have leadership in place until we get that zoo open at least. And I'll tell you, they probably couldn't chase me away if they tried. And so our expectation is that we will be here to continue to interact, to maintain that history and that commitment until we get this project done.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't, it's not so much of a question than it is a comment. You know, as we started this journey over two years ago, it's really your leadership and definitely staff and, you know, the passion here of our council members and previous council members. But your leadership was instrumental getting to this, to this phase. And having attended several events at the zoo and knowing the potential, the fact that you've already raised over $15 million is quite remarkable. And I've been in some of those meetings where I know those pledges are coming as well. So, you know, I just wanted to recognize all of the work that you've done getting, getting us really to this stage as well, and those little, the zoo mission studies were definitely very helpful in letting us see what an act, you know, what a modern zoo could look like, where the animals are thriving and have vast habitat to thrive in. And that's really been a transformative process. I've actually gone beyond our study missions and have done my own as well and have visited other zoos as well to see what these, what this could look like. So I just wanted to pause and say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't take credit, we're supported by an extraordinary group of people as well, but thank you.
Councilmember Spies has a question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So $15 million is impressive. Can you help me understand what the composition is of those donations? Is it cash in hand? Is it large donor, small donor? Can you help me understand what that looks like?
It's about $2.5 million cash in hand. The pledges come in based on time periods, mostly five years.
Up to? Five years up to? Is it, at most is five, five or less?
Some five or less, it just depends.
Are all five or less?
No, not all of them are five or less at this time. There are a variety of people who have donated, some have donated. We had a group of brownies donate $500. We had a nice anonymous couple give us $1 million. You know, these people, it comes from all walks of life. What we haven't dove in yet are the corporate dollars, right? Because corporations want to make sure this is a go before they commit their name to it. And I can tell you that, you know, for a project that has yet to be a And I can tell you that, you know, for a project that has yet to be approved, it is incredible to get fifteen million dollars in commitments. It is absolutely incredible, and it just shows you that many of these people live throughout this entire region. Some of them are here tonight, who live right here in Elk Grove, who have raised, who have already committed. So, there's, no donor is alike, right? And it would be very difficult to say what each one of these compositions is, but there's a variety.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
I think I remember some Girl Scouts also raising a couple of hundred bucks. Lisa Kaplan's daughters, who raised some money too. So, yeah, I've definitely seen the wide range. Any other questions, or we'll move on to, I guess, the next presenter? Or is this our last?
We are the end of the formal presentation.
You are the end of the formal presentation. Well, what a great way to end. Want to thank you for your time, and at this time, I'm going to go ahead and switch over to comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I will declare that the public hearing is officially open, and I just want to announce that we have, I think, about forty people signed up to speak. So, that's, that's a lot. So, what I, what I suggest, and I don't want to limit your time, which I can do as mayor, but I don't want to do that. What I'm going to recommend is if you've heard comments that are comparable to yours, state your name and maybe one, one nugget of new information that you want us to, to hear. Very easily, you can say, you know, "I agree with some of the previous speakers." Otherwise, you all, I don't, I can be here all night, but you all will be here for the next couple of hours. So, I'm trying to manage the time for all of you as well. So, with that in mind, do you all need a break, or we just take them as you need them?
Keep rolling. I'll just stand when it's time.
All right. Okay, very good.
No offense, it's hard to sit up here.
For, for that long period of time. So, we are going, I'm declaring that the public hearing is now open, and I'm going to start. And you can line up as I say our names. Our first speaker is Maggie Ellis, followed by Dennis Mangers.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Maggie Ellis. I am a fifth-grade teacher at Carroll Elementary School and lead association director for the Elk Grove Education Association. In preparation for this meeting, I sent out a survey to our educators in EGUSD about their educational and personal interest in the possibility of having a zoo in Elk Grove. I sent it on a Friday afternoon, thinking I wasn't going to get any responses. I had over a thousand responses in short order. Eighty percent of those respondents had an educational interest, eighty-seven percent had a personal interest. Those numbers are a clear indicator that many educators support the building of this zoo. We often say that educators plant seeds. The building of a zoo can plant seeds for thousands of children in ways we haven't even imagined yet. Eventually, elementary students will take a field trip to the zoo, but they will also conduct research and become ambassadors for the conservation of animals and their habitats, learning how we all are connected on this planet. However, field trips and reports, while exciting, are just traditional ways of engaging students. Research shows that hands-on learning through the multitude of career academies and pathways connect with students. We typically think of 4H in agriculture groups as the ones benefiting from partnerships with the zoo, but there are so many other connections that have been created. Imagine construction trades and green energy academies, discovering how infrastructure is planned, and the multitude, multitude of steps taken in the building of this, the building process. Architecture and CAD classes explore how unique it is to design habitats for animals. Digital design, which you saw tonight, and multimedia arts could create information boards, videos, art highlighting animals and educating the public. And who's to say culinary academies are just for humans? Why not a strand of culinary education that focuses on animal nutrition? That was something at two o'clock in the morning I came up with. As I said, the connections are limitless, and this could be in our backyard, providing community-based learning opportunities, which we know last a lifetime and will change with the times. The zoo organization has thought of schools, having a loading zone for buses. You got your teachers right there, because that is a nightmare. In my letter of support, I described how my own childhood experiences at zoos stayed with me for fifty years. Your approval of this project can provide lifetime memories for the children of our region who may one day discover a career because of a seed that was planted by an experience at the Elk Grove Zoo. I hope that you see the value of this project, and your educators are right there with you.
Thank you. Next up, Dennis Mangers, followed by Kyle Atwater.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Denny Mangers, and for the last four years, I've had the honor of serving as a senior advisor to Sacramento's Mayor Darrell Steinberg. During that time, the director and the board of the Sacramento Zoo invited me to join them for a preview with the architects of a new and greatly expanded zoo. I was very excited at that time, and once my many questions had been asked and answered, I advised the mayor to also come for a similar presentation. He too was immediately impressed with the proposal, but assumed that the next step would be to find the acreage needed within our own city. I observed that process carefully, fully expecting that the perfect site would be identified and then funding, and all of the other logistics in such a venture would ensue. But as you know, none of the sites explored in the city of Sacramento met the specific needs of our zoo, and there was no possibility of expanding the existing site. Thus began a series of meetings to further discuss alternatives, and frankly, I thought that city pride in Sacramento in having its own zoo, no matter what's condition, and the kind of parochialism that too frequently taints such considerations might prevail. But the exceptional director, Jason, and board of the zoo had approached your team and begun to weave a plausible scenario for moving the zoo here to a much larger location in Elk Grove. They had a persuasive design, they had data with regard to credentialing, conservation of endangered species, and they had a compelling case around the housing requirements of the larger animals that drive attendance to the zoo. But their best argument to my mind was the imperative to treat these magnificent animals in a more humane way, giving them the space and environment needed to ensure better health and longevity. Because of the limited space available in our existing zoo, regulation and best practices had resulted in the transfer of too many of our larger animals to zoos that had greater capacity. Our mayor started turning the conversation away from the predictable parochialism and toward considering the zoo as a regional asset. And that, of course, is where you come in. You do have the space in your rapidly growing city, and you have many of the requisite elements to effect the relocation and rebranding of this regional treasure. Others this evening have already related to you the economic and other benefits of pursuing this bold concept, so I won't bore you with repetition. Personally, I choose to think of this project through my perspective as a former elementary schoolteacher and principal. This will be such a gift to the children of this region as they witness the beautiful animals portrayed in their books and films, but alive and moving in a setting that approximates their natural environment. Of course, they'll be entertained, but more importantly, as the previous speakers mentioned, they will better learn the importance of interspecies respect and the interrelationships between themselves and the animals to which they are almost mystically drawn.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Kyle Atwater, followed by Beth Weed.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for the time to speak with you. My name is Kyle Atwater, and I am the owner of the Chick-fil-A here in Elk Grove. While my family and I are newer to Elk Grove, we are not new to Chick-fil-A. During my eight years of pursuing my dream of becoming a Chick-fil-A owner, my wife and I have always said that we wanted to live, work, and play in the same community. Now, with two boys under three years old, the word "play" has taken on a new meaning. I currently own a business here in Elk Grove. We currently own a home in District One here in Elk Grove. And lastly, we currently play here in Elk Grove. We shop, we attend church, we go to parks here in Elk Grove daily. And thinking about the potential of having the zoo move here to Elk Grove is a tremendous opportunity for our city and for our community. Not only the economic impact that has been spoken to and great deal, but the opportunity for impact with our school district and our kids. The potential job opportunities that would be provided in the city during the construction phase, but also upon completion of the zoo is significant. To be potentially doubling the attendance of the current zoo is a tremendous opportunity for the growth and business of Elk Grove. The zoo will be yet another attraction for families to desire to live, work, and play in Elk Grove. In addition, a pillar of not only Chick-fil-A, but also the zoo is education. Because of that, I'm currently working with multiple Sacramento Chick-fil-A owner/operators at what a partnership, a multi-year partnership with the new zoo here in Elk Grove will look like centered around education. So, as a business owner in Elk Grove, a resident of Elk Grove, and a father dwelling in Elk Grove, please vote yes for the zoo. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Beth Weed, followed by Jocelyn Kazakian.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, and councilmembers Sue and Brewer, Spees, and Roblis. My name is Beth Weed, and I'm here tonight to strongly support the development of the new zoo in Elk Grove and to encourage you to affirmatively adopt the three resolutions set forth in the agenda as recommended by the council staff. Tonight, I am here wearing three hats. First, I'm an Elk Grove resident since nineteen ninety-three, and I have watched Elk Grove become incorporated and grow into the well-planned and vibrant city that it is today. Second, I'm a docent with the Sacramento Zoo and who gives her time to help further the education and conservation message. Third, I'm here as an individual that's put her money where her mouth is and has been an early donor with a monetary pledge over five years towards the development of the new zoo. I was raised in San Diego and spent many hours at the San Diego Zoo. I had many formative experiences that were instilled, that helped me there and instilled a love for the AZA and the mission of the conservation and education. Having grown up with a gold standard of zoos in my backyard, I seldom visited other zoos until I had the opportunity to visit Sacramento. I was pleasantly surprised about a lovely and high-quality zoo it was. As I was considering retirement, one of the things I wanted to do was be a docent, and I have enjoyed being here with the friends and the mission and the work here. After seeing a presentation to the docents about this new zoo and seeing the preliminary statistics, I knew I had to do what I could to help make this a reality. I made a, as they call it, generous donation, and I also encouraged others to do the same. It is clear that the Sacramento Zoo is in need of additional space if it is to continue as the quality institution that it is. A new zoo is an investment in the future of Elk Grove, and the financial expenditure of the city will be repaid many times over. I'm providing my time, my money, and tonight, my advocacy in support of a new zoo for the city of Elk Grove. This is Elk Grove's time to shine and show that it is a truly world-class city. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your support.
Thank you. Next up, Jocelyn Kazakian, followed by Walt Hess.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Very excited to speak with you all. I think I've met a few of you at the zoo. My name is Jocelyn Kazakian. I am a zookeeper and a supervisor at the zoo. I actually oversee the ungulates, so your giraffe, zebra, the rhino, the okapi. And I got to tell you, as a zookeeper, one of the true joys of being a keeper is not only taking care of these endangered animals every single day, but also seeing the joy on the faces of people that come and visit our zoo. And just today, I hear, in the rhino exhibit, I hear kids coming up, and they're like, "Oh, rhino!" They're screaming. They're so excited to see these animals, and it truly brings a smile to my face while I'm shoveling a hundred pounds of filth, which is, you know, a part of my job. But I got to tell you guys, to have a zoo in Elk Grove, the new facility, would be just a dream, and we can make that a reality, I think. And having those modern facilities is going to help us grow. We're going to have more animals and more opportunities for those happy, happy faces to see those animals in a more naturalistic space and allowing our animals a greater level of welfare, which is something I strive for every single day, providing those animals that high, high level of care and welfare. So, also, on that note of those kids, being able to inspire our next generation of zookeepers to come in and share that same passion that I share for our animals is something that we would be able to do in those larger facilities. So, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Walt Hess, followed by Dr. Janessa, and I'm not even going to try to pronounce the last name. Sorry. Dr. Janessa.
Hi. Thank you for being here to let us be here today. My name is Walt Hess. My wife and I have been a resident of Elk Grove for only thirteen years, so I'm relatively new. But we've been involved, and we have supported the zoo financially. We've made a substantial pledge to the zoo for the new project. I live in the Glenbrook residence here. I've got a cold. Live in the Glenbrook residence, and in February of this year, along with some of my neighbors, we instituted a little pledge drive to see if we could support the zoo financially. And I'm happy to tell you that in about two months, we raised just under fifteen thousand dollars in hard cash for the new zoo. A testament to what at least a number of our residents, many of whom are here tonight and, you know, out there in Wonderland watching, support. But, you know, I have something different I wanted to say today, but what I really want to say is, I'm really proud to be a resident of Elk Grove for a number of reasons. The zoo was just one of them, but the leadership that you guys have shown over the last two years to bring this to this point is unbelievable. Same thing with the Zoological Society. They've worked hard for years. I've only been a docent for ten years, but for ten years, I've seen the need for a new zoo, and I've seen that opportunity fail because there was not an opportunity presented. That has changed, and tonight, we have the opportunity to make this a reality. Sure, there are challenges ahead, but I'd like to kind of end on, on a comment that our mayor made, if I don't, if you don't mind me reading. And she, she ended her State of the City address by saying, "We have challenges, but my goal as your mayor is to be able to look back on the great work that we have done together and say, 'Mission accomplished.'" And I hope by your affirmative vote tonight, we can look at the new zoo as a, as a landmark opportunity for Elk Grove and for the residents, and for the neighborhood, and for the community, and for the region to say, "Mission really accomplished." It's a, it's an opportunity that we just don't want to let go. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Janessa, followed by Jeff Halston.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Dr. Janessa Jeltima. I'm an associate professor of clinical zoological medicine at the UC Davis School of Veterinary Medicine, and I'm a board-certified specialist in the field. As you know and have heard multiple times this evening, the School of Veterinary Medicine at UC Davis and the Sacramento Zoo have enjoyed a long-term, close collaborative partnership. Dr. Murray E. Fowler, who is often referred to as the father of zoological medicine, started the world's first zoological medicine residency training program and curriculum through UC Davis and the Sacramento Zoo. So, we have an incredible legacy with this partnership. UC Davis veterinarian staff, the current hospital over at the Sacramento Zoo, where they provide really high-quality veterinary care for the animal collection and provide clinical training and educational opportunities for the veterinary students at the veterinary school. Our zoological medicine training program, which is, you know, run through Sacramento Zoo as well as UC Davis, is also a partnership with San Diego Zoo Wildlife Alliance as well, and ranks as the top program in the world for this particular field. This year marks the fiftieth anniversary of this incredible partnership, and I'm proud to be a part of that, and UC Davis's as well. So, I'm going to switch over a little bit here. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of Dr. Mark Stetter, who is the dean of the School of Veterinary Medicine at UC Davis. In addition to being dean, Dr. Stetter practiced as a zoo veterinarian for over twenty-five years and worked at some of the leading institutions, including the Bronx Zoo, Central Park Zoo, and the New York Aquarium. and the New York Aquarium. Prior to joining higher education, Dr. Stetter spent 15 years at Disney World and directed the animal care team at the Disney Animal Kingdom. And I'm going to read his support letter for this, for the new zoo.
Hey, you've got 30 seconds.
I can do it. "The School of Veterinary Medicine continues to be ranked as the top program in the country. Part of our long history of excellence includes a very strong partnership with the Sacramento Zoo. The school's mission to train the next generation of veterinarians is enhanced by this close partnership. Both the training of veterinary students and the residents, who are preparing for board certification in zoological medicine, greatly benefit from this collaboration. Many people have tracked the origins of zoo medicine back to UC Davis and the joint program we have had with the Sacramento Zoo."
Thank you. All right. Next up, Jeff Halston, followed by Zach Wondell.
I'm a mayor and city council. I had a brilliant speech prepared, but it's redundant, so I'm going to hit the highlights. So, I grew up in Sacramento. My kids grew up in Sacramento, and the zoo is a huge part of their lives and my life. And in the, I gave the same speech to the funding commission. In total disclosure, I have a daughter who's graduated from UC Davis vet school in two weeks, large animal, and a daughter who's a primate zookeeper at the zoo right now. She went to Europe to get a master's degree in primate cognition, came back to Sacramento to be an animal care zookeeper at the Sacramento Zoo. And I, I've made a six-figure contribution to the new zoo. In the business community, I want you to know that there is tremendous support. And Jason's right, there's huge reluctance until there's a approved project. But I had the opportunity today to drive by the zoo. I drive by the zoo quite a bit, and I saw those yellow school buses lined up, and there were about two dozen of them. I had a chance to look at the names, and they're from all over Northern California. And, you know, I just started thinking that my kids grew up in the zoo, the four kids, and all of those kids are the future zookeepers like my daughter and the future veterinarians like my daughter, and the measure of a city is what we bring to the table for our kids. And I got to tell you that I've been involved in the zoo, with the zoo, for a long time. I couldn't be happier to be here. Elk Grove has shown tremendous leadership, tremendous vision, and I would ask you to wholeheartedly support this project and know that the Sacramento regional business community is completely behind it and that we've got a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach Wondell, followed by Rachel Herota.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for your public service and for your military service. I grew up in the Greenhaven Pocket area, now a 21-year resident in District Four here in Elk Grove, own a small business of 25 years, also run a nonprofit that donates about $150,000 a year to two children's hospitals. That's been going on for about 15 years. Also volunteer weekly in the Sacramento Zoo, about 250 hours a year, working side-by-side with the zookeepers, shoveling that 100 pounds of stuff and filling feeders and whatever else is required, building projects, whatever they need. And I get to work side-by-side with zookeepers, which is interesting. I'm almost 50 years old. A lot of these zookeepers are under the age of 30. They have no problem telling somebody almost the age of their father, "Hey, can you grab a mop and go clean that? Can you grab a broom and go sweep that? Hey, there's some cobwebs up there we need you to get." These are our future leaders, but they're also, it's, they're future leaders, but they're also people that don't have a problem telling older adults what to do and how to lead. I grew up going to the summer camps at the Sacramento Zoo. It's a full-circle moment for me to go back to the zoo, volunteer, help out, and get back to the community. I'm in full support of the new zoo here in Elk Grove. There are kids today going to our schools that will go to summer camp, that in 30, 40, 50 years will be volunteers just like me. There are older adults like me that in 20 years will be docents, greeters, whatever it may be. Instead of being a Walmart greeter, I hope to be a zoo greeter someday. So, it's, that's my retirement plan. So, I encourage you all to do this, and hopefully you guys can be Walmart and zoo greeters with me someday. I think we're all about the same age, so thank you.
All right. Next up is Rachel Herota, followed by Mackenzie Davies.
Hi, I'm Rachel Herota. I'm a second-year veterinary student at the University of California Davis School of Veterinary Medicine and the incoming president of the Wildlife and Aquatic Animal Medicine Club at UC Davis. I've always had a passion for wildlife, mainly stemming from watching Animal Planet on TV as a kid. But whenever I would visit my grandparents in the Greenhaven Pocket, I'd sometimes have that lucky chance where we got to go to the Sacramento Zoo just 10 minutes away in Land Park. And watching these two-dimensional images become these three-dimensional, fully fledged organisms and creatures with unique diets, environments, ecosystems, behaviors, and medical needs really brought me to this field, and as you can clearly see, contribute to where I am today on my career path. As a veterinary student, the Sacramento Zoo provides numerous invaluable opportunities and educational opportunities with zoological medicine and surgery, whether it's in our clinical rotations as part of our clinical curriculum, or field trips, wet labs, lectures, and our annual student-run symposium at UC Davis in regards to zoological medicine. Additionally, the Sacramento Zoo, as Dr. Jeltima mentioned, provides a number of postgraduate opportunities for veterinarians and researchers to elevate zoological health and welfare, not only on a national but international stage. I was very lucky to be one of those children that was the seed that grew into who I am today, as many of our educators and other community members have been talking about. And ultimately, I want to see Elk Grove community be able to push on the opportunity to the rest of the children, the youth who are here today that I got to see, and hopefully in the future, be able to call them my colleagues. So, thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Mackenzie Davies, followed by Nasreen Asaf.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie Marler. I'm an Elk Grove resident and principal of Maryhill Laguna. Last summer, when my husband and I decided where to buy our first family home with our two young children, we chose to live right here in Elk Grove. I am honored to speak to you today about our vibrant and expanding community, as well as the potential that the zoo project has to create an education partnership that will inspire future scientists and conservationists. Elk Grove embodies family, community, and progress. We aren't just a place on the map, we are an ever-growing community of lifelong learners. Elk Grove is a beacon of diversity and reflects a mosaic of cultures. This city is a place of growth and opportunity. With a positive vote tonight, Maryhill looks forward to a partnership with the zoo. This partnership integrates our organization and community members who work for the zoo by offering discounts on education for zoo employees. Offering these discounts will expand the group that is served by our organization by reducing the cost barrier of quality early childhood education. We also plan to utilize this partnership to provide fundraising opportunities and to gain buy-in from both Maryhill parents and the larger Elk Grove community. The new zoo project will give us a newfound opportunity to explore and inspire our little ones to care about conservation and education. Maryhill School's mission aligns similarly with the zoo's mission statement, striving to create a positive learning environment, foster curiosity, and a lifelong respect for conservation and learn-through-play and hands-on experiences. We are a school that provides education from infancy to eighth grade and are located in many districts around the Sacramento area. Some of my fondest memories are of visiting Costa Rica with my grandmother to rescue baby sea turtles from poachers and birds of prey. My grandma instilled in me the mindset of "Think globally, act locally," something I hope to pass on to my children. We are at a crossroad where we can choose to invest in the next generation and give these animals a fulfilling life or stick to the status quo. I want to be able to tell my son and daughter that the state of California and the city of Elk Grove are committed to environmental conservation, animal welfare, and investing in job creation and infrastructure that will make our city a destination of unique experiences and lasting memories. Thank you.
Thank you. Nasreen Asaf, following Kevin Ferreira.
Hi there. Thank you, guys, all, and thank you, everybody, for being here. If everybody could hold up the sign, that'd be fantastic. We've been here for about three hours, and I think we need to just wake up a little bit, change of view, so I think we're all in about, this is a consensus, so that's for you guys. I hope, I hope, I hope I was allowed to even do that. So, I know some of you are looking at me and like, "Hey, this is going on," and some of you are exhausted, so I'm going to try to do this time thing right. I'm not going to introduce myself yet, I'm going to wait for that, even though some of you may know me. I support and provide encouragement to move forward with the project for many reasons. As a resident of Elk Grove, I believe that the new zoo would be a transformational project for our community. Elk Grove is a wonderful city, and we, as a community, continue to grow, whether it's small or large. Excuse me. The addition, the additions of the casino, the additions of the commercial shopping, and other places like the dining, where we have amazing food to go to, I mean, you could walk to anywhere. Our city has beautiful parks, water sites, slides, the Aqua Center. One of the quotes that I want to leave you with is, "In creating the San Diego Zoo," Dr. Harry Wedgford, what other people are saying, says that "A zoo in any city will furnish educational features for the youthful inhabitants and its visitors." I came here moving from Michigan. I have three generations right now sitting at home. We were here earlier with my children coming here from baseball and my mother, who is visiting from Michigan. To kind of give you an idea of who would be going to this zoo, fiscally speaking, which I know is on everybody's mind, has been touched upon, but we should be able to make it work. When we're looking at the city itself, you have the taxpayers, you have the community members, you have businesses like the casino, you have businesses like Mr. Chick-fil-A, I forget his name. But the point is, is everybody is willing to provide, and the same way that we're willing to provide, we hope that you're willing to agree with us. The zoo is a better place for our community than the casino was, and we allow that to come in. So, not to say if you're pro or against it, but the reality is, is we're growing, and the city is here. The zoo should also be here, giving that opportunity for people all over to come in, whether it's from a different state or a different city. It's providing educational opportunities, recreational activities, and economic benefits for the city for many years to come. So, now I'll do the whole "my name is." My name is Nasreen Asaf. I reside in the Madera East neighborhood with the council District Four. I border District Two as well, which is one of the hugest districts. I'm proud to call the city of Elk Grove my home for the last eight years. I'm a mother of two children in Elk Grove School District, work full-time for the government. I'm a vice president of a PTA at their school. My children play sports in Elk Grove, I play sports in Elk Grove, and as Elk Grove Citizens Academy, I don't know if some people were still here, I'm excited to see that the prospect of the zoo.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Ferreira. Following Kevin is Kent Sherwood.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I would like to start off by thanking the staff and the presenters for their wonderful presentation tonight, and also to the two students who put on a nice video production. If I was their teacher, I would hold them back one more year. Just because I wouldn't be ready to let them go. But I'm Kevin Ferreira, the executive director of the Sacramento Sierras Building and Construction Trades Council. We strongly support the new zoo project and its 2,400 jobs that it will bring, along with creating career pathways into our union apprenticeship programs. We have a couple thousand union members who live in the city of Elk Grove, and they are looking forward to being participants in the construction of a once-in-a-lifetime project such as this, and also becoming repeat visitors of the new zoo. We respectfully ask for your yes vote, because zoos are cool. Right? And, and I will close with this. As the illustrious philosophers have once said, the Beatles, "Yeah, yeah, yeah."
Thank you for that. Next is Kent Sherwood. Followed by Kent Sherwood is Steve Lee.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Kent Sherwood, and my wife and I are 44-year refugees from Minnesota. When we moved here at that time, we had one-stop sign in town and 13,900 people. So, yes, things have changed a little bit. Just before we left Minnesota, actually, a brand-new zoo was created, 200 acres, and the tundra, and sometimes sunshine every now and then. And I obviously saw what that did in the community, and it was really a tremendous experience. I never saw such excitement, certainly among kids, but parents as well. Visited 30 years later, and it's still going strong and still exciting. We got a private tour of the zoo, and it was a fantastic experience. I have been very privileged to be able to have gone to Africa on five safaris, the last one just completed in last August, and have had experiences that I can't even begin to explain or describe. And even this last time, had the opportunity to rescue a baby Cape buffalo that's 400 pounds that was stuck in a muddy pond and had a certain death waiting for it within a few hours by either hyenas or a lion, and had no idea that that would occur. But just the excitement of African animals is beyond belief. And obviously, in the zoo, we're not going to be able to do the safari experience like we would in Serengeti or in Botswana, et cetera. But I've looked at the planning carefully, and even that African experience that's being planned there is remarkable. And it is so expensive to go to Africa these days, and every year it increases because there is such a limited supply and so much high demand. So, we ought to be able to offer as close as we can to a wonderful experience like that right here in town. So, I think it's an exciting thing. I support it fully and congratulate the work that's gone into it. And having been there and seen it, you're coming about as close as you could possibly do for a great experience. And I, good luck, and to all of us, and I think the planning that's gone in is just fantastic, and thank you for your leadership.
Next up is Steve Lee. Following Steve Lee is Kathy Lee. Is Steve Lee here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't see you.
That's my doctor's father.
Oh, excellent.
I was talking to my doctor about his trip to Africa, so I thought, "That's got to be the guy." Okay. Welcome. Thanks for having me, I should say. The financing plan is highly speculative, and it lends itself to the term "smoke and mirrors" to me. I'm a citizen of Elk Grove. You know, the whole thing is very speculative. I just don't see any black and white that says, "We can afford this, we can do this." You can't continue to raise taxes on every opportunity just to appease your egos in building the zoo. Citizens can't and shouldn't take it. Young people already cannot afford homes here. By building the zoo, you will leave this town into bankruptcy with your pie-in-the-sky dreams of foolish investors willing to donate millions. The king said they won't do this. That's just an example. Smart businesspeople look at this and say, "It's not viable at this point." Ask yourself why no city in the United States has built a zoo in the past 35 years. It's because they're money pits, never-ending suckers of hard-earned community tax money. It's a perpetual 365-day-a-year, 24-hour-a-day money suck. Most of the amenities are for the public, not the animals. That's been established here tonight. They were talking about all these things that they've done, and all the restaurants, and all the coverings, and all these things they've done for the public, not necessarily for the animals. Zoos exploit animals for public entertainment and city income. Animals are treated as commodities. They're traded, they're forced-bred. That's been established tonight. They're separated from their families for money. Animals to be caged and gawked at. Zoo animals are regularly traded. At a site called the Association of Zoos and Aquariums Animal Exchange, establishing these animals are nothing more but commodities, like gold, pig's feet, oranges, or anything like that. They're not treated as living beings. If you're hell-bent on building this, at least consider it to be a sanctuary, a place that rescues, nurtures, and cares for animals that can take care, that cannot take care of themselves in the wild, and a place where well-being and comfort the animals takes precedent over care and well-being of the visitors. And I'd like you to please explain why you won't put an almost $1 billion commitment up for public vote. Are we too stupid to make our own decisions about, or for you to make them for us? Maybe because a recent non-scientific online poll showed 2/3rds of those who voted preferred not to build a zoo here. I'd like an answer as to why we won't put this on a ballot. I'd like an answer as to why we won't put this on a ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Lee. Following Kathy Lee is Randy Rojas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me begin by expressing my disappointment in how this council has conducted itself on this zoo project. As a resident and taxpayer, it is disappointing to offer my three minutes of public testimony knowing that you've already made a decision. The council's well-publicized support for the zoo and the organized media blitz leading up to this meeting has, in my opinion, made a mockery of the public hearing process. I thought the purpose of public hearing was for the council to weigh all sides of the issue, deliberate, and then make a decision after considering all testimony. Nevertheless, I'm going to continue. I am also disappointed that the project of this magnitude is being processed on a piecemeal basis. Two years ago, the city spent half a million dollars on a feasibility study, then purchased a 100-acre zoo site for another 9.5 million. So two years ago, the city was already into this project for 10 million. Then about a year later, we spent another 800,000 on another study. Finally arriving here tonight, we have this very long and complicated staff report filled with very fancy pictures, and I can almost smell the vibrancy, except that the most important part of the process is missing, and that is the role and responsibility of how will we pay for this zoo. I'm sorry, but this report tonight is only a draft in terms of the project that we have already spent over $11 million on, and that's unacceptable. And it continues to piecemeal the project over the next 10 to 12 years. It is pointless for me to stand here and talk about money when everything for the financial in this report is a draft. If the staff wanted the council's direction on a finance plan, you should have scheduled this meeting for a closed-door session, just like you do when you have real estate negotiations or labor agreements or lawsuits. This is kicking the can down the road on the nuts and bolts of the financing of the zoo, and makes all of those fancy pictures appear to be just stamped with the word "draft" and subject to change. This project reminds me of a circus performer who was spinning plates on sticks. And only in this case, if the Zoological Society plates fall off the stick, I suspect the city, as the owner of the zoo, will have to step in and add more taxpayer plates to keep the act alive. I'm sorry, but when you're presenting a draft financing plan that is not binding, that is just not acceptable. I think we need more information. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next up is Randy Rojas, followed by Zach Noonan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Randy Rojas, and I represent over 12,000 members of the DC16 IUPAT Painters and Allied Trades in Northern California and Nevada. Many of our members living here in Elk Grove, in the outskirts of Elk Grove. It goes without saying that if we were to get this approved tonight, it would create a lot of job opportunities, not only for my members, but a lot of the construction trades. For me personally, I like to see it, because my family's always loved zoos. With Mother's Day right around the corner, every year, my wife, "What do you want to do?" The day before, we'd go to the San Francisco Zoo, and it was always the San Francisco Zoo. Sacramento was nice, but it's San Francisco. So my personal ask would, I would like to see my family start a new chapter with our love for zoos by starting at the Elk Grove Zoo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Zach Noonan, followed by Alan Vito.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Zach Noonan. I'm a 33-year member of the Plumbers and Pipefitters UA Local 447, and a 26-year resident of Elk Grove. We support the new zoo and look forward to all the union construction jobs. It could mean to our members, especially the ones that reside here. Over the years, I've watched empty lots in Elk Grove turn into shopping, restaurants, and even a new 50-meter pool that recently hosted the CIF San Joaquin Section Swim Championships. Just think of what this new zoo could do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alan Vito, followed by Sam Richardson.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. I had something prepared, but first I wanted to say that when I was hearing Jason, Liz, and Jocelyn, and the other staff members and volunteers of the zoo speaking, I hear so much passion and excitement for this zoo. And I just say, as a business owner, my family, and a Realtor, and just a resident of Elk Grove, how could you not want those kinds of people in your community? And how could you not want people like that doing business in your community? And something like this that evokes so much passion and positivity, it's exactly what I, as a resident of Elk Grove, a young resident of Elk Grove, want in my city. And so I've been in Elk Grove my entire life. I live here, I went to school, and I started my career all in this city. The next step for me, and it's a big step, is probably to build a family of my own. And I haven't really put too much thought into it, and to be honest, I wasn't sure if I was ever going to be ready. But when I heard that the Sacramento Zoo might be moving to Elk Grove, the only thing that I could think about was how amazing it would be to take my kids to the new zoo. In the back of my mind, I've always wanted to start a family here in Elk Grove, but this project really brings all those feelings to the front of the line. And young families are looking for reasons like this to put down their roots and build a family in Elk Grove. I should know, because I meet those young people almost every day. We're in the hospitality business, if you guys didn't know, and our bar is Bob's Club. We serve everyone walk of life in this city, from 21 to 101, every race and gender, and we've all been talking about the zoo. And from my limited polling data, I think that the vote is almost unanimous. We all want the zoo, every age. I just thought I'd give you my perspective, as it seems there are plenty of other people here tonight. There will always be naysayers, no matter how good or bad the project, I've learned in my short time coming here to the council chambers. But in my opinion, five to eight years cannot come soon enough, and I hope you guys approve this project for all of us. And you gotta spend money to make money, so.
Thank you. Next up is Sam Richardson, followed by Alan Huston.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I'm in the same boat as Alan. I work at Bob's Club down in Old Town Elk Grove. I was born and raised here in Elk Grove as well. I work in one of the oldest businesses in Elk Grove, it's Bob's Club, and I, too, plan on raising a family here in Elk Grove. This city has gone through a lot of changes over the years, and they say you can't stop progress. For those who were involved in the Elk Grove project in the recent past, we learned that progress for progress' sake might not always be the best choice. But progress for the betterment of a community and for its people is worth the investment. A project like this, like this zoo, is an investment into all of our futures here in Elk Grove. Not only will this stimulate a local economy and bring more jobs and commerce to this area, but I firmly believe that this is an investment into our children's future. I have vivid memories of going to the Sacramento Zoo as a kid, learning about animals and ecosystems, but I also remember spending time with my family. I would go there most weekends with aunts, uncles. Every time somebody visited, we'd go to the zoo. I've learned recently that there hasn't really been a zoo built in almost 40 years. If that's true, then having a state-of-the-art zoo right here in our city is a huge accomplishment and only adds to the list of things to be proud of in Elk Grove. And I hope you guys approve this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alan Green, followed by Joshua Huston, Huston? One of those.
Might be.
Oh, it could be.
Could be.
Alen, maybe?
No, that's Alan.
Alan, okay. For those of you that might be in the hallway, I think there's some more seats available up here.
Good to see you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and District Council members. My name's Alan Green, and I'm a trade instructor with Northern California Construction Training. We've been around for 30 years. We train many of our, you know, we have programs with Sacramento County Offices of Education, SAC parole, SAC probation. You know, many of our students come from many different walks of lives, homeless, off the streets, in recovery. Through our program, they're getting hands-on training, they're getting certifications, they're getting hope, they're getting prosperity, right? They're getting goals. We're changing the trajectory of their lives. This project, it's going to have an estimated 2,400 jobs, right? These are union, this is pension, retirement, raises. You don't have to negotiate your wages. What is it? So every seven journeymen is one apprentice on a job, so that's well over 300 apprentice opportunities for my students that live here in Elk Grove. I strongly support this zoo. I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to bringing my kids here. I live not far from the other zoo, and I'm ready for another one. I'm a proud Laborers Local 185 member, and I'm with Northern California Construction Training. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Huston, followed by Paul Delatorre.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Joshua Huston, and I approve the zoo project because it will bring thousands of jobs to the people of Elk Grove and formerly incarcerated people like myself, people of all nationalities. I'm also a student at NCC T, and I'm also a soon-to-be graduate. Approving this project will assure jobs for people like myself who want to be a success, to be a productive citizen, and the man that I am supposed to be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Delatorre, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, esteemed Council members. My name is Paul Delatorre, along with my partner, Deron Wheatley. We're part of Capital Business Connection Referral Network, so we have a group of business owners who come together to refer businesses to each other. We got to know Andrea, who's part of the Sacramento Zoo Relocation Project, and we jumped on board right away. And understanding myself, 62-years-old, let me see, I've been to the zoo in Lampark countless of times, and I can tell you I've seen many changes there, and we could see a lot of the species that are no longer there. Mind you, I'm going there since the '60s, so I've seen it change quite a bit. So this is going to bring something to the Sacramento region, not just Elk Grove, but the impact just to this region, looking at it financially is very, very important, and seeing it in this way, is that when we're talking about our businesses and what we could do to impact business, what is it that's going to bring people here? So of course, the zoo is kind of like an attraction, so not only Sacramento, Sacramento or the region or Elk Grove are going to be attending the events or things at the zoo, we're going to be bringing people from all over California, because they're going to want to see what this is all about. I've always heard everything about the San Diego Zoo and all the great things that are happening at the San Diego Zoo. Now they're going to be talking about our region. So we're going to see hotels, we're going to see impact on businesses, and that's what's important to me. And then the preservation of these animals. So I'm sure you got your impact statements and everything, coming over here, talking about the negative things that are going up there that they're only seeing just briefly. You guys got everything there, and you know how to make a qualified decision on this. So we appreciate it, and we're going to do everything we can to support it.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Aaron Teague.
A golden opportunity has been missed. I'm not here to speak to the design of the zoo, the public cost of the zoo, or even the merits of animals in captivity. I'm here to ask you, the five stewards of our public finances, how come a zoo and not some other amenity? What the staff report and its attached financial studies show to me is that the city has the capacity to pull together nearly $250 million, a quarter of a billion dollars, without jeopardizing essential services. So I ask, has the city made a good-faith effort to poll the community on what type of amenity they would prefer? For example, would a performing arts center, which can be used day and night, rain or shine, be preferred by residents over a zoo? Would a smaller version of, say, Balboa Park in San Diego, or Golden Gate Park in San Francisco, consisting of museums and a variety of other indoor and outdoor cultural and entertainment experiences, be preferred over a zoo? I urge the council to not lose sight of the forest through the trees, to step back and ask the most basic question. What can our quarter of a billion dollars of financial leverage be best used for? What will help Elk Grove emerge as the cultural and visionary leader of the Sacramento region while best serving our residents? A golden opportunity missed.
Next up is Aaron Teague, followed by Breez Singh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Aaron Teague, on behalf of the Sacramento Association of Realtors tonight, and I'm here to support moving forward with the staff recommendation for the zoo. Civic amenities such as a zoo bring tourism and serve as catalyst for future economic development and increased tax revenue that goes far beyond the walls of the zoo. But more importantly, it becomes the fabric that creates community in a way that can be challenging to define when we're trying to crunch the numbers to make a project work. In addition to quantifiable pieces that zoos bring with field trips, educational experiences, conservation, and relationships between people and animals, most importantly, it becomes a place of memories. As a young mother, I thought my zoo membership would provide me a place to get out of the house with my baby, and she could experience the sights and sounds and smells of the zoo. Ultimately, it became a place where I found friendship and support from other families doing just the same thing. It was a place of connection. Little did I know that those first interactions at the zoo would then embark into meet-ups, birthday parties, and later summer camps and drop-offs that all centered around one space. And now you have the opportunity to dream bigger, because the reality is, if not now, then when? As people are evaluating communities and where they're going to purchase their homes and their families, they're looking for community engagement and civic amenities. In addition to that, there's going to be tourism that's brought along with this. So they want a place to go where they can connect with their community, and this project provides all of that. So we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Breez Singh. Following Breez is Belinda Kroll.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council member. I'm going to try to keep it short. My name is Breez Singh, and I stand before you today not only as a local Realtor who primarily do business in Elk Grove, but also as an enthusiastic supporter of the new zoo. Approving this project is not just about building a new zoo, it's about building a place where families from our community and visitors from across the region gather to learn about the natural world. It's about making a long-term investment in Elk Grove's economic stability, educational richness, and community vibrancy. Let us see the opportunity grow to educate and to inspire our next generation. So I urge you to vote in favor of this visionary project. Thank you.
Nice and short, thank you. Belinda Kroll, following Belinda is Matt Newton Boom. Belinda? Is Belinda in the hallway? Yes?
Hello, Belinda.
Is Belinda there? Or I'm going to move on? Okay, we're going on to Matt Newton Boom. Following Matt is Raj Singh.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Matt Newton Boom. I'm with IBW Local 340 Electricians. I'm affiliate of Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades, but I'm also a resident here. Almost everything that I have to say has been said, so I get to be very brief. I could go on and on about all the whimsical dreams that this thing would bring to our community, and I believe in all of those things, but I'm also 48-years-old, and I'm starting to become a lot more physically conservative, and I really see this as an investment, and I hope that you all see it as that as well. This just looks like a no-brainer to me, economic anchor in our community, and I just urge you to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Raj Singh, following Raj is Yuri Ramirez Villanueva.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raj Singh. I'm going to try to keep it short, since it's past my bedtime. I'm a local Realtor who's passionate about growth and development of Elk Grove. I have lived in this city for 10 years. I have sold homes in this Also, as a father of two young children, a five-year-old and two-year-old, I'm constantly looking for ways to create meaningful experiences and for them to foster their, you know, love for nature and wildlife. That's why I'm here today to express my wholehearted support for bringing a zoo to Elk Grove. The idea of having a place where my children can learn about animals, conservation, and the importance of protecting our planet excites me beyond measure. Furthermore, as a Realtor, I understand the economic benefits that a zoo can bring to our city. It will attract tourists, create jobs, stimulate growth in our local businesses. I urge you to support this project and help make Elk Grove an even better place to live, work, and raise our families. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up is John Hershey. Following John is Michael Monaski. Skip, yes, sorry. Yep.
I'm already here.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Judy Ramirez Villanueva. I'm here to speak as a resident of Elk Grove and as a real estate agent. I am here to express my support for the zoo. As a Realtor, I have been helping homeowners purchase homes with their real estate needs in Sacramento County for the last 20 years, not just in Sacramento County, specifically here in Elk Grove. A project like the zoo is likely to benefit our home values. This is great for homeowners like myself, like for you all, and it will also make our community more attractive for future home buyers. I'm a mother of two kids and we live in Elk Grove. My family enjoys doing family things. We like visiting zoos. Couple weeks ago, we actually went to the San Francisco Zoo. It's going to be so nice to not have to drive so far just to take them somewhere where they can see and learn so much. Bringing this state-of-the-art facility to Elk Grove is a huge opportunity for us. It's going to be a massive selling point whenever someone inquires about our city and our surrounding regions. So as a business owner and a Realtor, I'm excited to see the opportunities that this could present for us. Please vote yes and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Monaski, following Michael Monaski is Doyle Radford. Did I jump? Why, why are they? Oh, I am so sorry. Well, Michael is here, so we'll have Michael.
The EIR is incomplete and therefore inadequate. The city and its consultant decided to perform a health risk impact assessment as part of its EIR for the zoo. The report is incomplete and therefore inadequate and should be rewritten to include all causes of death. In February 2024, the University of Edinburgh Scotland, United Kingdom, published a study just a few months ago in the Journal of Transport Geography entitled Car Harm: A Global Review of Automobility's, there's a word for you, A Global Review of Automobility's Harm to People and the Environment. Please include this report in the final EIR by reference. Violence, ill health, injustice, and environmental damage are the harmful byproducts of automobility, which is the socio-political decision to make transit an individual and not a social responsibility. Interventions include removing the automobile from its dominant and exclusive place, reducing parking spaces, eliminating multiple car lanes, and replacing them with pedestrian amenities, bolstering shared opportunities for travel such as public transit and protected bicycle routes, reducing speeds by 50%, making it more expensive to drive and easier to take a bus, train, to walk or ride a bicycle. The health impact assessment in the zoo's draft environmental impact report is a four-page denial of adverse cancer effects to human health, followed by an over 350-page core dump of air quality data. Municipal planning determines how we walk, drive cars, where we obtain food, go to school, work, and so on. The planners appear satisfied that 5% of the parking spaces will go to bicycles when our streets are unsafe for pedestrians, which includes cyclists. There's an epidemic of obesity and residents are simply out of shape, which results in the leading causes of death, including heart and lung diseases, cancers, metabolic disorders like diabetes and so on. I've complained in my comments published in the draft EIR that the health impact assessment is woefully inadequate and must be redone. The city never responded to my objections. I'll repeat that. In the draft EIR, I made objections based on this inadequacy and the city never responded to my objections. Therefore, I find that the city, that the EIR is incomplete and therefore inadequate, the city and the consultant decided to perform a health risk impact assessment as part of its EIR for the, for the zoo. This report is incomplete and therefore inadequate and should be rewritten to include all causes of death, not just cancer.
Thank you. Next up is Shannon Nodolf. Following Shannon is John Hershey.
Good evening. So my name is Dr. Shannon Nodolf and I'm one of the Associate Veterinarians for the Sacramento Zoo. Everything I wanted to say has pretty much been said, but one of the magical things about the zoos is really that inspiration and that guiding light showing you areas that you didn't know existed and how you can help and make the world a better place. And I'm an example of that. I grew up in Sacramento, going to the Sacramento Zoo. It's what's inspired me to be a veterinarian and a zoological veterinarian and then even having the opportunity to come back to a zoo that I know practices some of the most state-of-the-art animal care in the world, really, for the animals within the Sacramento Zoo. I think it's a no-brainer that bringing this opportunity to Elk Grove would be a huge benefit and that you guys should definitely vote yes. Thank you.
John Hershey, following John is Doyle Radford Jr.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Hershey and I'm a member of UA Local 447 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters based here in Sacramento County. I am a pipe fitter and also serve as our Labor Compliance Officer, although that won't be a problem on this project, I can assure you. And actually, an observation I just wanted to make is that a project like this would actually serve as an excellent habitat for species such as the yellow and orange vested apprentice to where they can grow and learn into, grow into becoming future skilled and trained workers that had built projects like the Sky River Casino. But I'll leave it with this. So on behalf of our 1,700 members, apprentices and journeymen, you know, and especially our 150 that live here in Elk Grove, we're ready when you are and we look forward to your yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to see that humor is not lost in this late hour. Doyle Radford, following Doyle is Stacy Cordova.
Well, good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and respected council. My name's Doyle Radford Jr. and I am the Business Manager of Construction and General Laborers Local 185. So for 95 years, we've been proudly building the communities, including Elk Grove, the infrastructure that we have today, and this is a project right in our wheelhouse. We have over 100 men and women that reside in Elk Grove that are members, that are eager to work on this project. So obviously, we're strongly in support of it, but I did want to take a moment and a point of privilege to commend the staff and the consultants on a really good job of articulating the economic positive impacts this zoo will have. This is going to be Elk Grove Zoo, but in reality, it's going to be all of our zoos. I live in Roseville, but when family comes to town, well, what's there to do in Sacramento? Well, to jump in the car, we're going out to the zoo. And, you know, I'm probably going to stop the Stagecoach Restaurant, maybe Black Bear for breakfast, and you know darn well, we're going to cap it off by going to Kyle's Chick-fil-A for dinner. So, so I want to thank you guys for your time and consideration on this project.
Stacy Cordova, following Stacy is Daniel Washington. Stacy, are you here? All right, we're not, if Stacy shows up, we'll yield the next one. So we'll call up Daniel Washington. Following Daniel is Trina Burt.
I was out in the outdoor crowd getting some air, so it's nice to be in the chambers. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Daniel Washington. I'm the District Director for Senator Angelique Ashby, who represents the city of Elk Grove in the legislature. But also, my other hat that I'm wearing tonight, I'm also a longtime resident of Elk Grove. So really excited about the potential of this project to move forward. I just want to touch on the legislation that was brought up. The bill will be SB 739. I'm not going to get into it too much, but really just to, to highlight it, it's going to streamline the construction costs for the new zoo and it will shorten the time of construction and hopefully reduce, it will reduce the costs. It has a lot of support from our regional transportation folks, SACRT, the Transportation Authority, Kasumnas CSD, as well as a lot of the labor folks that were here in attendance tonight. Additionally, this has, the bill will have an urgency clause, so when it is passed, it will go into effect immediately. And then I also want to just mention, in Senator Ashby's role as the Chair of Senate Business Professions and Economic Development, she's been really committed to these type of regional projects and the economic impact that it will bring to, to the region. So she's unequivocally supportive of anything that will help women, children, and families. And we're really confident that this type of project will do that for the many reasons that have been brought up this evening. So I'm just really excited about the educational opportunities in particular that have been brought up, for, for kids to get more exposure to animals, hopefully become future veterinarians or work with the Zoological Society. And, you know, just from being an Elk Grove kid, I wish this, this would have been a possibility when I was growing up because, you know, who knows, maybe I would have been a zookeeper instead of political staff.
Wait, isn't it the same?
Right. Bravo, bravo. So in closing, I thank you for your consideration, your time, your leadership, and I urge you to not vote.
Thank you. Next up is Trina Burt. Following Trina Burt is Tony Renteria.
Sorry, I forgot my ears. I got new ears. Or the other side. Good evening, Councilmembers and Madam Mayor. My name is Trina Burt and I am a proud homeowner and resident of Elk Grove for the past 26 years. When I had the opportunity to purchase a home here, I didn't consider anywhere else. Lots of choices, Folsom, Roseville. I wanted a new home and I wanted to be near family and I had the opportunity to do both. I am greatly in favor of having a zoo here. I'm an avid zoo goer. I went to the zoo in Sacramento, when I grew up in Sacramento, and just every opportunity I got to go, I just took it weekends just because, let's go to the zoo. Let's go to the mall. No, let's go to the zoo. I know that having a zoo in Elk Grove, it will definitely bring jobs. We know that. It will increase tourism. All the people that you heard speak about leaving town to go to San Francisco, to go to Oakland, to go to Southern California, to go to other zoos, will definitely stay home, just than to go to our zoo. I saw the schematics for the first time. I had, I did not know the scope of what we're looking at. I don't think I've ever seen a zoo with all of those amenities. To be, have the opportunity to go to the zoo at night, to have dinner there and then take a walk in a beautiful landscaped park, I can't wait. So I don't need to say anymore. Without further ado, please vote for this zoo. Thank you.
Tony Renteria, following Tony is Pablo Espinoza.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. First, I want to thank the, all the speakers that were here earlier because I got another 5,000 steps in. So, and for the first time ever, Madam Mayor, I wanted to actually listen to you and just be quick. I just wanted to say, I wanted to echo Mr. Chick-fil-A and Elk Grove's Grizzly Adams. I thought they did a really good job. And to, to the people who don't think that it's going to be financially viable, I have been raising money for charity organizations here in Elk Grove for over the last 20 years. And one of the things I've always said is, you need a puppy, all right? You need something that people want to hold on to and grab on to and want to cherish. Well, we're not going to have puppies, we're going to have meerkats, we're going to have lions, we're going to have tigers. There can't be a bigger draw for just getting private money and the naming rights for this. And look, we had a guy here from Roseville, right? Roseville. Stockton's closer. Right? I, it's to me, I, okay, if they need help selling the naming rights, I will help them. It's going to be a no-brainer. That's going to be the easiest job on the planet. So I, I, I think it's going to be financially feasible. I'm Republican, I'm a fiscal conservative, but I'm also a guy who knows a good deal when you see one, and this is it. So please vote yes.
Thank you. Pablo Espinoza, following Pablo is Amanda Nelson. Is Pablo in the hallways? Okay, I'm going to go on to Amanda unless Pablo should appear. Amanda Nelson, following Amanda is Erin Vowell.
Good evening, Elk Grove City Council. My name is Amanda Nelson and I am here in favor of the new zoo project in Elk Grove. While I'm not a resident of Elk Grove, I'd like to start off by saying thank you because you are stepping up where the city of Sacramento failed. I want to make sure that I acknowledge my deepest gratitude for your consideration of this project. I'm a proud member of the Sacramento Zoo and I tell friends all the time that my $60 a year for my membership is the best $60 I spend annually. As a nature photographer, I join the zoo to go occasionally, but occasionally has turned into three to four times a month, sometimes twice a week. It is truly my happy place. I have learned the personalities of these animals and enjoyed their silly antics. For example, our lioness, Cleo, loves her afternoon sunbathing, her time in her tunnel, and she knows when it's time to retire to her quarters. Did you also know that she's 18 years old and one of the oldest African lions living in the accredited zoo system? I've learned a lot about the animals thanks to the amazing staff, zookeepers, and docents that give their heart and soul to the welfare of our animals and make sure that each visitor has an experience, leaving them with memories for years to come. They are knowledgeable, friendly, and some of the most incredible humans that I have had the pleasure of knowing. From educational talks to the animal enrichment feedings, I walk away from each one of my visits learning something new. I've enjoyed pizza with the lions at happy hours, watching the otters during summer nights at member evenings, and had the flamingos as my alarm clock after an overnight safari on the reptile lawn. Some of my best core memories as an adult happen at the Sacramento Zoo. I have also learned the critical role that the zoo plays in conservation, that without facilities such as ours, these species will continue to disappear due to things like deforestation, pollution, and poaching. I've learned that our red pandas, snow leopards, and ring-tailed lemurs are endangered, that our orangutans are critically endangered. The zoo is critical to help continue conservation efforts. By having a phenomenal partnership with UC Davis, the new zoo project will be able to stay on top of conservation to ensure these animals survive. You may also notice that I'm referring to these animals as ours. It's because I truly believe that the zoo is a community entity and I have felt that by being a member for the past three years. Yes, these are wild animals, but they deserve to be saved. This project will ensure that the community continues to build memories, these animals remain protected, and that generations to come can learn just how important these animals are. Thank you again so much for your time and consideration of this project.
Thank you. Next up is Erin Vowell. Following Erin is Art Scotland.
Mayor, whether the next speaker comes up, do you want to waive the 10 o'clock rule?
Um, yes.
Get a motion for that?
Motion.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Procedural things ignore.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed Councilmembers. I'm here to extend my gratitude to the dedicated staff and zoological partners for enlightening us with invaluable insights into the proposed new zoo, not only this evening, but throughout the past year, and actually years. Tonight, I address you not only in my capacity as a tourism director for Explor Elk Grove, but also as a All those in favor, please say aye. Procedural things, ignore.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed Council members. I'm here to extend my gratitude to the dedicated staff and zoological partners for enlightening us with invaluable insights into the proposed new zoo, not only this evening, but throughout the past year, and actually years. Tonight, I address you not only in my capacity as a tourism director for Explor Elk Grove, but also as a proud Elk Grove resident deeply rooted in Northern California's heritage. Coming from a humble rural farming community nearby here, Dixon, I hold dear the traditions that enrich our lives and the importance of preserving them. Having called Elk Grove home for the past 15 years, I recognize the opportunity that lies before us in creating enduring memories and enriching educational experiences for our children and the wider community through the establishment of a zoo. Just as my upbringing instilled in me a profound appreciation for our natural surroundings and the imperative of safeguarding them, I firmly believe that a zoo in Elk Grove would not only provide entertainment, but also serve as a vital educational resource, nurturing a sense of stewardship for our environment among future generations. On behalf of Explor Elk Grove, the tourism marketing organization dedicated to showcasing the dynamic and diverse attractions of our city, I wholeheartedly express our unwavering support for the establishment of a new zoo in Elk Grove. The potential impacts of this venture on our community and the broader region are very diverse and have been touched on throughout the evening. To briefly recap the opportunities, they are endless, and start with economic growth, community engagement, education, tourism development, and conservation efforts. In alignment with Explor Elk Grove's mission to spotlight the diverse array of attractions and experiences our city boasts, we firmly believe that the addition of a zoo will not only elevate the quality of life for our community, but also position Elk Grove as a premier destination for those seeking enriching and unforgettable experiences. Economic prosperity, educational enrichment, community cohesion, and conservation advocacy are among the multiple reasons why the establishment of a zoo stands as a monumental asset for Elk Grove. We urge the city council to collaborate with stakeholders to ensure its successful development. Together, let us cultivate a vibrant and flourishing community that celebrates the beauty of nature and the wonder of wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Art Scotland. Following Art is Belinda Croll.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I am Art Scotland, a native of Sacramento that grew up just a few blocks away from the Sacramento Zoo, and I continue to live there, that close to the zoo. I can tell you from personal experience that a zoo is a wonderful enhancement to a community, and is not really a burden to those that live nearby. The idea of noise, never been a problem, and I've lived just a couple blocks away, and other issues have never been a problem. The zoo is very well-managed and very consistent with the neighborhood. Actually, many of us are kind of sad that it's, that live in the area, that we're, might lose it to Elk Grove. After retiring as a Superior Court Judge and a California Court of Appeal Presiding Justice, I became a member of the society's Board of Trustees, and I'm very excited about the prospect of replacing the Sacramento Zoo with a new, modern, state-of-the-art, much larger zoo that I think is going to bring great cultural, educational, and economic benefits to your community. I like to put it this way, the, and I'm going to go away from some of my remarks that I was going to make, because I do want to comment first on a couple of the comments that were made, okay? As a retired judge, I used to weigh testimony, weigh input, and have to make determinations based upon the credibility and the expertise of the witness. And I will tell you, when I was in the Governor's Office as Cabinet Secretary to the Governor, I worked with the Department of Finance very closely. I can assure you that everything that I've heard is that this evaluation, this fiscal evaluation, is justified and appropriate. After I retired as a judge, I became a sequel lawyer, a land use attorney. I've handled a lot of sequel cases, I've argued a sequel case before the California Supreme Court. I can assure you that the statements that were made concerning the inadequacy of the sequa is, are just flat wrong. So I'm just going to sum it up by saying this. This is a win-win-win for your community. One of the wins is it's going to enhance your community, and frankly, I think it's going to make it a beacon of light in our, in our area. It's going to draw people, it's going to draw their money, et cetera. And, you know, while Sacramento will still have the beam, when the Kings win, with a new zoo, Elk Grove will always have the beacon of light, the everlasting beacon of light, with all of the educational, recreational, cultural, economic benefits. So borrowing the words by movie director Spike Lee, "Please do the right thing and approve this project." It's a wise investment in the future of your city, it's a wise investment in the future of endangered species, it's a wise investment in your education of youth, et cetera, et cetera. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Belinda Croll. Belinda Croll, followed by Stacy Cordova.
And these were the names, Mayor, that when you called them earlier, we didn't have a response, so we just put them at the end of the list to see if those folks just didn't have a chance to come forward.
Okay, so Belinda Croll, Stacy Cordova, Pablo Espinosa, anybody left in the hallways? Last call. Last caller, I'm going to close the public comment opportunity. All right, I'm going to close. Wow. Okay, so before I go to council comments and deliberation, I've got a few sentences from some stakeholders that have submitted testimonies that I will read, but I'm not reading the entirety, just literally little snapshots. This is from the Mayor of Sacramento. While I hate to see the zoo leave its home in the city of Sacramento, I recognize that moving it to Elk Grove could better secure the future of this regional treasure and increase its ability to care for the animals and attract visitors from Sacramento and beyond. And then he closes out by saying, "I encourage Elk Grove in this ambitious endeavor to build a modern zoo for our region." Sacramento Board of Supervisor, who could not be here tonight, Patrick Hume, our former colleague. One, some of the excerpts are, "Though a well-thought-out financing plan that does not anticipate city subsidy after initial debt service, this state-of-the-art zoo would serve as a catalyst for greater recreational and civic amenities, economic growth, sustainability, and would create new opportunities to forge innovative public-private partnerships in support of greater conservation and environmental education." Congresswoman Doris Matsui, "I am writing in strong support of the new zoo project proposal in the city of Elk Grove. Introducing a world-class zoo presents a great opportunity for the city and the Sacramento region. It will serve as an economic catalyst and a significant part of greater global conservation efforts." Congressman Ami Barra, "As a longtime resident of Elk Grove, I wish to express my support for the city's efforts to bring a regional zoo to the city of Elk Grove. It would be a valuable addition to our community and provide significant educational and economic benefits." The Elk Grove Police Officers Association, "On behalf of the Elk Grove Police Officers Association, we are writing to express our support for the proposed building of a new zoo in the city of Elk Grove. Our members believe that the establishment of a zoo would not only enhance the quality of life of residents, but also continue to the economic and cultural development of the city of Elk Grove." The Kasumnas Community Services Fire District, "The city of Elk Grove has an opportunity to showcase its entrepreneurial spirit and be the first city in the United States to build a new zoo from the ground up in more than 30 years. As a family-oriented community with a top-ranked school district, the zoo will contribute to the overall development and vibrancy of Elk Grove, making it an even more desirable destination for residents." The Metro Chamber of Commerce, "As the region's leading advocate for business and economic growth, we know that a large-scale regional attractions are important sources of jobs and earnings for local workers, as well as driving economic impact through local visitation and tourism." We heard from Kevin Ferreira, "The Greater Sacramento Economic Council, development of a world-class zoo will generate not only short-term economic impact from construction, but will also deliver ongoing benefits for the local and regional economies, estimated at 395 jobs, $111 million of labor income, and $249 million of total economic impact over five years." And last, the Wilton Rancheria, "A new, modern zoo will stimulate economic growth and tourism in our region. It would attract visitors from near and far, generate revenue for local businesses, and creating job opportunities." Wanted to enter those because they could not be here. So I will start with council comments, deliberations, we'll start from, to the left, with our council member, Darren Soon.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and weighing in and giving your input. I know it's late, but this is just another testament to how important you and strongly you feel about this project. I just want to start with, you know, my own story, growing up in Greenham Park, because I know some, there's some folks that are here tonight from that area, also going to the zoo, bringing my kids to the zoo, having, I mentioned earlier about having a pass to, and enduring the lack of parking to get there. So imagine my excitement when we first began this conversation about this concept. It was very exciting, and all the benefits that were articulated tonight, you can imagine. But I want to temper that a little bit with the amount of consideration I had of how significant this decision was, because of the cost, because of the risk. And there is a risk. I don't agree it's a no-brainer. I do agree that there is huge potential. I do think that what we've heard tonight, the, going through the pro forma, listening to what went into the assumptions about the pro forma, all of that, I think, what, you know, was, I think some of that risk was tempered from the responses that we heard. And so I was relieved to hear about that. I was also, a big concern of mine was what this would mean for the future councils beyond us, taking on the debt service, the opportunity funds that we would be draining in order to invest in this opportunity. And again, I'm not, it was something I was still, the concept, always excited about, but those are the things I think we, as your representatives, are responsible for. And so I was trying to put all that aside, again, the potential for, and examine things from a conservative, more conservative point of view. And so I was pleased, again, to learn from our financing team about all the monies that we've saved from previous councils, this one and previous councils. And so I want to take that moment to acknowledge one reason, another small reason, why we have this opportunity, is because of that good steward of funds that we've demonstrated, again, with this council and previous councils since the city's incorporation, that instead of, you know, borrowing 250 million, we're looking at 114 million. When you look at the, how thankfully, the trust that you all have demonstrated in us with the passage of Measure E, giving us a funding resource that will allow us to tackle, plan and tackle challenges like emergency response, like homelessness, but also to continue to replenish those reserve funds. Again, the financing that was presented today does not touch the Measure E funds. I heard a comment earlier tonight about whether we would prefer a performing arts center or maybe a youth sports center. Well, during the Measure E process, we polled all of you, and a zoo came out the highest at 77 percent versus a youth sports center at 69 percent versus a performing arts center at 55 percent. So we've asked the question. So I also want to commend the Zoological Society, the design team, our city staff, for all the work and effort and dedication they put in to try to answer the questions that all of us have had along the way, and I'm sure you will hear some of it later, to the best of their ability. That investment of time and resource goes a long way into the decisions, the decision we're making tonight and influencing that decision tonight. The engagement, to me, was, I mean, it was spot-on. All of you, most people are aware in the city that we have been considering this. Outside the city, they knew we were considering a zoo. That level of education on a project this big, of this magnitude, that requires this kind of commitment for our city, is good, but it's the way it should be. And at the, at the end of the day, what that means is, and for me, is what type of partner are we getting into this agreement with, this endeavor with? You heard me ask tonight about Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Stollard's commitment, right? Because I want to know, I want to have some assurance, and I know it wasn't legally binding, but I want to know that we're going to, we're going to go through this together, and not just with them, but all of you out there. And that was further evidenced by nearly $15,000 raised by the Del Webb-Glen Burke community, right? The Girl Scouts that the mayor mentioned, private donors that have already committed. And so this is a risk. Make no mistake, it is, it is a risk. I mean, there's no certainties in life, right? But I think when you look at all these things, taking all these things together, and again, the partnership that, the people that we're actually partnering with, the organization, the individuals that are committed to this, you know, besides Liz and Jason, but the other, other members of the Zoological Society Board, it gives me more confidence in that this risk is definitely worth taking and going forward. And so I, for me personally, I'm willing to support this project this night, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Brewer.
I'll just be brief. I support the project. So I served on the subcommittee with the mayor and listened to the staff reports, all the different versions of it, and as we were working our way through to what appeared to be a fair and suitable resolution, I was very heartened by the constant communication and contact of Liz Stollard and Jason Jacobs. And the reason why is because the reality is, the story of the 14 acres inside Land Park and being landlocked and not being able to expand really struck home with me, because it wasn't until I did a tour of the Chaffee Zoo, when I realized that was the zoo I used to go to when I was a kid. The Chaffee Zoo, when it was the Roding Park Zoo back in the, in the 70s and 80s, was just as large as the Land Park Zoo. And there's a lot of positive memories that go into going to a zoo when you're a young kid, because you're excited to see the animals, you're excited to spend time with your friends, and you're excited to see what life is like in a different environment. And even when you see the settings, and when you grow up, you see how small they are, you kind of wish and wonder that you would have a larger, expanded venue to go to, to see all of your favorite animals. And going to the Chaffee Zoo this past summer, it really crystallized everything, because that park, the old Roding Park, was a park that my family used to go to for picnics, for family reunions, and to, and just to have a day away from the house. And it was very, it was very cherished, very meaningful. And just to see how the zoo has expanded, and when you see the savanna for the very first time, you forget that Chaffee Zoo was basically, through that foundation, had bought and purchased all of Roding Park for that expansion. and purchased all of Roding Park for that expansion. And to know and realize, after we've gone through the numbers and gone through the financials, talked to all the people that are working on this intimately, and have a sense of security that we're, this is going to be fine, this is going to be good. But more importantly, this project, and especially being in Elk Grove since 1997, and hearing and seeing all the different projects that have come up over the years, this project does feel different. The support from the community, not just from Elk Grove, but from the greater Sacramento area and pretty much Northern California, gives me goosebumps. It really does. And the emails that I've received really verify that. And it just, it, it, it really makes you feel good that people have put that much faith in this city council to pursue this project and to adopt this project. And knowing we have a very talented staff that is working with the Sacramento Zoological Society, gives me that much more confidence that we will get this done. This will be a very, very transformative project. It's an investment in our community, it's an investment in Northern California, it is a catalyst for all good things that will come after this. Because we don't know what's going to come, but I will tell you this, people have seen Elk Grove and the moves we've made, not only for our community, but in enhancing our economy, being ranked as one of the most livable cities in the United States, one of the safest communities in, in the United States, and also a place to raise your families. I can't understate that enough. Art Scotland said it best, this zoo is a beacon of light. And, and as I've said a couple days ago, a rising tide lifts all ships. So I definitely support this project.
You want to go?
No, it's, call you. Knock yourself out.
You sure? All right. I'm just trying to figure if I want to be brief or if I just want to keep it going. So, no, thank you to staff for the amount of work that you've done for this project. Seriously, super dedicated, and you've done a lot of the great work for this. Thank you to everybody who's been involved, thank you to the community members who've come out, especially for the community events, and thank you for answering several of our answers as we move forward. You know, echoing Councilman Soon's concerns, this isn't a very light decision, this is actually a pretty, pretty hefty one. We're looking at something where we're going to have to take out bonds for 30 years. And, I mean, I'm 31, right? So, kind of justifying that in the next 30 years, you know, I'll be 61 and then, you know, paying that off, it, it's, it was, I'm not going to lie, I was hesitant, right? As a 31-year-old, looking at what the future's going to look like, looking at what our city's going to look like, looking at what our region's going to look like, and it isn't just to say we're going to take one vote today and then five years, six years, something's going to be built. That's not something that I take lightly, that's not something, that's not the reason why I ran for city council. I'm here to support and to help out the community, I'm here to represent my district, which I'm super damn proud that there was several district four folks out today. When we think of Elk Grove, it's, it's a big Elk Grove, it's 180,000 people that live here. It's not just the east side, it's not just the west side, it's definitely not just the middle. We're a community that continues to grow, we're a community that continues to be diverse, and diversity is part of who we are now and that who we're going to be continuing to be. And I'm super proud and excited to represent a city like this. And again, but it's, it's, it's a tough decision to make, right? But I'm also thankful that community members are here and that you, there's an investment that wants to be made. I'm thankful that the building trades came out today and that they spoke on behalf of their members, because a lot of the members are from Elk Grove. I'm thankful that some of our city restaurants came out, because a lot of them do live here and they do work here. I wish there was a lot more young professionals that came out, because the reality is, it's going to face us, we're the ones who are going to be here, we're the ones who are going to see it, and there was only, I can count probably five. I know Sam's out here, Alan's out here, Daniel Washington, who grew up in Elk Grove, who went to Franklin High School, who graduated from there, he's a wildcat, you know, I, I know this, right? And I wish there was more young professionals, because the reality is, it's the young professionals who are, yes, are going to be taking their children, but it's also the grandparents that are going to be visiting, right? And they should have been a part of this discussion, they should have been here as well. In the coming days leaning up to today, several folks called me, and a lot of them in their 30s, and they're like, hey, you know, my child is one, and I'm like, why are you taking your one-year-old to, to the zoo, right? And I actually stopped by the zoo yesterday and did it during my lunch hour, did, was it in and out for an hour? But the amount of one-year-olds or babies that I saw there, I'm like, you guys don't even know what a rhino is. It, it, it was, it was interesting. I saw that community, as Aaron had mentioned, I, I got to visually see that, right? And it's interesting to, you can't, it's, it's hard to put a number to that, right? Because as we grow as a city, we have to look at what we're going to invest in, and this is a big ask, I want to emphasize, this is a really big ask from us, because as Councilman Soon said, you know, we have to look out for the rest of the next council who will step in when we're no longer here. So it, it isn't lightly, but I'm thankful for our staff for being, for being committed to it. I would like to ask the Zoological Society to actually be, I, I heard that there was a commitment, that you're committed to this, but I also want to make sure that, like, we're 50 million committed, you know what I mean? And, and that it is cash on hand. Because then that means we're all committed and we're all into this together. Awesome that there is, you know, 15 mil in pledges, but, but I would like to see more on that. And I know a lot of the folks, was the conversation that was, it was contingent based on what happens tonight, but I think we all need to step up on this one. And, and I'm excited to see it, I'm excited to see Glenbrook out here, Mr. Huss. I was actually going to talk about you today, because I got a text message saying how much, how hard you actually fundraised for, for those two months. I thought it was 10, it's 15, that's awesome. I want to continue seeing that, you know, because this, this isn't just going to be a Elk Grove buy-in, this has to be a community and a regional buy-in, and I think we need to, you know, continue that conversation, how do we do that? Mr. Zach Walden, I don't want to, I, I thought they got Thor when you came down here to give a, a comment, I, I really did think so, so I, I'm like surprised that the Zoological Society did that. But in all seriousness, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a tough decision to make, because you're looking out ahead of time and trying to see, plan out for the future families that will be here. But I would like to hear what my council colleagues, the rest of them have to say.
Alrighty, so, I'm recognized, I'm good?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. Doing the formality, no, 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 I'm just making sure you're good with me starting. Okay, so there's, there's five items in front of us, four are for, for a vote, and one of them is for potentially direction. So, let me take each, and, and we're going to be doing each of these, voting on these separately, correct?
If you so choose.
Four, four separate motions?
That, that would be a, a proper way to do it, yes.
Okay, all right. So, let me say first, I support the EIR, that's, that's relatively easy. I support the SPA. I support the Amendment to the Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Master Plan, Tentative Subdivision Map, et cetera. I support the compelling reason to deviate from current guidelines for the city's naming policy. So, that leaves the last issue of providing feedback on financing terms for phases 1A and 1B. As written, I cannot support the proposed financing plan. This is an extremely large, complex project to be funded on the back of Elk Grove taxpayers. It create, hang on, folks, but thank you, I appreciate it. It creates liability, and those liabilities are not mitigated adequately in the proposed plan. This project carries too much risk for the taxpayer and may dramatically limit our capability to respond to future alternative projects. Now, I don't say this as a personal brag, I need you to understand that, but I believe it is the work of dedicated, vigilant residents, current and, and past councils, and city staff that have put Elk Grove on a great trajectory. Our current trajectory affords the city of Elk Grove the opportunity to make serious improvements on the issues that plague most other communities across the state of California and across the nation. Those issues are homelessness, mental health, youth violence, crime, underemployment, and other things. Unlike so many other jurisdictions, we could be truly transformative. We shouldn't take this opportunity for granted, and we should investigate, discuss, and consider our options and investments in a meaningful way. It's my opinion that future generations will judge us harshly for this missed opportunity. Now, I've heard many speak on the issue before us tonight, and I'm, I'm not the smartest guy in the room, but I can read the room. While it isn't required that we all agree, I always appreciate the collaboration of my colleagues on the various issues. And I too want to be collaborative. I've reviewed the documents, consulted our city attorney, and I offer the following four items for consideration to ease concerns about the financing plan. First would be a bond oversight committee. Recent experience with Measure E polling indicates that residents feel more comfort with oversight. So I propose an oversight committee similar in charter and conduct to the Measure E Citizens' Oversight Committee. The second would be for the Sacramento Zoological Society's $50 million contribution to be in escrow or a city account prior to any onsite improvements or bond issuance. This includes, but is not limited to the discussion or to the idea of a giraffe paddock. And let me explain to you why this is critically important to me. The city of Elk Grove and its residents had a long nightmare with the Ghost Mall. The city of Elk Grove took constant, constant criticism for general growth property and Howard Hughes's inability to complete the mall project. The criticism was entirely unfair to the city, but nonetheless, we were dragged by every news outlet on a regular basis. Residents initially had great expectations, heard promise after promise, and experienced disappointment after disappointment. It became a daily reminder to us of the Great Recession. So the third would be that no onsite improvement will occur prior to bond, none. I think this may already be implied, but it needs to be crystal clear, no onsite construction prior to cash in hand. The fourth, full project and cost review prior to bond. Any increase in estimated cost above some sort of appropriate CPI, maybe council, or excuse me, yeah, council could offer some sort of indicator similar to CPI, it might be construction, something. But it will be brought back to council for public hearing and council vote prior to the issuance of bond. And the reason I say this is it's going to take at least four years, at least four years, on a good day, to get the, the Zoological Society's $50 million in hand. That's four years. Think about where we were four years ago. Would you have predicted today, four years ago? I don't think you would have predicted our economic situation four years ago. So what I'm asking is that that comes back to city council prior to issuance of a bond. I want to thank my council colleagues for your consideration of these items that I believe can add some protection to the taxpayers in Elk Grove. If these protections are in place, I can support a yes vote when the financing plan is finalized. But let me be super clear, no onsite construction prior to cash on hand. I cannot, will not, accept the potential for another Ghost Mall. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, can I, I just want to weigh in if you don't mind, and, and I appreciate my, my colleagues' comments on, on that, because like, I think we're all speaking around the same concerns. I just want to highlight, you know, or, first of all, with the Ghost Mall, because, you know, I, I joined council just shortly when that, that happened, and, and why, elaborate why I was so emphatic about the part, the type of partner we, we get into situations with. When I came on board, General Mills didn't even want to talk to us. We could not get even answers to the phone calls. I mean, we were, back then it was Mayor Davis, we were threatening to fly out to, to Texas, we knew they would never even see us, so, you know, we ended up going, but we had someone who was not interested in, in this town, the, and, and that's, that's just the fact. So, so I appreciate what you're saying, and you're absolutely right, our city took the, the blunt of it, we were, we were blamed for it, it was, it was accused of, you know, Elk Grove can't get stuff done, you know, it was entirely out of our, out of our control. So I totally appreciate that, and so, and that's why I think the difference today is what you've seen in the demonstration of this partnership, they've invested millions of dollars without city approval, and I think that's a testament to them and, and why, you know, I, it's such a critical part of this agreement. And I'm not taking anything away from y- your ask, but I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. The only question I have about the 50 million is in terms of whether we can actually, you know, implement, how, how much delay that would, that would add, because that, that adds other risks if we delay, you know, when, when that actually happens. So, we can continue this later, but I just wanted to, that's something I'd like to hear before I would agree to those terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, you want to provide anything further?
Oh, no. And, and I, and I, it should be, it should be stated that, you know, those of you who are not, you know, who are in the room and are donors, I, I appreciate it. Look, the Zoological Society has got to do it on the backs of donors, and donors, I appreciate you, I do. I, I make, I make plenty of donations throughout the community, and so I get it, I want you to understand that I appreciate your time, your treasure, your talent. This is a super huge lift, and, and even though some of you donors are also Elk Grove residents, there are Elk Grove residents that aren't in the room, and I'm speaking for them in, in ensuring that there are the appropriate protections in place. I appreciate that they have great intentions. I, I'm not even trying to draw any equivocation, or equivalence between them, right? My, my, my real challenge is that right now, when you're out in the community, people already believe that this is happening and they want to know when it's happening. And I have to mitigate their, or, you know, bring them back a little bit, right? If the Zoological Society does not come up with that 50 million dollars, it's the five of us who will be answering to the taxpayer. That's all I'm saying, I want the protections for the taxpayer, so.
Thank you.
You stand.
Okay. My turn. First and foremost, of course, thank you all for enduring such a long evening. It goes to the importance of such a, such a tremendous project. I'll get to some of the points that Councilmember Spees raised, but I want to go through the checklist that I have before me. And I think I will start off immediately saying that, you know, I think what I appreciated most from Councilmember Soon's comment, that of course there are risks, but this is a tremendous investment opportunity. So that, that consideration, the risk versus the investment, is, is huge. And we've had experts weigh in and provide that data. The educational component- Um, the educational component is tremendous, job creator, economic development driver. Um, why zoos matter, conservation, education, recreation, the alignment with our city goals, a vibrant community and economic development. Uh, we started this process over two years ago. And the fact that there is no organized opposition is tremendous. I can't ignore that. There's been over two years of opportunity for this to materialize. Not last week, last month, but two years, more than two years. The overwhelming support, overwhelming, I can, I shared this with the media earlier. Could literally count on one hand the emails or comments that I've received that don't support the zoo. I can't ignore that either. The Planning Commission vote was five oh, which sent a very strong message, and they did a lot of their due diligence as well. That is pretty compelling as well. But I trust staff, I trust our staff. We've hired experts here to do that heavy lift. We have a great city manager, have a great finance director who have guided us along the way, along with Christopher Jordan and the rest of the team that has played an instrumental role. Staff is who we rely on. We're not the experts in 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 these fields, it's staff. And so when you tap into having amazing staff and they share um, information with you, I have to take that into consideration, which includes the financing plan. The question always comes, can we pay for it? And I think we've answered that overwhelmingly. I do also want to thank Senator Ashby for Senate Bill seven thirty-nine, which will be a tremendous um, asset for us. Uh, the Franklin High School students, invaluable opportunity. The design, for those that have seen it, the feedback that I get at grocery stores, people are excited about this. There's a lot of buzz out there. I'm not getting people coming up to and coming up to me saying, you know, we shouldn't do this, or what about this project versus this project? Our polling data from Measure E validates what we're hearing. We're all getting those same emails. Of course, there's going to be, you know, people that maybe didn't show up or submit comment. But again, over two years, where are they? It's been, it's a long time, but those that I hear from that are supportive and excited, they're everywhere. Very imp- uh, compelling. The financing, the rainy day fund is protected for emergencies. That was stated clearly. We have built-in savings for this. Our partnership with a casino is invaluable. The fact that we're not using Measure E dollars is an important statement to make over and over again. That the city is not involved in subsidies for this, an important message. The attendance projections, the rate of, you know, the our ROI is compelling. I know I personally am com- committed to working with the Zoological Society to be successful. I'm investing in our city to say, yes, we can, yes, we will. It's not just, you know, today's about us of what we can do. But we also don't want to sit by and not let the society succeed. We're partners, and partner me, partners mean this is a public-private partnership. We will be in this marriage um, together. The economic impact analysis is so compelling that I can't ignore that. So it goes back to the risk versus the investment in what we get back. It's been a transparent process. We've had many meetings, many opportunities to get feedback. So I want to recognize and appreciate all of the great work that staff has done over the last two years getting us um, to this place. And I agree with Kevin Ferreira, zoos are cool. Zoos are cool. I'm a big zoo enthusiast and zoo geek. I travel, when I travel, I do go to zoos, even as an adult. It's not just for children, it's for all ages. So this is some, you know, I raised my family here, my two young sons. And I know when I was raising my kids, when they were little, one of the things Elk Grove was lacking were have, you know, these tremendous family-friendly amenities. We have an opportunity to fix that. Elk Grove is an amazing city, we're one of, we're recognized as one of the most livable cities and recognized for our high quality of life. This enhances that high quality of life. So the question before us is, can Elk Grove do this? Can we dream big? Can we dream big? And my answer is absolutely, we can, we can. But my council colleague has brought up some valid points that I think merit some discussion um, that I don't want to just overlook. I think having a bond oversight committee is 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 good, is prudent. We've done that with Measure E, and what that does is provide back to our community that safeguard of making sure that our community is paying, you know, making sure that we are also being held accountable. So it's just a process, and I think it's a good process. So I would certainly, I certainly enthusiastically support the zoo. So I'll put that out there, but I think having this oversight committee is not a bad thing. That shows, you know, us make, being responsible for something like this, particularly with the bond.
I have a question. Is it advisory, is it advisory community similar to Measure?
Yes, I mean, I see it similar to Measure E.
Right, and and let me be clear, it isn't on zoo expenditures. It's on our expenditures, right? So it isn't about distrust on on any other partner. It's about the belt and suspenders that voters have come to expect. I recognize this is not a public vote. I appreciate your support on that.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I've, I I have a concern on that. Um, anytime we we put together a committee like this, there's a big question on whether there is strong involvement by the appointees to the committee. It feels like if we're going to do oversight, we have to be a part of it, we should have our hands in it. We should be involved in it, because if if we're really gonna make sure that something's going to succeed, I think we ought to own it instead of leaving it to a body of five or six. Because if you do that, that leaves room for error. Especially if people that are going to be on the committee may or may not have a financing background to really kick the tires and really find out if something is really going to work or not.
And that can be part of, you know, the qualifications of what we're looking for. I imagine this committee, I think to what you said, more like Measure E. Its advisory role, its oversight, but ultimately, we are the ones that are held accountable by our constituents.
But I'm saying, but I'm saying that uh, the the council should be actively involved in it, not in, and and not just leave it up to an advisory board to do the meetings and then come back to us and give their their take.
So to answer your question, I feel so you're you're one, on one hand, we're looking for those that are experts in finance. I'm not.
I am.
Um, you know, we have other trades, I'm not. I mean, not, not when it comes to, you know, going into the weeds like Mr. Pollan, that's what he studied. Um, so I see this more like a Measure E.
Ab- absolutely, like a Measure E, and and I.
And we don't have, we're not putting our tentacles out there, we're letting them do their work.
Because, and 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 you want to have people who are qualified to do the geek speak with Mr. Pollan and with the extra financial people who are going to be at the table, because when you leave it to laymen, it's good for the thirty thousand foot overview. But if you really need to dig deep into the weeds, like go two hundred feet under, you want people who know what they're talking about and can and are able and qualified enough to engage in that discussion, to give not only Mr. Pollan, but also the council the thirty thousand foot overview, so we would understand, because even if not, even if we are not experts in finance, we need to have someone who can dig into the weeds and have that conversation with us.
That would be staff, I see.
Vice Mayor, I think that, I guess the only challenge I have with that is, I think what the Councilmember Spees is saying, that that oversight is, the whole purpose of it is to be separate from us, because otherwise, we're here making a decision right now.
I understand, I understand it, but I don't have the like.
Are are you, are you?
What, you want to finish your talk?
Well, so I I guess I'm, I'm just, I mean, I'm I'm willing to go along with the Measure E concept in in for the sake of having, you know, the uh, members of our our community involved, and and having, having, you know, a a say and a view in in how these, when these bonds are issued. Um, I think it defeats the purpose, if like you're asking for, Vice Mayor, if we are involved. I think it defeats the purpose of having that hot committee in the first place.
But that means, but that means for future projects down the road. For future projects down the road.
No future part, this is.
No, 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 listen, hear me out. For future projects down the road, every committee will have to be formed with an oversight similar to Measure E, similar to this. And when you talk about financial confidence, when you talk about fiscal health, when you talk about um, brokers looking at the city for bond confidence, it can work, but we really don't have time to play around. Because the Ghost Mall compared to the zoo project is apples and oranges. I remember being at an Elk Grove ca- uh, chamber meeting when Howard Hughes, General Mills were there, and they talked about glowingly and how this new mall would look like. And I asked them point blank, who are your anchors? Where are they, what are they going to do? And they couldn't answer me with a straight question. Matter of fact, they bypassed me and went to the next person, and that gave me a red light, saying, these guys aren't serious about Elk Grove. They're gonna hold on to this land for strategic purposes and then sell it off.
opposed to an oversight committee?
Let me, let me finish my thought, please, because the Zoological Society, they're here, they're engaged with us, they're local. This is not a group or company from Texas. And it just comes down to a matter of trust.
And and so what I would offer to you is that we aren't, this, again, this is not a committee that would provide oversight on the zoo's spending. This is a committee that provides oversight on our spending and it's important, and it's, it's because of a very large bond that the five of us are making a decision on. And what I will tell you is this, even though we have a Measure E committee, we abdicate zero responsibility to them. We are the ones who ultimately are on the hook. And all I'm asking for is for an oversight committee similar to Measure E that provides oversight to our city spending, because residents are involved.
I I hear you, but this is the first I've heard of it tonight. If I'd known about it a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, or on Saturday, I could have digested a little bit, but this is the first I've heard of it. So you can imagine me feeling sideswiped, hearing this. I'm pissed.
Because I'm asking for an oversight?
No, because you, because you dropped it on us right now today.
Also, we have Brown Act issues that prevent us from having that kind of.
I'm not allowed to go talking.
At least with Measure E, at least with Measure E, we were talking about having oversight during the process, it was going before the voters and during the campaign process.
I think we're arguing about something that is just not that important.
This is very relevant, because with Measure E, I know what I'm talking about on this. We had an oversight committee, and we talked about the oversight committee, because that's what the public wanted in the polling, and that's what the public wanted ultimately. So we have the oversight, and we have, and we created the committee. This is very, very late to the draw for me. I could be okay with it, but I could, I could, I could be okay with it, but the fact that we brought it up tonight, this is the first I've heard of it, blows my mind. Blows my mind. And and it also says, for the work that the mayor and I did on the subcommittee, it shows that that there is a lack of trust and transparency in the work that we're doing.
It has nothing to do with you. So first of all, yes.
It's not, it's, it doesn't have anything to do with me, but it has something to do with the process.
If we can just temper our, you know, it's, if we can just calm down for a little bit.
The action that we have today, tonight, is to provide direction, that's on the the agenda. I I I don't know how providing oversight is is a challenge. I'm sorry that it upset you. I certainly have no, no reason to upset you, but this, this is really just a a control on us. It has nothing to do with the subcommittee, zero.
But if it, but if it's an issue, if if it's an issue of transparency and trust, and you had concerns about it, there's, there's no crime in mentioning that.
I'm not supposed to have.
But but uh, but to say this today for the first time, this is the first time I'm hearing it.
Madam Mayor.
So 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 that's, and that's why, that's why I'm, I'm not struggling with it, it's just, man, that's just, wow.
Also, wait till we go through the other three items.
But wait.
I want, I want to try another tact here.
I have to have fun, I don't know.
So 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 let me, just summary, so I I heard Vice, I mean, Councilmember Spees talking about an oversight committee to deal with when bond issuance occurs. We talked about the need for the fifty million to be in hand from the Zoological Society before anything happens, okay. Just going back to the staff report, right? January one, twenty twenty-seven, fifty million should be here. If it isn't, fundraising milestones are not met, city may suspend design work until required fundraising is achieved. I think it's, it's clear is what you want, I think.
The 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 problem is may, the problem is may, it needs, it needs, the the thing is that as as you've heard this evening, that it's not all cash in hand. There are promises, right? And over the next four years, there will be more promises. Oh, yeah, when, when this happens, I'll give you, I'll give you ten million dollars, right? When this happens, I'll give you this. I I do not want another opportunity for a Ghost Mall.
So let me, let me ask the question another way. If the fundraising criteria was adequately articulated in the agreement in terms of shall or no work will begin, if that happens, do you still need the oversight committee?
Absolutely, because the, because the issue is the ability for residents to look at, and this is, this is, I'm not talking about this, I'm talking about this over the the thirty years, over the life cycle of the bond, not anything prior to that. Let's be clear, I don't want anything prior to that. Once that bond is issued, that's when I want the oversight committee. So if anybody thinks that that's beforehand, that's not what I'm asking for. What I'm asking for is, once that bond is issued, just like we do with Measure E, the responsibility of those residents would be to say, huh, did they uh, buy hay, or did they buy a trip to Las Vegas, right? That's their job.
So if I may also say, I think, you know, part of some of these points, I think can potentially be massive roadblocks for fundraising. Because the signaling from here, the city, if we're moving forward, we want them to be successful. And so I feel like too many roadblocks will create go to uh, donor um, insecurity.
Well, I also
I'm here for the security of Elk Grove taxpayers, that's what I'm here for.
I agree, but I I guess I.
Sergio, we have, we have.
I mean, let me just say one more thing, I I I'm, I'm all for calculated risks, that's what calculated risk. Well, I I'm less concerned about the abuses, once we, once we go towards implementation and the bonds are issued and our staff and bond council are 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 issuing bonds in order for expenditures, I, I mean, to your example, I don't know that someone's gonna be going off and taking vacations with with our, with our bond money. I don't think our staff would be okay with that, right?
I agree, and it's just like Measure E. We do that with Measure E, and really, the reality is that Measure E is oversight on Measure E money that goes into the general fund, right, to be prioritized, spending on on public safety, et cetera. But when this bond issued by us is specifically for a very, very targeted reason, which is the construction, right? I I don't think that there's a problem with a uh, Citizens Oversight Committee to make sure that that money was spent on nails, on labor.
Well, you will get legal cha- you will get in legal trouble if you expend those bondments or anything else. Versus general fund, it's a general fund, that's where I, that's, that's why we were, we were having that, that oversight committee. So I guess that's, I'm going.
posst discussion we've ever had in the last few years, which is good.
I understand your concern, I just don't know that it's needed at that, at this point.
I I do need to let you know that I need these things, or I will not be able to get to a yes. I'm trying to get to a yes here, folks. I think these are reasonable asks.
So let's, um.
As long as some of those asks don't become, um, red herrings or bombs because what will happen is that people will look twice with a side eye before they consider doing something major that will benefit Elk Grove or the region in future years. You're not the only one looking out for Elk Grove taxpayers. I am too.
Okay, so if I can also say, um, I would love to hear from Sergio.
Sergio, away in here.
From, um, from council, but this whole discussion about future generations, um, I also recognize fully the risks and concerns, but I also recognize future generations, if we didn't support it, would look back and go, what the heck were you thinking? We have this amazing opportunity that could have literally transformed, um, our city in a positive way.
And Madam Mayor, I speak this from reference because, uh, U.C. Merced was originally supposed to be in Tulare. But the people down there at the time in the late eighties were so small-minded. And keep in mind, this is a place that told my cousin when he was the city council member, we don't like you, we just tolerate you. They lost a major opportunity that would have been an economic boom for the area, would have been a beneficial for the agricultural industry and would have done a lot for educational purposes, but they lost it to Merced because they weren't willing to take the risk.
Okay, fair point. Let's hear from Councilmember Robles.
I think this would have been resolved had In-N-Out and Chick-fil-A both got together and had us here, so. So I understand your, I understand what you're trying to say. Oversight as far as being there, just making sure that the money's being spent right. Vice Mayor, I also understand, uh, what you're saying is if there is another development that we're gonna make a huge investment in, like, are we, is this gonna set precedent to continue doing this over and over and over and over? I, I don't think this is the case. Um, this, I mean, we've saved what, thirty years? How many years have we since our inception for this, right? This is one of the, the, this is a huge opportunity. And I also agree that this is a hundred, uh, sorry, a hundred and fourteen million that we're looking at. So, um, I with, with also what Councilman Suen said is that if the difference of the terminology between shall or will or until, um, I can get behind that. I also think that it's, 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 it's a, it's a great, it's a right idea. It's a right idea so that our citizens, um, from all of our districts, right, to be there to see it.
My district's everything.
Yep, but it's not also, again, we're not setting, we're not creating that precedent that we're gonna keep on doing this for other developments or other projects. This one is just because it's a hundred and fifty million dollars that we're looking at. Um, but that's just what I have to say and.
Madam Mayor, I'm just gonna call for a vote for motions one, two, three, and four to adopt the resolution, the ordinance and for, for those, because we can still talk about five, so can we do that?
Okay, let's, that's, that's good.
Can, can we do them a separate vote, except for you're gonna do, Councilmember Suen?
Yes, sir.
Do you want them in separate?
Yes, please.
Uh, but motion to adopt the resolution certifying the environmental impact report for the new zoo at Elk Grove project.
I second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt the ordinance establishing the zoological park special planning area and rezoning certain property.
Introduce and waive the ordinance, not yet adopt, correct?
It says, uh.
Introduce and waive by four reading substitution. This is a first read.
Introduce and waive the four readings. Sorry, yes, introduce and waive, sorry, yep, yep.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Adopt the resolution demanding the bicycle pedestrian trails master plan approving a conditional use permit tentative subdivision map with subdivision design review, district development plan level one design review and art plan and making a determination of consistency with the general plan for listing in the city's capital improvement program for the new zoo at Elk Grove project.
I second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And finally, adopt a resolution providing a compelling reason to deviate from the current guidelines of the city's naming policy and create an alternative process for naming new zoo buildings.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. And back to the show.
And back to our fun discussion. Okay, so I, I sense that there's maybe not consensus on a, an oversight. Is that fair to assume that? Is there consensus to do one?
I, I question the, the need for it, but if, you know, if, if it's the willingness of my, my colleagues, that there's, there's no harm.
My question is, is this all for or nothing?
All for or nothing? These are, these are simple protections that we can provide to the taxpayer.
Right. These are simple protections that we can provide to the taxpayer, which I don't believe puts any unnecessary blockade in place.
Hell, I'm a donor across many things in Elk Grove. You guys know that. Never, never once have I ever said, oh, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do this or that. This is, this is a big, this is a big number. Right? So I understand that those institutional donors who are gonna be ponying up a million, right, are gonna go, okay, well, where is this? Right? And that's what the, that's what the conversation will be with the financing plan, right? But I, I don't understand how a, an oversight committee.
Should we go down the other items?
What I was saying, well, like I said, issuing bonds and the, and when you issue the bonds, you, there is strict, strict criteria versus general fund, we were talking general fund, that's in, there's a lot more latitude with general fund expenditures. That's, that's why we established the oversight. And so that's why I questioned, but how, again, I am willing to go along with it. I, it's, I, I feel like it's a belt and suspenders approach. What I, I don't have, I don't have an issue with, it, it, it does give more stuff to do.
Talk about the others.
Well, did, were you in favor or were you interested in oversight or?
Do you wanna talk about the other items? Cause this is, this is all for. This is good, everyone. This, this makes projects better and stronger, okay?
Sorry, it's getting late, but you know.
No, I said we can be here all night if we have to.
Yep.
The fifty million in escrow, I think you brought up a good point. It's, the language is there. So what are we, what are, what's missing?
There's a difference between may and a difference between shall. When you say that the fifty million must, or maybe blah, 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 then that is a problem. May and shall are two different things. I'm not a lawyer. But I'm looking at one. Is there a difference between may and shall?
I, I agree with you. They are different things.
Is there a way that we can clarify the language to where it would be acceptable so that we can say that fifty million cash in hand or in a city account, so, prior to any onsite improvements?
Yes, that, that can be done. It would take, of course, the majority of the council to do that. The agreement that we're talking about right now contemplating has not been finalized yet. And so what we're talking about now is what types of terms you wanna have into that agreement.
Right.
Your suggestion, Councilmember Spees, is to have a provision in there that says they must have, they shall have the fifty million dollars before there are onsite improvements. That's your suggestion on the table.
Hundred percent.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'll let you guys debate the merits of that.
And that's my understanding for it to be anyways, but if it provides further clarification.
There's, there's con- there's conversation in the document about a giraffe paddock. And there was, there was a hint to it in the briefing, um, but not, not specifically addressed. Again, here's my challenge. If somebody says, oh, we're close, we're close, let's, let's get, let's get something out there so people can see it happening. And then that doesn't materialize, we now have a ghost mall. That's my very, very significant concern that I can't get past. I can't get past that.
I, I understand. I, I'm okay with that. I, I, I only.
You're okay with.
The shall, I'm, I'm okay with the shall language as my only, I guess the only thing I wanna make sure is, I'm, I'm trying to get cake and heated too. We, we can proceed with off-site
Yes.
improvements and things, right, independent of the fifty million, right?
Councilmember Spees's suggestion, yes. He's indicating yes.
And, and the reason I say yes is that, and I'm going to, let's make the assumption that everybody does good things, but it, the zoo project doesn't happen, right? Let's, let's take that for a moment. Um, any off-site improvements can still be written into the sale of the land and we can recapture those costs. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's, so off-site, I'm cool with any off-site improvements. I'm not cool with onsite.
I understand. That, I'm, I just wanna make sure nothing gets in the way of camera road getting finished. So, I mean, that's, I'm fine.
That's right, because you have other, you, you have other projects that are gonna be related to that. That is, that where, where there's a lot of money riding on the line on it.
If, if we're talking about sewers and streets and all of that on, or that are off of the project, I'm perfectly fine with that. But the minute we're turning a shovel of dirt, there, there's, there's gotta be money in hand. A shovel of dirt onsite.
Should we have other benchmarks? I'd like to hear from the city manager.
If that's what you're asking about, then maybe the shall makes sense.
Hold, let's hear from the city manager.
If the council's intent is to have it where there's no onsite work prior to the fifty million dollars being in the account, then we can easily write that into the agreement. That's, that's.
Does that prevent fundraising from pledges versus like any of that? Like, you know what I mean? Like, this, this pledge is for the next five years. So it's within that span, but do you need to have it all?
That's, that's, I think what Councilmember Spees is suggesting is that a pledge for ten years from now doesn't count. That money would actually have to be in the bank by the time that we turn a shovel on the, on the dirt, right? You could write it differently. You could allow for pledges, but if you want to do what Councilmember Spees is suggesting, then I think what he's suggesting is no, that money needs to be in the account the time that the shovel is turned.
A hundred percent. You can, you can do, you can borrow against that, excuse me, the Zoological Society can borrow against that. They can go to, they can go to payday loans and get the money from that. That's fine. But what I'm saying is that the money has to be in our account before we turn shovels because I, I, if, if we say, oh, we're, you know, they're gonna give us this over the, over the next ten years, that, that's just, that's just a promise. That's, that's not.
But these are safeguards that you're putting forth for safety, which I fully appreciate. We are also assuming that, you know, that we're not gonna get there with the, with the, with the funding, which I believe we will.
Yeah, yeah, the challenge, you know, the challenge could be, and Jason just articulated it, right? If, if everybody donates, like, I'll pledge X amount, I'll, I'll pledge five million dollars, but over ten years. Then I'm only giving five hundred thousand a year. You, you're not gonna, you would, in, in this scenario, if everybody did the same thing, you couldn't begin construction for ten years.
No, you, you could borrow, you could borrow.
Can we bring up the zoo on this?
Who's gonna do that?
Can we bring up the zoo and talk about this? I would love to hear, you've heard some of the comments.
I really wanna hear is you already have it and all this is a waste of time.
It'd be awesome if you have fifty million in the bank, but you only have three.
With you and tell you that people who are watching tonight, we have to give this community confidence that this is going to happen.
Right.
Yeah.
Right? Fundraising, there is no donor that is, is the same. There are people in this room tonight that I will not identify who have given over a hundred thousand dollars to this project. And they're hearing this for the first time. I understand you have to do your jobs, right? But believe me when I say that we have raised fifteen million dollars in commitments for a project that has not even been approved. And you're not at the fifty million point yet. My point is you've got four years to get there. And I'm not interested in, in putting our taxpayers at risk. I recognize there are taxpayers in this room, sir. And I recognize that some of these taxpayers are also donors. I respect that. I completely respect that. But what I'm telling you is that I can't, in good conscience, approve something that I won't have the assurance that the money's gonna be in the bank on the day that the shovel gets turned onsite. I think that's pretty clear and I think that's very simple request to ask. I want assurances that there will be money there when you say I ha- I can do it. You can go to J.G. Wentworth and, and borrow on the, on the, um, on the promises. But what I'm telling you is that for the taxpayer, I've gotta have that fifty million in the bank. You can, go ahead.
I, I think, I, I just wanna make a couple of points that I think are important. I appreciate that right now you're discussing for the first time. And again, we, we came to meet with you before this meeting. We would have loved an opportunity to talk about these issues with you, but you indicated you did not wanna talk to us about any of these things.
I did not indicate that I didn't wanna talk to you about anything. I said that I did not need an update on the project, ma'am. Let's be very clear about what you asked.
I asked if you had anything you wanted to ask us, anything you needed to hear from us before.
I didn't need to hear anything, ma'am.
But let's, uh. Back off from that. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
We want to engage.
The record clear, ma'am. I did not say I did not want to talk to you. Let's be clear on that.
Okay, let's, let's get back to.
My, my, what I wanna tell you is there's a lot of conversation we can have about donor confidence. As, as Jason has already indicated, this is really challenging for donor confidence. We can talk about bor- borrowing against the pledges. That's absolutely something we can talk about. We can talk about time limits for pledge commitments.
That's all I'm asking.
We can, but that's what I just, I just wanna say, we can work with you to bring you up, we can come up with a plan to make sure that the money's in the door that you're confident with, that everyone is confident with.
Okay.
Let's a little bit continue this. Can we continue? I'd like to propose, I'd like to give staff to continue. Well, this is, uh, this is review and provide feedback on, on the financing terms. So can we have staff work with Zoological Society to come up with a plan to, to? We can take the vote, but I'm talking about just to address this, cause we already did take the vote on the floor. But to, to, to give direction, to work out their plan and just come back to report, uh, to us.
I see others here lined up, um.
It's okay.
Okay.
Is, is that something we could, I'm gonna look at city manager and city attorney. Is that something that you guys can do to, to talk with them in greater detail and then come back to address, uh, Councilmember Spees's concerns?
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, we, we've already had discussions, right? We've been going back with some things. We were going tonight looking for any direction that you might have of us in, in finalizing the draft agreement to bring back to the city council. So we, we really looking for some direction from city council about how you feel about some of Councilmember Spees's, um, conditions. I mean, we can do our best, but if we don't know your intent, we're gonna bring you back something that you don't want.
Well, my que- my, my question then is to, to his, to his Councilmember Spees's, uh, proposal, how does that affect donors? How does that affect the ability to actually do onsite construction? If you have to wait ten years because the donor pledge is over a ten-year? Let's say all the donor pledges are over a ten-year period, then instead of beginning, beginning construction in three years from now, we would have to wait ten years from now because that's when all the money will be? The donors could say, I'm not giving more than two and a half million unless the, the giraffe paddock is built. I don't, those are the nuances. I, I'm not, I, I don't know. So are we gonna run into those types of possibilities?
I think, I think if, if the council's saying that you want assurance of the, of the funds, right? And the cash is important, then I think we need to work with the Zoological Society and, and see what it's going to take to get there, right? We can, we can work through that. There's, there's ways of bringing that cash forward. So if you do have a ten-year commitment, but you need that cash in year five, right, there's, there's ways of monetizing those commitments depending on how they are. So I think we can, we can work through some of those, those details. It's really a matter of what the council is comfortable with. If you're comfortable with pledges or commitments that may be required in written form that maybe extend out seven, eight, nine, ten years, and that's good enough for you, then we can absolutely write the agreement in that manner. If that's not good enough for you and you want the cash in the bank before we turn, turn the shovel, then we need to know that. We need to know what your comfort level is.
Tonight's vote is really about us and what we're, you know, that benchmark is already in place, that fifty million. That's already, that's already a condition there. So I don't know if we're, you know, beating a dead horse here.
Well, the, we, the, it's, it's, the agreement hasn't been finalized yet. That will come back at a future date. And that's where it'll specify the fifty million dollars. And not just, there's a fifty million dollars, it'll say, when does that money need to, to, to be received by the city? How long do you have? What exactly does that mean? So we'll start to specify details of that fifty million dollars. Right now, we have, um, a fifty million dollar commitment, right? And there's some milestones in the term sheet that says when each of those, but it, it is silent to how those pledges need to be accomplished, whether it's, it's cash or whether it's written pledges, right, or commitments. And so that agreement would specify what, what you desire.
And, and we, the council are still, it's still our prerogative if, if we determine that it's, it's not happening fast enough, the commitments aren't there, it's our prerogative at that point to stop the design, to stop work until further confidence is given, right? I mean, I.
If, if that's what you want the agreement to say. Again, the city manager is right.
So this is my concern right now. I appreciate this discussion. It's an important discussion. I think I most appreciate is the oversight committee for, for, I, beyond that, I think we're getting so much in the weeds, which is, you know, what I don't want is the message to go out that this is uncertain. Were others, we're giving a thumbs up because we're supportive?
Well, we made the decision. It's certain. It's just a question of when.
Yes.
And, and that's, it's all in the control of.
Yeah. I think, I think what the council has, has, has done is express their commitment to the city's obligations, right? Which is all of the, the, the cash that, that we've committed, that we had in the financing plan, even the debt issuance. committed, that we had in the financing plan, even the debt issuance. I think what we're asking, and what Councilmember Spees is asking, we now need to have the Zoological Society's commitment, right? We, by the vote that you took, you've committed to the project, right?
Yes, the one through four is the project.
And so that's, that's a clear message. If you want a clear message to the community, that's the clear message.
Right.
Now, I think the, the ask is going the other way and saying, "Okay, now we need a clear commitment on the fifty million dollars and exactly what, what form that's going to take, when those funds are gonna be delivered, and what those conditions might be."
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment?
I mean, public comment is over. Um, only the zoolo, only the applicant really can, can speak, or within the society.
He's part of the Zoological Society.
You're part of the zo, okay, then, then yes.
Yeah, Mr. Scotland's part of the society.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Forty speakers.
I just wanna explain, um, my wife and I have made a substantial, a substantial donation, and we will continue annually to make substantial donations to the, this, this cause. Um, I have brought a number of people in to the zoo and who have made and pledged to make, uh, substantial donations. With due respect, uh, council member, this is a, essentially a challenge to the integrity of the people who have made a commitment to make these donations. We will continue to do so. You do, we, you, the language as is is adequate, just as, uh, you, uh, pointed out, and, uh, so I don't think it's necessary. It sounds to me that there's enough votes to pass this. Without that, why hang this up? Why cause the uncertainty? Why make it more difficult for me to go out and raise money for this? It's, 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 you are safe with the language as is. You will be the ones that make that determination whether you shall or may. Go on. It's not necessary. It will impact, I think, me. It will, it will cause uncertainty, and I just think it's unnecessary. I think it's, it's an attack on the integrity of the, the donors, and I think it's, it's an unwise thing. Thank you for turning it out.
Thank you for your input. Um, Councilmember Robles?
Thank you for your comments, sir. Um, I, I don't think by any means, we're, we're not trying to attack the integrity. Um, that's, that's not, that's not what we're trying to do. Uh, when I made my comments, I talked about a community aspect and a community approach and making sure that we're all bought in. I think as Councilman Suon said, we're all bought in. We, we're voting yes, 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 and we're just hanging up on, on this technical as, as if, as, when it comes to finances, right? Um, so-
But the donor uncertainty, speculations, those, those are important considerations.
No, ab, absolutely.
And, and hearing it from, so, I'm, I, I guess I'm willing to say the one part that did interest me was the oversight, having an oversight committee. Beyond that, um, I think, and that's on our part for our city, so, you know, that shouldn't be an issue. That's just being prudent. I think beyond that-
I'm good with the language. Yeah, I'm good with the language.
I think beyond that, um, I'm ready to, to move forward.
And bef, and before we move forward, I mean, I think what you said is very sensible. I definitely appreciate Councilmember Spees's passion, but investor confidence is like donor confidence. If there's any sort of tangent of a look or a feel that there is a lack of trust, the wheels slow down like molasses. The wheels will slow down like molasses, and you can't regain that.
That's true.
Because it's just like Wall Street.
Vote, donor confidence is, is important. Putting conditions on that becomes problematic because, I mean, we've all done fundraising. We've done fundraising for nonprofits and all of that. It comes in phases. I have no doubt that you're gonna be successful, because I'm gonna be there with you making those calls. I'm going to be going to those meetings. We, as a team, are going to be helping you. This will be successful, and so the best way to reinforce that message is to show that we embrace it and that we're confident that we trust this partnership. The benchmarks are already in place in language. I think anything beyond that at this point will be counterproductive. So- So-
Yeah, so-
I, I, I support having an oversight committee, but other than that, um, Ms. Councilmember Suon?
Yeah, I, I do appreciate Councilmember Spees's comments. Um, he has, he has the best interests at heart, uh, for the city. I think, uh, I just don't agree that we need that strict. I think we have the prerogative to decide whether we're ready to sell the bonds or not. That's still within our decision, and so at this point, and I'm, I'm willing to go along with the ad hoc oversight committee on that bond issuance of the expenditures. Um, so at that point, I mean, that's, Councilmember Spees, if, if, that's what I'm willing to do at this point.
Same.
So-
Councilmember Brewer?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
So you have direction that there's four, and I, I tried, but I think the Oversight Committee, I really do believe Councilmember Spees, that we have the benchmarks, but I also know, you know, with fundraising, we just came back from a big day of giving, and how those fundraising dollars go, and how these pledges come in. It's just, it's how fundraising works in the nonprofit world.
I can count votes, so I'm not gonna keep going further. I don't think that this is, I, I think that the, the, the protections I was asking for would not harm anyone. I believe that for whatever reason, folks took it to be, uh, an, an, excuse me, an insult, which it was not intended to be. As many of you are donors and taxpaying citizens, I think you can understand and respect what I don't want to have happen, and that's why I brought it forward.
Yes.
I know the votes are where the votes are, and I'm not gonna fight it any longer.
We love-
I just have a different-
Different opinion.
And that's okay, because we still all respect each other, and that's okay. I think we have direction here, um, from four affirmative votes. Um, and that, and to Councilmember Spees, I know you want this to be successful, and I know you're being a good steward, but I also want this to be successful, and I want to ensure donor confidence. I want this to be a strong message that we are ready to fundraise and make this a reality, that Elk Grove can dream big, and we're gonna build that zoo. We're not done. Well, you all can-
You can leave.
Um, council comments on any outstanding, um, reports, future agenda items?
I have one, Madam Mayor. So, it's come to my attention that, um, Planning Commissioner Juan Fernandez is working with city staff to look into the current ordinances or noise ordinances, and so I'd like for whatever findings come from that review or report, um, that the council gets a chance to see that and review it and figure out where to go from there.
Vice Mayor Brewer, maybe I can clarify that. We did go to council, uh, Planning Commission with a presentation on our noise ordinance, uh, and it pretty much, there was no direction from, uh, the Planning Commission as a whole on what to do with that ordinance. We're more than willing to bring that same presentation to council if you so choose.
I'd like to see that come before council.
I, I would agree with that. You need a third?
I need one more.
Somebody agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, any reports? All right, I wave my report.
Wave mine, yeah.
We will adjourn the meeting at eleven twenty-one. Thank you, everyone, for sticking around.
Thanks, everybody.
Let's go build a zoo!
We bought a zoo.